Now I will call the meeting to order. This is the second day of our retreat, and this is Saturday, January 23rd. Essentially, a continuation of last night's conversation, which I thought was very productive and got us to where we wanted to go, I think, with issues at the end. Hopefully, by the end of the day, today, we'll have at least general agreement on where we want to go with goals and some objectives for the city. So today is, again, the beginning, kind of a quick review of issues. Again, I have my little focus machine because I think it will really be important to focus on what's possible. And yeah, so crank you up this morning, that and coffee ought to really get us all going. And I can't tell you that I would, there's no place I would rather be than you all this morning. So let's, hopefully, we'll be more honest than that as we go through the day. We, you know, this year, to me, is, you know, when I'm preparing for my State of the City, it's an opportunity for me to kind of look at what's going on. And in my view, this is the year of the facility. We have so many of them that need addressing. So, you know, prove me wrong, but I think that's where we're going to start, is kind of focusing on those needs. So Larry, all yours.
Well, you have a kind of a list there on your agenda of those that we're talking about under general facilities, and probably the place to start is with police. Again, we've kind of identified what I'd say is a preliminary design for that and some preliminary costs, and that's in about the 10 point, 10.2 million. And again, as you recall, we're looking at doing some interim remodeling and trying to hold that to a basic minimum. So really, the real question here is, do you want to move that forward? And if so, what type of timeframe do you want to look at? And again, looking at, you know, what the economy's like, you know where folks are at, this is definitely a severe need. And, you know, we're going to have to really think how we bring the community into this thing so they get a good look at that facility, understand it, and then it's a timing issue. Kind of what we've been shooting for right now is looking at that May of 2011 date.
And I think something to keep in mind with that is that, what we talked about yesterday is that the high-level strategists say, you know, don't go to the people unless you have to. So that's really a cautionary note, and if there's another way to fund it at all, we certainly need, I think, to prove to the public we've unearthed every rock and stone on the way to that.
Let me give you a couple of thoughts to this, to kind of tie into it. But interesting variations here on things. What we've tried to do is with, with the swimming pool, with City Hall, and now with libraries, trying to least do those basic packages without having to go to voters. Because this is the one that kind of stays out there, the police department, that I don't really see a lot of other opportunities. Now, one of the things that we have talked about, kind of going back to last night's discussion, is power generation plant. If we did that, and again, that's a big if, there's a lot of issues there, potential revenue source there that could help with that, but that could be, I mean, you're going to have to go through a vote on that as well, and that could be two or three years off, so that's going to set the police department back before you get to there. And that's even if you can get something like that cited. That's a potential. Beyond that, and I've been kind of scratching my head thinking about, you know, other ways to do it, and I just, I mean, this, this one, just ask for a bond. And that's about where we're at with it. Unless somebody's got another idea, because I just, we've looked a lot of different ways.
It just strikes me as that's what's critical, to have really things in place on the other facilities to demonstrate that we've been able to do that, do those without going to the vote of the people and indicate our fiscal responsibility in that regard.
Let me, let me mention on the-
The timeline's good.
The library, too, because if what we've been talking on comes to fruition, I think we can work out the purchase. And again, with the county, if they, you know, if they still have a million dollars and if we can get two, that does take us a little way towards renovation. We're going to know more on the possibility of that facility and its renovation, its cost here, hopefully, by the time that we meet and discuss that, that issue. I anticipate, just given the size of that, and that, the age of that facility, it's going to be some cost to it. One of the things we may want to consider, now you've got to go back and think about that general fund just, just a bit, is that is big enough that we could probably carve out 5,000 square feet in there and move community development into that space? And therefore, that would also free up the lease money that we're paying on that lease, that then, if you wanted to, that may also, you could probably use that to, I'd have to think about the politics of how you do that, but you might be able to bond another million dollars with, with that lease payment. So that would get you probably to about $3 million for renovation.
I think that is a very desirable thing to explore.
Yeah. Now, we still got to get out of that lease, and we've been talking to Redside, and they're not, it's, it's been an interesting conversation, because they're talking about actually right now, working with us to decrease that lease payment if we would take that opt-out provision out of there, but I'm hesitant to do that.
That pays first, sorry.
I raised my hand first.
I know, I know, my mouth hurts.
I was, I was at a meeting the other night, not, not with the school district, but I ended up talking to Lisa Norman, who's now the head of Community Ed Facilities over at Eastham, and had another fun brainstorming-type session over what we could do with Eastham as a-
See, I danced around that issue without using that name.
Sorry.
He was not in that session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and we-
Oh, sorry.
And you know, you know who's in the room.
Okay, over any other facilities of how we could make a joint, joint park and rec and community center idea.
It's streamed, that's the problem.
Well-
It's okay, it's okay. It's, it, it's really out, I mean, it's been disguised, I don't know, it's the worst-kept secret in town right now.
Well, I didn't, wasn't secretive with her.
Mm-hmm.
They're talking.
They're talking.
They're talking.
Yeah.
I'm sorry I mentioned it this morning here, I wasn't thinking.
It's okay, I'm just-
Go ahead, finish.
But anyway, there is other options for partnerships there, whether community schools leased back, whether we, whether you took planning and put them here and put park and rec over there so we could have a massive citywide community center, library community center, there's all kinds of possibilities there. And they might like to lease back, too.
Doug?
Let me-
Huh?
No, no, I was just going to throw a couple of other things he's talking, and again, no, I don't want to lose the perspective on the police department, but you got to kind
of look at where we're going with all these facilities, figure out when you want to move it from-
Yeah, poor Mike got left holding the bag there.
We'll get back to him.
Right. And Mike, Mike Library is not, well, Library isn't on, no. Library's not even on that list. I was going to say-
Second, it's second.
I got a-
I got too many lists.
I got a concern that, when we look at the library, we've got to look at the long-term future. How long, how long does that facility need to function as a library, and how is the space needs going to change? I mean, I think at certain aspects of community things, I'd mentioned, I'd like to see at one point the children's museum come back, and it'd be a nice connection to the children's And I think there are things that could fit the library's operation in terms of additional use of the building. Long, long term, I don't think the planning piece is, is, should be part of that. Now, if we're talking about something in the interim, I don't have a problem with that. But I would have a problem with that if we visualize that as not being a facility that the public generally goes to. I mean, people go to the planning department because they got to get a permit. I mean, they don't want to go there, they just have to go there. People, people want to go to the library.
Well, remember the-
My point is, people want to go to the library.
Yeah, well, remember the plan, though. The plan is that when public works facilities built, then public works leaves, and then it comes back to this.
I understand, I understand that. But I just want to, I want to make sure that when we're talking about other things going in there, from my standpoint, they really have to fit with the use of the library, I would think.
Yeah, let, let me give you some thoughts, too, because this is where you have to, you're going to have to look-
Shouldn't we be talking without Mo?
Well, Mo would be here, but she's sick.
Oh, she's sick today, okay.
And she, she, I think it sounded like she got the bug, and I told her to do not come if you're feeling bad, but she may still stagger in. And again, where you go with that long term is, you know, you can do lots of things. The site is a very desirable site because you have quite a footprint there. One of the things that we have talked about with architecture, you got to piece that building, particularly the main piece, that, you know, you'll always want to maintain that. Some of the wings off of that, that you actually may want to do some redesign there, and you've got a footprint on that site that you can do lots of other things with. You need to look, too, this building, we built for today's needs, and, you know, if you want to maintain kind of as well as it is, you might want to think about still keeping some of these things out of this building eventually, so you have space as the city grows to add other things. How you do long-term design down there and any new construction that may go on that site, if you chose to do that, you know, could give you some options there, and that's all this is. I think right now it is more of an interim step, but it also provides, the way, look at long-term, some options about how you manage all facilities, so just something to keep in mind when you look at that.
I think we should focus back on the police.
Well, only, only to mention that, this, again, police is, I think, what we have, we've, you know, we've kind of presented what we've got there. It is a, an issue you, at least a portion of it, you're probably going to have to go to the public with. What you do with these other facilities is really what it does in terms of giving you that run and moving that up. And you've got a couple of others on here that are going to have some budget implications, too, possibly Carnegie could, depending on what the task force comes up with, and then the big elephant in the room that I'm not for sure can pay for itself, but remains to be seen on another task force, is EOTIC. And what you do there is going to have some implications with, again, the run you take probably at police. So you might want to talk about them all in general, because really, it's a strategy of how you deal with facilities. It's really amazing, because a few years ago, I really, I kept looking at this thing, and looked at it, and did not have a clue how we were going to address any facilities. And we've just, I mean, we've come light-years in a short period of time with facilities right now, but it's still going to take a lot of strategy to get-
Okay, one of the essentials we talked about was a community opinion assessment. Are we doing anything with that? Because I think that's actually very important, to see where, where the community is. Yes, it's important to have that well ahead of that, because it, you know, to, to run a campaign requires at least a year. A year and a half is really ideal, so.
Are you referring to a type of visioning process that the CIC recommended when you said that?
No, this is, this is asking the public their, their views, so we understand where in the priority of facilities and city services that the police, police facility stands. Because if it's, you know, like, a really low perception that there's a need there, that's a huge chunk of work to get to, to raise it up to the higher, higher level. So we've done that before every election, and as a person who works those elections, that's absolutely an essential, to find out where, where your messages are and need to be and what the community perceives.
So you're talking about in reference to the police department only?
No, I think we'd probably be, I think we'd probably test all facilities and services. I mean, we've never done one where you said, you know, how do you feel about your services you receive from the city as well? So, you know, we just need to get, find out where the weaknesses are and where the strengths are in our messaging.
Yeah, and, and the other thing, just to remind the commission, is that we're required by state law, all essential-y facilities by 2022 have to meet seismic requirements. So the building we're in now, it's estimated at today's price is about a million dollars to bring that building up to seismic standards, and that's without any renovation whatsoever. And if we didn't even increase the size of the building, trying to modernize a little bit, they estimate up to about three and a half million dollars. So either pay in today's dollars or tomorrow's dollars, but at some point, we're going to have to do something with that building down there. So it, this commission's going to have to decide, or whoever follows in your footsteps is going to have to decide how we address that issue. Because by 2022, which seems like a long way away, but realistically, it's, it's not that far away if we don't do some long-term planning.
So just a seismic retrofit, and then you do the renovations it would take, you're probably going to end up spending about $5 million on that building, and it may be more-
You have nothing.
And you're still undersized for what you need. So, I mean, it may take a couple of runs up the flagpole with the police building, but sooner or later, we've got to engage that conversation and really begin to talk about those needs and what has to be done.
Well, we have a final design.
For the renovations we're doing now?
That and both.
New building.
We do have a preliminary design down there.
That's been approved and-
No, it's just been-
It's that one we talked, you brought-
No, I know, but I don't know that we've, that we've seen it since it's been tweaked and-
I'm, I'm sorry, are you talking about the one for-
Renovation for current, I mean, I'd like to see that again, because I don't know exactly what we agreed to or what your department agreed to.
Right.
And then final sign for the future.
Yeah, we haven't quite finalized, finalized that yet, and we're very, very close, just a few things we want to tweak on it, but I can bring it to the next commission meeting or work session and have the commission look at it. It really doesn't do too much. We're, we're knocking down a couple walls. I remember, we can't move a whole lot of our-
Right.
...operations over to the other side. So code enforcement is moving up to where Mr. Patterson's office used to be. We've already moved our detectives out of where they were now, they're in trailer number two. Eventually, we'll move our sergeants out of, out of their office, put them in trailer one. Some of them started that move, that move already. We're going to open up where my office is now, we're going to put a doorway between that, what we call the squad room, where the officers take their daily briefing to give them a little bit more room to write reports and to have a little bit more of separation of those things, so they're not all on top of each other. We're going to redesign the locker rooms. What the, what we're doing aside now is we're taking the, the men's locker room, woman's locker room, and combining them to give, give them more space, because right now, we have some people don't even have-
Not as it, that's not as it sounds, no.
No.
We are being webstreamed live.
Yeah, there you go. Then what we'll do with the, where the woman's restroom was on the other side of City Hall near the break room, we're going to make that into a woman's locker room, so they'll have their own locker room down there. So we're helping a little bit with some of our spacing needs that way, but we're, we're pretty restricted in what we can do as far as moving operational duties to the other side. And also, you know, to be honest, we're trying to be very, very responsible with the money that was, that was given to us to do this, because we don't want to dump a whole lot of money into this place, thinking that we might, in, in a couple of years, you know, hopefully, get a new police department built. So we're trying to keep well under budget to do this.
Also, too, you got to appreciate just how bad it is, you got to go down there and go in trailer one. That trailer should probably be taken out. It's had animals move in underneath it, the place just reeks, it is. I don't know how anybody can work in that.
It's terrible.
But I do, do agree that part of the public perception that we need to test is that after that's done, does anyone think that that's, you know, that we're finished? I mean, that's, that's one of the dangers of renovating, so I think that would be important. Daphne?
I just wanted to reiterate the importance of what Doug, of what I feel Doug said on that, of controlling our other facilities without bonds before we, so we have some, so we can show that we've used funds judiciously before we go to the police station. And then the second is, if we do have a library that all other uses in there are compatible with it, such as, though I would think the ones I was suggesting, park and rec, community ed, where you'd have a whole community center that would complement a library.
Okay, first-
I was going to say, just one thing, Mr. Patterson talked about this very briefly one time, but there is another way to do this. Of course, you have a debt service on it, but you can actually have a private person build you a facility, they lease it to the city for 20 or 30 years while you pay the debt service on it, and after that lease term is over with, and the city owns the building. Of course, there's still that issue about how we fund it, but I mean, that it's, it's, I don't know.
Does the debt service fee on a $10 million?
Million, probably, David, $700,000.
So I assume you're looking at various financial models before we get to it?
We've looked at it, I mean, I don't, I don't know how realistic that, that particular model is. I mean, that, you know, obviously, with so many programs being funded out of the general fund, whether or not that's realistic to expect $700,000 a year payment to do that, but-
I would assume, David, if we are taking money out of the general fund, but we've obligated debt, is that a revenue bond?
Well, it's a revenue bond. Or elected.
Walk like a duck. Yep.
That might require a vote as well, yeah.
And you're still looking, you got to have a revenue stream.
Yeah.
And so you might as well look at a bond, because it'll probably be cheaper.
I hear, I, I'm glad we touched on this, because last night I wrote it as a question. Do we, as a city, have to have a charter or voted the people for revenue bonds? Do, do all cities?
No, that's, it's fairly unique.
Oh, interesting, so we went, we can't even just do that?
Not a general obligation bond or a revenue bond.
General obligation.
Oh, yeah, that's a state statute, isn't it?
Say that again, Mr. Wimmer.
Revenue.
Other we, yeah. Whether we're going to pay back the bond, any bond in the city, even using existing tax revenues to do it, we still have to take it to the people.
Okay, so I just think, make sure everybody's clear on the path for police department. Any more questions on that?
Well, if that's the case, then how, is a year time even enough to get a, so would it be a two-step process to get the revenue bonds approved and then put it out, or how does, what does that look like? How does that work?
Well, I think, again, we'll, this is something you'll have to decide is really a priority, and you'll begin to-
Yes, you need that.
You'll need to move that on to your agenda and then on to the ballot, and kind of, you know, having been through the fire annexation campaigns, you know the focus that's going to take. So as you begin to look at that, you kind of have to balance that with anything else you're talking about, because you can't have a lot of issues going on, and it, it takes a lot of time on the part of the commission, because you're the ones that got to go out there and sell this. So it's really, how comfortable are you for that? Are you ready to really put a campaign out there? And what other things are on the agenda? Because if you've got the public fired up on issues over here, it's hard to stay focused on what you're doing, so you need to calm the water as best you can and figure out what the priorities are here, so.
And that will be a presidential election, is that right?
Not me. Well-
Well, not me, wait, for May or November.
Well, you have primary, probably, I guess, huh?
Yeah. So, high, high, high interest, high turnout, so, you know, the decision needs to be made on this fairly soon. I mean, it would be nice to have it, the decision made fairly early in the year, because we're, I mean, we're really only 18 months away.
I still didn't get my question answered. Is it a one or a two-step process? Do you do it all on the same ballot? Yes, we issue, that we authorize the city?
Yeah, that is the question. It's a single question, it's a money question.
Okay.
What's your-
Okay, yeah, 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 oh, it is all one step then. Got it, got it, sorry. I was thinking it's two steps.
Since you're going to have to vote for a, a vote to fund this-
Yeah.
Whether you're doing a revenue bond or a general obligation bond, it's probably just as easy to do a general obligation bond, unless you want to go and contract somebody else to build it and work that. But, you know, the more complicated it is to explain, the more difficult it becomes, so.
Well, let's make sure that we, that you explored all of those options, though, to put them side by side, to see which really is more advantageous. But I think this, you know, the single issue is, is really important, you know, when do we want to run that up? And then, to me, the first step is the focus groups or opinion poll. I mean, that, that's, we, we need to know where we stand, because if it's no and hell no, that's a really different set of circumstances.
Just a comment, I mean, we're, we're talking about the, the general election in two years hence. We bring these things up every two years, and I, I mean, don't misunderstand me, I think it's really important that we get a new police station, but we are investing some money in the current facility. And it's, it's going to meet, it's going to meet our needs in a kind of a subsstandard way, but it's going to meet our needs for more than two years. And I, you know, people are, people are, a lot of people are projecting that the recovery, especially on the employment side, is going to be a slow one. And I, I think we need to position ourselves that, that we're not going to send this out if we've got an employment rate that's still near 10% in Oregon. I mean, I think we've got, I think we got to look at a growing economy before we push this. If it turns out we're in great shape in 18 months, I think that's one thing. But if it turns out that we're not, I think that's, that's completely another one. And I, I think we have to bear that in mind.
Oh, that's what the, that's what the opinion poll would show, too.
Yeah, no, I understand, I mean, I don't have any problem going out with opinions poll and seeing how things are at a given time, but I, I don't, I don't think we need to feel that this is that urgent of an issue, because we do have a facility that's now a police facility, and we are investing some money in it to make it work. I, I don't think, I don't think it's adequate, don't misunderstand.
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you. Let me turn that, though, to the chief and ask you to respond to that, is there urgency? Because I think that, those are, that's a really good question.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. You know, I was actually going to, you know, comment earlier that I've, I've already turned the corner to thinking that facility is more urgent than staffing force now. With, with, with four officers we hired this year, and we're able to go to 10-hour shifts and increase our coverage on, on the streets and things like that, to me, it's, it, the priority now is getting a new police facility, because we are inadequate, you're absolutely right, we're inadequate, but we're inadequate in ways that really hurt our efficiency. We, we, we have a lot of victims we bring in there, we don't have really good interviews to sit down and, and make victims feel comfortable to give statements to detectives or to police officers, we don't have places for the families, we don't have a, a good enough evidence processing area to where we can really process evidence that's crucial to criminal investigations and prosecutions. So, yeah, I, I think we're at the point now where, where we really, really need to address this issue, and, and I'm not sure waiting a couple of years down the road and then three years after that to get the police department built, which is, my understanding is usually about, about three years or so.
You see that.
Right, yeah. So, so like I said, my, that's my number one priority now, I think, in the police department, is, is not staffing anymore. Even though staffing is important, we're going to talk about it a little bit later, I, I really think we're at the point now where we really, really do need to look at our facility issues.
Okay, in the interest of, of focusing, it, you know, November of 2011 is, if that's the outside, or May of 2011 is-
Is tomorrow.
Is tomorrow. This decision about whether to go after a vote needs to be made very quickly, so, I mean, in my mind, that, that the, the opinion poll needs to go out, that needs to be analyzed, and a decision needs to be made about an election date.
Bring you some information on the February work session about where we, this issue, so we make some decisions and move forward, looking at, we'll kind of-
I think opinion poll has to be done before you can bring us information.
Well, I know, but I will need the decision to go get that opinion poll as well.
Is there anyone here that wouldn't give that direction?
How much does it cost?
Under $20,000.
Yeah. Less than the cost of an election-
Yeah.
That where you're going out with blind, blind with just perception, oh, I believe the public-
And it could, it could be way under that. I mean, I think the last one we did was under $10,000, if I remember correctly, or $11,000, I think it was.
I think in Lebanon, where they did one recently, they just opened a new facility, I think it was about $8,000, but it's-
Depending what group you go with. Let me clarify one thing, too, and I, and I'll look at this, but when we start talking about some type of contract build and lease back, usually the advantage of that type of approach is because you have a revenue stream you can use. Since we have to go to a vote anyhow, general obligation, the rates on that's going to be cheaper than a lease range like that, and you still got to go through a vote, so it's really, it's not a tool that really makes, well, it makes sense, but just, we don't have a revenue stream, so it's, we're going to have to go through the same motions on it. I'll check that out for sure, but that's kind of how the ones I've looked at before have always been, and I suspect that holds true today, so.
Okay, so you'll get information back to us-
Yep.
-following the poll, and then we'll have a, a date at which we need to make a decision?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that's really crucial, because if we make it too late, if we make Because if we make it too late, if we make that decision too late, that gives us less advantage.
Probably need to make something.
By July 1?
Yeah, I was going to say probably May.
Should be earlier.
Probably a year lead time at least, if you're going to go.
It's ideal. Daphne?
Okay, so we do this opinion poll, we make a decision. So are we making this decision whether or not the Carnegie's empty, the end of the Oregon Trail Center is empty and we don't have a library? And we're shuffling?
Yes.
And we're shuffling back and forth with a temporary spot for a library? So are we making the decision for a police station in isolation of all those other needs?
I think, first of all, I support the poll going forward. I don't think we're making a decision about whether to go out and vote that we see that.
We're not. And the poll, the poll will test some other things.
Yes, and so I don't have any problem going ahead with that.
No, I don't have a problem with the poll either.
And by the time you get to making that, that decision, you're going to, hopefully, by that time both of your task force will have reported back and you'll kind of know what you're faced with, with those other two facilities. And we will know more on this library issue by then as well, so. In fact, here come those now.
Okay. Yes, no, nothing can be made in isolation. I think that's why we're having the, I mean, the year of the facility is absolutely key. Let's move on to the next one. Here is the, it's in the interpretive center, right? That the next one? On the, how you want to do it?
Yeah. We might as well talk about the elephant here, huh?
Well, you have them listed that way.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's up to you. I don't, I don't have a need to...
And, and my understanding is that you do not want a library anymore and we're going to be closing that, is that correct?
Oh, oh!
Yeah, come on!
We're going all electronic. We voted to go all electronic, no more paper books. Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
The end of the Oregon Trail, this is, this is one that's going to pose an interesting question to you. We have, as you learned yesterday, we, the RFPs are in. I pity the task force that has to go through and look at those because they are, I think, quite a potpourri of proposals. You have seen the discussion that we've had to date, and I kind of put that older memo back in there. I mean, one of the keys here, one of the things you're going to need to think through is with this facility, even when the task force comes back, is there any element in there from a city perspective that's going to require a subsidy? And are you willing to subsidize any of it? Because I, 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 just looking at those numbers I gave you before, even if you can conjure up the best of images and you could change out those, paste those people I had in there in terms of the revenue streams, that was a pretty generous revenue stream in there. And then you begin to look at those costs. And those could be riddled on, particularly if those are private employees versus public employees on some of those cases. But making that pencil is going to be very difficult, particularly when you put the deferred maintenance on top of that and what you're going to do with that facility. So that's something you're going to have to wrestle with, won't know until we get the task force back. But I think one thing you need to think about is what happens if when it comes back, it requires still a little subsidy or a whole lot of subsidy? What's that decision going to make and how does that factor into what you do there? I think, too, I think for that to pencil is the nature of what you have today, which more of a passive nature, probably going to have to change and be more of an interactive nature. And that's something you're going to have to be, you know, you ask yourself, are you comfortable with that change in that? You also have the limitation of private pieces going in there, and this is something that may or may not be an issue you'll have to wrestle with. That is a charter park. And so that kind of poses some other restriction that you may not otherwise have if you were just dealing with a piece of property that was just city-owned property. So it's really something you may want to start thinking about. I don't have any answers because we don't have the task force report back, but...
Well, I think we have two questions. First of all, we do not have a budget for the task force. And so what's the range of the proposals? Because I think that's, first of all, are we willing to fork out those funds for whomever the, is recommended?
Have you looked at the range on those?
I have looked at the range. I think the lowest that came in...
And just to refresh everyone's memories, this is just, this is not any implementation. This is just the, the task force public process to get to, you know, a series one or a series of recommendations for us to consider for implementing a plan. So are we comfortable with the committee selecting one or more?
It would indicate a maximum above which you don't go above. Now, if the committee identifies something that's really good, then maybe we can start negotiating with, and says this is really good, we've got to look at it and start negotiating the price with somebody. And I think it'd be very helpful to the committee to know, is there a maximum that the commission doesn't want to go above? I think it'd be good, too.
I don't know if anyone has any opinions on that. I mean, I, I think, I always hate to go into it with, without an open mind about the quality of the proposal, but, you know, I mean, you know, if you aim kind of towards the midpoint, you're safer. No, that's what I'm, no, there's no budget. Well, that's been the problem, is that we don't...
Zero is the answer?
See, and that's been, it's been difficult for the proposers because Terry's gotten all those phone calls, you know, what are we supposed to do? Well, give us your best shot, so...
Oh, I hope she didn't say, give us your best shot. They might have interpreted this, go ahead and put, yes, the maximum we possibly could.
You know, you don't know that. You don't know that.
You can negotiate.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
To request a proposal that the committee can, can discuss their, their top choices. And when you, I think, when you make the selection, then you can actually, they propose some costs that you can work out.
I'm sure the committee's going to come up with a few to look at. I mean, you know, I think the intent of forming a committee is to knock out ones that probably can't meet the, what, what we would expect.
Get to the midpoint.
And you're, so the commission, I presume, unless, unless everything's a dud, is going to get several...
Doug, would you take over, please?
Thing you may want to think about as well, especially with a proposal like this, is I, I think the mayor's right, you probably start gravitating towards the midpoint. And if one of the folks that you're negotiating with is one of the higher proposals, there's things they can chop off that. Now, with this particular task force, one of the things that you will need to guard against, and it's going to be kind of tough, because as you go through that, if everything kind of comes together, that's good. But chances are you're going to have a few groups who want to see it different and they're going to want some additional involvement. And when you begin to tack that on, then you begin to slide past whatever that budget was. So trying to control that public dialogue to a point in time that, okay, we've got this information, we're going to make a decision, is going to be the challenge of holding down that cost on that task force.
Mary, may I interject? One thing you're also going to see on a number of these proposals is that you have quite a few out-of-state consulting firms who have submitted. And I'm not sure that that was a consideration when you put this out to bid, but, so they had to build in travel costs and, you know, a number of various other things that I don't think that we would have thought about if it had been a local firm. However, you know, in discussing some of these questions with firms that have called me, you know, there are options for the negotiation, like Scott was talking about, that you can do webexing now. You can do web conferencing. They can do telephone calls and interviews from a long distance versus needing to be here on-site. So I think that there's some flexibility there. So I think if you look at the scope of work that they have proposed, much of the budget is pretty similar across, but then you're going to have additional costs built in for those that are out of state.
Are you, are you to the mayor?
Thank you. It, it's fine for now. The, sorry, together my thoughts. I guess my proposal would be that the task force do their work and, you know, bring us the two recommendations, and then we get to decide if it's between $35,000 and $85,000 or something like that. But I mean, I hate to reject a fabulous sounding proposal if it's negotiable and, you know, if we want to stretch. I mean, I think it's, this could be rough to go, for a citizen's proposal, to go for $100,000, that's a pretty spendy proposal. Because, I mean, it's not going to be weekly meetings. Daphne?
As we're going to continue through the day, we already just spent $20,000 this morning for, or $10,000, $10,000 to $20,000 for a survey, for an opinion survey, which I'm just fine with. That's just no problem. But I think to have no budget on this is a disservice and unfair to every other department in the city that does have to work with budgets. And I think we need to set some parameters with this.
What would you like to recommend?
Well, what, $50,000, if that's the midpoint.
I think if it comes to some, you know, if it comes, if it comes to, yes, there's some good ones out there and they're higher, if you set it ahead of time, then it makes it far easier for staff, for staff to negotiate the price. We've, the commission came up with this and, and can you, the commission also, well, say we look at a $65,000 proposal. And if, in fact, then the commission could identify pieces to chop off of it, and it still makes it the best, I think staff's in a far better position to say, this is too much. And the commission's already, prior to the decision-making, the commission already indicated we could only go up to such amount. I would be a lot more comfortable, personally.
And, and keep in mind that we did a disservice, I think, in a way, to the proposers by not setting a budget ahead of time.
Yes, I know.
So by doing it now, we disadvantage those who shot for the moon. So I think so, too.
I think we'd be challenged if we didn't try to negotiate with them. But if we, I mean, if, I'm not suggesting we cut off anybody because they're too high. I'm suggesting that, that the, if you, if you don't have a price to negotiate with, then I don't know what you do.
Yeah, I guess what I meant was not eliminating anybody
No.
If I budget now.
Right.
Until you've gone, until you've gone through the selection process.
Right.
And then working, yeah.
Right.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
You know, I'm still trying to get my arms around what this person, this firm is doing. Is this firm operating this and are they paying to rent the facility?
No, no, no.
Pay us for revenues to...
No, no, no. Remember, I outlined it already. This is a citizens, this is the, this is the group to do the citizens' task force and to make recommendations to us for future use. That's, it's the public.
All it is, this is not the operations manager.
No.
And in that process, if there's folks who have an idea of what they may put in there, that group will review that and factor that in to whatever recommendation they bring forward.
And I've been told that it's, needs to be cost, needs cost analysis and cost efficient?
If we're, if we're talking, if we moved away from the topic of the cost, I've got something else on, on...
No, 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 we're still on cost.
Okay.
So are we comfortable with the task force dealing with recommendations and then coming back to negotiate? Since we've kind of got the horse before the cart, cart before the horse, or whatever. Okay, staff, understand that direction, too? Okay. So on our list of money that we're spending, I'm going to put up to, what's our max, did you say, 80?
I think I saw one at $101,000.
All right. I'm going to put that down, up to, I don't think we would ever do that, but up to $101,000 then on that piece, so.
Wait, hold it. What are you saying?
I'm saying that, that I think it's important, I'm keeping a record of the additional costs we've just added on to the city.
Oh, I...
No, I, I understood something differently. We would not cut off any, any recommendations in terms of cost.
No, 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 I'm...
Worst case.
So this worst case, but we're, we're agreeing on the 50, that's what I'm asking.
No.
We can't right now because we didn't send it out in our RFP, so...
I think, I think we're counting on the screening committee to do that initial work. Okay.
If the $101,000 is the best one, well, it's probably going to be one of the things that we put forward. But you said putting forward two. And I don't think you meant that.
I think I did. Did I say that?
I thought, I thought you said that.
I think there are a number of...
Bring two forward to the...
Okay, if that's, if that's the case, and we find our two, or we are in high part, but I would suggest leaving that to the committee.
Oh, I do, I agree.
How many to advance, I, and...
I misspoke, I, no, that's...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's just fine. Any other wisdom then on this one?
Yes. It's not wisdom, but it's, it's a point. When the city manager referred to the additional constraint of this being a charter park, I would argue that that is also a potential benefit if, if the city is going to, if the city decides at one point to make some capital investment into the facility, I presume if it meets the conditions, the park SDCs could be used. If it meets the conditions for facility development. And that's something to investigate. I'm not saying that is the case, but I, I mean, that is, that might be something potential.
You'd have to get into CID.
Huh?
You'd have to get into CID.
Yeah, you'd have to give an amendment to the SDC.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I would have to go, I know we'd have to go through a process, but the thing...
Definitely, that is true, though, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I have a question also. What are the restrictions of a charter park? I mean, I think that absolutely has to be known before the proposers...
No, I don't know that you really have restrictions on it, other than just...
Get rid of it, without voting the people.
Isn't there something about non-moved buildings without voting?
We had to vote on, I remember I ran the campaign for the visitor's center to be built because we couldn't use it for another purpose.
We'll look at that and get you...
So, yeah, I think those restrictions absolutely have to be very...
Well, yeah, but the visitor's center wasn't a recreational piece. Really?
No, I think it was because, yeah, right, it was outside the mission.
We can find that, we can find that.
Yeah, that's all we need to know. Okay. All right, that's another facility. Shall we move ahead then to Carnegie Center? Carnegie Center swimming pool, Ermitaian House, looks like a Scott Archer program here.
No, that's good. I'm just, Scott, you might update folks from where we're at with the task force, and I'll add a couple of thoughts you may want to look at.
All right. Well, we're, the Carnegie Center Task Force, as you know, is directed by the commission. Staff has been working on that. We've held two task force meetings. And the next big event, city manager announced that at the, on his report the other night at your commission meeting, and we're having our, it's kind of our big public meeting for the process, that the task force is hosting a public open house at the Carnegie Center on February 6th, that's a Saturday, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the purpose of that is to invite any, any members of the community, any members of the public that are interested in having input on the process, to join the task force in discussing that. There'll be some, there'll be some methods set up whereby that input can be gathered or given or what have you. Tours of the building, folks that aren't aware of the building. And so that's the next big event. And then the task force convenes, oh, and then also, there's the, there's a survey that is available, and it's not posted yet, but it will be by this coming week on our website, that again allows anybody the opportunity to provide input to the task force for considerations. And so the information gathering is still, is still happening. And then the task force will take all that information, come back together and start to form an actual recommendation of recommendations. And then the consultant will bring that forward to the commission when it's ready, which is probably in about a month to a month and a half, is what I would estimate, so.
Let me throw a little, little wrinkle that you might want to think about. And it's awkward because you've got this task force that's now looking at Carnegie. But we are also on a timeline for elaborate. And if we have to make an interim move and not facilitate that, I mean, one of the places that you could use without spending additional dollars, because the move is going to be spent to begin with, would be the Carnegie. Now, you're going to have an upset task force that all of a sudden we kind of usurp that process and put this in there. But the question becomes, if we have to go someplace else, we're going to start eating resources and an interim move and then a second move, as well as whatever that lease is. So now, if, and then the other question, if you move the library in there, and then the library in there, and then we are able to close the deal and create a library, does that remain a satellite of the library, or do you move back out of there? And there's some, there's some elements that that could fit in nicely for the library long-term, but you've got, you've got another process, and I think those folks are probably going to see this issue somewhat different now, but it's something you have to think about, given what we're faced with up at Hilltop right now.
Can we afford a satellite library at this time with staffing?
Well, it's a challenge.
Let me, I mean, let me comment.
Yeah, Doug?
If we were to go that direction, I wouldn't have a problem with it, well, I'd have some problems, but I wouldn't have a greater problem with it if the site of the library was on about where it is now. It doesn't make much sense to have a satellite library within, what, six or seven blocks of the main branch.
That's not service.
I mean, should there be a site within six or seven blocks?
Let me, let me clarify that, it's really, yeah, it's really not a, it's not a satellite library as well as a, a specific piece or...
Yeah, and I, you know, I kind of, I think, you're talking about if we have to have an interim place to put books and staff, and then, and then what happens. We live in, have both the task force, I mean, some of the things that I was interested in for part of a, a library complex might actually fit better when the task force looks at it in terms of the Carnegie. I don't know, I don't know that, and so there may be elements in the, in what we look at, located at the library, that would better fit the Carnegie, but I think those are the things that needs to be thrown through the task force, and I, I would like to just say, yeah, maybe we have to store books there for a while and have our library functions out there as a while. I don't think we need to put that forward as something at all as a satellite library or anything, if we're going to have this task force working, they've got to be, they've got to, they've got to work independent of those kind of, of potential constraints.
Would you be comfortable with us at least giving those thoughts to that task force for them to...
Not, because I think, I think that might set, set the vision a little bit.
I think the pressure needs to be on, can we work with Danielson's to make our timeline work? That, to me, is where we need to exert the pressure.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think we're going to come up short of that timeline, we might get a little bit of extension, but Tony met yesterday with, tomorrow?
Yeah, March is our lease, right, and then May?
May, may. Given a verbal to, and a email to May 31, just reiterated that on the phone.
Tony met yesterday, I mean, there are, there's still a lot of process they have to go through. I think they're looking at demoing some of those buildings. That, that part can proceed, actually getting a new building built is going to be, you know, that's, you know, how quickly they need to take that building down, that's going to be the issue, so, well, May's looking like a possibility, yeah.
But I'm hoping to have land use applications in in the next probably two months, and pull, start pulling building permits at 2011.
If I, if I might interject here, if, if in fact, we have a site by the time they're closing, and if in fact, there's an empty building, even though they're going to be pulling permits, by when?
Well, I, they're, they're going to get back to us with a written timeline, but what they're, what they're talking about is getting the land use applications going the next couple of months. They want to demolish the building, clear the site, and get it ready so that they can start doing site work.
Okay, and we're talking about a single building, the one that Danielson's grocery store, Fresh Market Place, is, no, it's still empty, and I'm not suggesting anything, except if we in fact, by the time they're closing the facility there, know that we've got a site, that's a very different story, and given that there's an empty facility nearby, maybe we are able to work out something with Danielson's.
And I, and, I mean, Craig's been really good in talking about that, he's also indicated, you know, if this other arrangement does not work, they're, they're willing to build a space for us, and again, that's a, but there's that revenue stream we have to deal with again, so, because building a space, you get back to kind of what we talked about with some type of, the old and lease back thing, and so we're going to have to come up with a lot more money at that point.
With all due respect to Danielson's, they've been giving us six months extensions, I bet for the full four years I've been on this commission, we've had a lot of time to try to figure this out. So this is just one more deferred, not deferred maintenance, but one more facility issue, and now the rubber's hitting the road, so I just don't want to see Danielson's cast with too much blame on this situation.
I don't want to be in blame, that's not the...
I know, but that it's their, in their pocket to figure it out for us, because, I mean, we've known that they've wanted to do something for a long time.
I want to emphasize my point, that, that point was simply this, if we have a, if we have a site in place by the time, before they in fact start demolishing that one site, and whether there is another building that we can temporarily move in with the fact that we in fact have a site, they might be, be willing to do that.
That's more helpful.
I, I know, I have no intentions in any case, they've been a very great partner.
Yes.
I, I don't know that they've raised our lease hardly at all, in that whole period of, that whole period of time, I, I recognize that.
They've been amazing partners.
Let me too, before we leave the subject, if I can try your patience a little bit, and I know well, but could I want to make sure we've explored this, and you're, that you are truly uncomfortable with that. Mo, you had some thoughts in regards to how the Carnegie might integrate with the library, and I think it might be advantageous just to kind of share those, not saying you should do it, but at least I want you to hear this, and then you can decide whether that's off the table or something we ought to look at, so.
Well, one of the thoughts that was put forward with the citizens' group was a genealogical site, and what my vision would be...
You mean by genealogical?
Well, the, the family records and stuff.
Just that?
No, no, that's what I mean. I would expand that to historical research in general, and kind of make it a regional center for a place for people to go do that, but also leave it open to the ability of having the public come in, especially for special events, maybe have exhibits there. I would like to partner, if we did that, something like that, with the current historical societies, Clackamas County Family, there's a couple of them that are actually looking at the library. Amazing, not just materials, but also volunteer support, and so the way I would envision it, potentially, we would, the library could provide the oversight, and some minimal staffing, and work with these volunteer organizations to create a regional center for historical research and genealogical studies, so that there would be, because there's really nothing like that around here, and people are constantly wanting to like, you know, donate old family books and old family records and all that kind of stuff, and then, so, it would be kind of a, a mixed-use building, which I think would fit very nicely with the Carnegie, and that, I haven't really looked a lot into the numbers, like, I definitely, as an administrator, could add that to my plate, but I think there's a lot of grants and stuff out there. Actually, I think there would be a lot of grants out there to develop something like this, and if we worked with those societies that already exist, I think it could be a pretty cool collaboration. So I was thinking of a specialized use if the library continued, if the library had any, you know, grounds to, yeah.
The commission is aware, the idea of the, the genealogical idea kind of already bubbled up from the task force, so it's, it's already kind of out there, they haven't, the, the task force hasn't fully vetted that concept yet, and that's kind of where Mo's idea sort of comes into play, is if they want to, if the task force decides that that's something they're interested in exploring, then they might consider some, but the, that, some potential library use has been discussed, although it's just one of a number of ideas in the task force process, so I just want you to be aware and not be surprised that that's already in the discussion mix.
I'm really, I'm really uncomfortable when you talk about any of the specifics, I mean, I don't hear a problem with them coming, coming up, but that's, that's where we've got the task force is. I did want to mention something, though, there's a, there's a good reason that you could expand the Carnegie. When it was built, there's that side door that you see, when it was built, there was a design included for a reading room, that was extended beyond the existing Carnegie, so, it can see, yeah, the information's somewhere, but you could check with Roger McClure. So there is, there is the potential of actually expanding the Carnegie and being consistent with the original design of the building, so I just wanted to throw that out, you're, you're not in the future, limited to that space with something that would be, if you expanded, would be inconsistent with what the original design was.
And there, the Clackamas County Historical Society, as you know, is in re, revisioning mode, and, and they have a pretty incredible research collection, and, you know, that, there may be an opportunity for some really good collaboration, and...
Interesting, but I should, yeah.
Yep, but that's an interesting idea. Staff have direction, or you still feel confused on where we want to go with this?
Uh, no, I think...
Task force continues.
My understanding is, we want the task force to complete it for it, and we don't want to impede that, if these issues that they are now working on bubble up, it's not, it's something that you'd look at, but you want that to come from the task force.
But interim step for the library, that's where...
The interim step from the library was, yeah, that, I'm not sure what, but that may be, you know, there's still some information we need to gather before we can really decide what's going to happen there, but it is something we need to look at, because that's probably going to, we're probably going to have to take some type of interim step.
We haven't redesigned the police, police department, we could just shove them over there and...
Mission.
Actually, actually, we'll, we'll put the library in favor of one, and that will get folks out, want to vote on it.
Daphne, I'm Rocky.
So Scott, if you're dealing with the task force, then maybe you could, the, the least we could do then, or at least or most, is, do they, are they up to speed that the library, we have lost our lease in Danielson's, is the task force? I know it's, I mean, it's just some of the broad background of what's happening.
About discussing the Carnegie as an interim location for that?
Well, no, I don't, they, they don't need to do that, but they just need to know that the library, what our situation is, is broad-based, so...
I don't know that we've really had that specific discussion, the, the members of that group are, are pretty active in our community, so I would guess a lot of them would probably know that, but we haven't had that discussion.
Well, it's just, it's just background.
Yeah.
General information they probably should know.
The, the, the fact that we may have to have an interim location for the library for a month, two months, who knows how many of a months, but is, because I don't really know if any of us know really the gap between leaving and going into somewhere else, and so, to me, the question is, is any location that we're in interim is probably going to be extremely small compared to the size of what a library would be? Does that mean where the library is open in some fashion in that interim, or is not open? Because I don't, I mean, if, if, if we took a library of that size and moved it somewhere, to me, that means we're storing stuff until we open a library, but maybe I'm wrong on that, but these are rumors that are going around, around, you know, and people are wondering what's going to happen with the library, so are we talking possibly of, of a, a place to store this stuff before we open a new library, or are we talking about trying to keep it open in some minimal form in a small location until we can get to the actual library?
I think this is a really good question, and could I, could I add one to the range of it?
Yeah.
What happens if the library's actually closed and the books are stored for that, that little gap period? What, what happens if we have to go to a smaller place, refurbish it, and also store? And could you talk about those scenarios, because those, those concern me as well?
Well, I thought about this a great deal, as you can imagine, usually at 3:00 in the morning.
I'm sure.
What, what I envision happening is that we will have to go to a smaller space, and if that's the case, we've already kind of thought this through, we would take new materials, and, you know, part of the children's collection or something like that, newspapers, magazines, kind of the current kind of stuff, and have it be more of a, like a reading room, new material kind of situation, where people could still pick up their holds, because they could still order holds from other libraries, and then we would probably have to take a bunch of our materials out of circulation and store them for some certain time, but I would, I really, really, really want to keep operating at all costs, and maybe only be closed for like, an interim period of maybe up to a week for moving, at the, at the very most, you know, it shouldn't even take that long, just depending on what happens. So that's all up in the air, but, yeah, we have thought about that, and we really want to stay open.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, because, I mean, to me, it seems like work and money to create a smaller space plus storage versus a close down with a huge anticipation in the community of a grand reopening, so, can you explain that?
Well, I think that there is like, probably a cost-benefit analysis that could be done at some, you know, it depends on how long that gap is, I think, and that's one thing we really don't know. So, you know, the cost of two moves, you have to kind of figure out what, and then what we're moving into, like, what would that take to move into, for instance?
So what, you still haven't answered the question that I'm applying for, what, what are the downsides of, of, I mean, a shorter closure, I mean, not six months, but if it were two months of simply storing everything while we anticipate the grand reopening, what are the downsides of that, rather than going to a smaller space, which again, I don't know the cost-benefit, but in my mind, I'm just trying to explore what, what...
I think the downside that I see are, number one, staffing problems, because a bunch of our people would like have to quit.
Okay, employment, all right.
And then number two, because they wouldn't have jobs, basically, and then number two is that I think a lot of people in Oregon City would get out of the habit of going to the Oregon City Public Library, and there's so many closer libraries that...
There, you made sense to me, okay, thank you, that's what I needed to hear.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
How about that? Said something sensible.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you always do.
Doug?
You might, you might end up putting some other things in disarray, I mean, people put holds and say, Oregon City Library is where I want to pick them up.
I thought about that one.
But I think, even if we're a two-month period, I think you'd have an irate public who 67% or more voted for the, the library levy, and then what does Oregon City do? You know, I, I think, I think there would be a tremendous public backlash if you did that. I think at least you got to have the ability of people to pick up their holds if nothing else.
Well, and if we had that, then we could do new materials and story times, and, you know, we could figure it out.
Probably withhold some dollars, too, and that could...
That, that could be, okay, thank you, that's, that's what I needed to hear, because you've been saying that, and I just had to put all the pieces together in my mind. Okay, any other things with library? Okay, so we know what the challenges are there, we also, in the budget, we don't have anything set aside for Carnegie implementation, whatever that is, so that's in another additional budget, unbudgeted item, but we may know that during budgeting this year.
I think we'll have a...
Maybe.
I think we'll have an idea, we're, the consultant, one of their directives, and from the commission, was that, and staff has made that very clear, that they'll come forward with cost recommendations, or cost, cost factors with, with the associated recommendations, whatever those are, so, right now, it's a broad range, we, we don't know what the recommendations are, so until then, we can't really give you any range of costs.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure that's...
You will have some approximated costs with each of the recommendations that might come forward with us.
I want to throw something out that we might want to cover a little bit later, because it's not exactly facility driven. The Carnegie was under the library, the, a library park is under parks. I think whatever the reuse is, we need to think about where then the Carnegie needs to be, does it need to be under parks, or does it need to be under the library? I think it's going to be driven by what the, what the decision of the task force is going to be in terms of how it's reused, and what's the most logical department to put it under, that's just a comment.
Can I move on, or comment on that?
Actually, this, if you're done with that, I thought, I just, I wanted to let you know that I came up with the charter language that you were asking about earlier with the EOTIC discussion, if you want, it's, it's pretty quick, and...
Sure, sure, yeah, let's hear it.
You want that now, or if you want to wait?
Sure, let's hear it.
Our minds are around it, let's go.
Before we get too far down the road from that discussion, the, it's, the chapter 10 in our charter is, the purpose is to prevent the transfer, sale, vacation, or major change in use of city parks without first obtaining an approving vote of the legal voters of the city, et cetera, et cetera. I'm kind of skipping to the high points here. The commission may not do any of the following with regard to any designated city park or part thereof without first obtaining the approval of the legal voters of the city, and those, there are four major points on that, and they are, one, sell, lease, or otherwise transfer the property, which I think, I think you said, Doug, vacate or otherwise change the legal status of the park, of any park, construct permanent buildings or structures thereon other than, other than for recreational purposes and park maintenance, so you can construct, but if it's other than for recreation and park purposes, it sounds like you need to have the vote approved. In any case, we're at the date of adoption of this section, there are existing structures where, which do not comply, they are exempted, so if they're already existing, they're which do not comply. They are exempted, so if they're already existing, they're exempted. And then finally, to change this, you may not change the status of a natural park, construct buildings or clear vegetation in a natural park. Thanks. Except for the construction of trails and essential roads and elimination of hazards constituting a clear and present danger to the public, so it's kind of in a nutshell.
Go back to number, what, sell or lease?
Sell or lease.
Well, I know, does that mean that the lease should, I mean, if you want to bring a different operation that is a moneymaker, you have the lease piece.
Well, I wonder if it means, I wonder if it means the facility, or, you know, the whole ground, or whether it means a piece. Yeah, we need that.
It says, in the, kind of in the preamble to the whole thing, before it got to the specific points, parks or parts thereof. So then, and then that, it's very, it's a very short statement, it says, sell, lease, or otherwise transfer park property.
Hey, that could be an interesting one.
I don't know how that gets interpreted exactly, but, yeah.
Is Carnegie Park a Charter Park as well? It has to be, doesn't it?
Is it Carnegie or Carneges?
It's Carnegie.
We've been through this.
Carnegie.
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 You have, you have to get tape recording how he pronounced it.
Yeah, it's Carnegie, I meant...
He pronounced it that way? You know for a fact he pronounced it that way.
No, I met one of his relatives at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, because when I first came into the city, someone from the library at Carnegie Center sat me down and made me pronounce it like I was supposed to, they said, and it was Carnegie. It was Carnegie, Carnegie with the emphasis on the first, and I had to say it over 200 times or whatever that person made me do, so that I could say Carnegie. And then, when I went to U.S. Conference of Mayors, I happened to sit with a relative of, and I was talking about our, oh, we're so grateful we have this Carnegie Center, and he just broke up laughing at to the entire table, whoa, you must be from a foreign country, and emphasized it was Carnegie.
Let me see, I think, I think Commissioner Smith here had people who claimed to be relatives who pronounced it Ermatinger, and so...
We've gone back and forth.
Yeah, so the point, the point is, was that relative a question alive to hear?
It's Carnegie, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's true. Okay.
Well, I must make it true.
Yeah, okay, let's move on to whichever one else you want to present, Scott, either Poole or Ermatinger, or Mattinger. Actually, when the Ermatinger relatives from Switzerland there, we discussed that with them, and they said Ermatinger.
Right.
Though they said that one of their relatives did say Ermatinger, yeah.
The, okay, the, well, the Ermatinger House, I think you all know where we're at, acting on commission direction, I'm going to do this before Renee comes on again. We are working to come up with an agreement with the Hardings to continue some type of relationship where they help us manage the house or operate the house. We'll be bringing something back in some written format, hopefully, to propose to the commission in the near future here. And then in the meantime, we've continued our, our formal discussions with the National Park Service about potential transfer that, the house and the property over to them for, you know, basically permanent preservation and duration of the house. So beyond that, it's, that's kind of where we are, that we're sort of running down a couple of different tracks, that we're trying to figure out what to do short-term, and then we're hopefully coming up with a good long-term solution, so.
Yes, too, Scott, because one of the questions, particularly as we look at the transfer, one of the other things we're involved in is doing this analysis and seeing of other things that we might do with the house, but the Park Service is somewhat hesitant for us doing additional work on that house, so something you may want to determine what we do here, so you might want to comment.
You're just going to start a little bit, I think that's the important piece.
Well, there's been, of course, at the commission level, there's been some recent discussion about what we're doing in terms of, as a city, are, how we're preserving the house, how we're maintaining it, et cetera. In our discussion with, with the Park Service, there, we got into some, some pretty detailed discussion about that in terms of, I mean, we haven't gotten to that level of negotiation with them, but just in a broad perspective, that they're, they are very particular about how they, they deal with the maintenance of historic facilities and how they preserve those. They're very meticulous and they're, they just go about it very, very cautiously. They would, if we were going to do any major maintenance, if it looked as though the arrangement were going forward to transfer the house to the Park Service, it, I believe that they would feel more comfortable if we were to allow them to do that, because if we do that, we may go forward and spend whatever the amount of money is on that. And then they may, they may end up either redoing a portion or all of that to their, to their more particular standards anyway. That, what came out of that conversation was, what might make more sense is if, in our conversation, if we had determined that we were going to do some amount of projects or restoration ourself, that we might, we might discuss possibly setting aside some funds and just including that as part of the package that we, when we transfer it to the house, let them do it their way versus doing it our way, and then them doing it again.
Just to add, add on to that, that, I mean, this is by no means a done deal. It has to pass muster through the layers of National Park Service, and that it is thought that to have the house come with a little endowment, not endowment, but a little chunk of money might make that more attractive going through the layers of approval. Doug?
I was just going to say, if something came up, and that was very compromising in terms of a weather event or something of that nature, or we had to do something, maybe we'd be in a position to allocate that money and let them contract it how, as they will, which may be with their own staff, but...
I'm not sure that whether we can do that, but we would, we could look into that as to...
Any questions about that? Rocky?
I was going to say kind of the same thing. The problem, the problem that I have, obviously, I know that there's, National Parks has extreme standards for, for repairs, et cetera, and so, but the question is, how long is it going to be? And, and I don't think any of us know how long it's going to be until this transfer takes place, or if it will. You know, if it's, if it's, so that's where my concern came in about the city's responsibility for the house. If, if this becomes a two-year, three-year process, there may be time in that window that we have to deal with maintenance of that house. Should they be involved probably in telling us what to do, or how to do it, to make sure that it fits their standards? I think that probably should be the case. But I don't want us to just say, well, we're going to stop maintaining that house because we don't want to do anything that's going to, you know, not be up to their standards and just, just wait till they take it over. Well, that may be two years, it may be three years. We, we don't know that. So I think that's the real, the real question. I'm a little bit more knowledgeable at the process that we're at with the city on the agreement with the Hardings, and so I'd like Scott to actually tell us where we're at with that, because there's, I think I may be the only one that knows that an agreement was written and given to the Hardings, and that there was meetings taking place, and so can you explain to us where we're at with that?
Well, we met, following the, following the commission's direction to do so, we met with them once and just kind of tried to get a sense of where, where we wanted to go, what the, what the requests were by the city and by the Hardings. And then we met a second time, I think last week, and just to...
Wednesday?
What's that?
Wednesday.
Yeah. To get something on the table, we put a, we took, we had an existing agreement with the Hardings a few years ago that expired, and we had been kind of working on basically a friendly agreement, but without a, with an expired agreement. We took that as our template, brought it up to date a little bit, and just put that on the table and said, let's, let's use this as our working framework. And so we, we asked the Hardings to go back and review that, and to come back with any proposals that they wanted to add to that. And then we were supposed to meet this week, and actually, the Hardings canceled that meeting with us, so...
Why?
We were told that they just had some personal other commitments, that's, that's all I heard.
Well, let me tell you why. I have the agreement, and I've read it, and I've gone through it. They have no intention of signing it. They have major concerns about it. They, as they have been for weeks and months at the end of the rope with, with the city, and after seeing this, they're, they have pretty much decided that they're done, and so are in the process of moving stuff out of the house. This didn't address the real concerns or the two real, this, this agreement did not address the only two things that the Hardings really wanted to see the city work on. And I think it's unfortunate that we, as a commission, really didn't discuss this and work with them, because I don't think that staff went in the direction that we wanted them to in terms of dealing with the Hardings. They, when they came to us, their real hope was that the city would take, well, there were two pieces that I can remember, that they really wanted to see us work towards. Was, one was to go back to what we had in the past, where we worked towards the, a city support of the idea of creating a nonprofit organization for the house. And I think there was some discussion about that. But that maybe wasn't thought as a need, because if National Parks get the house, we actually think that makes it more of a need. Because if National Parks gets the house at some point, you know, there's an organization that supports the McLaughlin House, and to ask McLaughlin Memorial Association to also take responsibilities with it, the Ermatinger needs its own support, you know, it needs its own community support. And so, you know, we have actually, Margen Arala had actually gone through almost the entire process, I don't know what, 10 years ago, maybe even less, to go and create a nonprofit status for this house, enough support group for this house. That was not allowed by the city at that time. They put a lot of time and work into creating that, and it didn't come to fruition. So they think that still needs to happen, but they're not willing to put their own time and effort into it. They really think that needs to be driven by the city. So that was one thing. They, they don't, they're not in this to make money, they want to make sure the house is okay. And the other piece was to give them some credibility for the work that they do, not only promoting the house, but the city as a whole. And this agreement basically addressed that in a way of giving the Hardings a $3,000 stipend. This Harding said to me, we don't want a $3,000 stipend, because the $3,000 stipend is maybe to, you know, reimburse them for work that they're doing, or to pay for conferences, or to pay for the phone line, or something like that. But the Harding said, why, why would you write us a check, why would you write us a check? There's no real accountability there, just writing a $3,000 check and handing it to them. They would have rather seen that $3,000 sit here at the city, and if the Hardings go to a tourism meeting that promotes the house, or if they do something with the house, that then the city would reimburse them as that went on. They really felt that this was a check to say, here you go, don't bug us for a while. Because if they keep, if they're interacting with the city, that means more work for the city. So, so I don't know that this agreement was really what, I, I wish we would have seen this as a, as a commission before this went to the Hardings, because it's our obligation, we made them a promise pretty much at that point, that the staff was going to work with them towards some sort of agreement, so that they wouldn't leave the house. Well, they're leaving. And I, I think it's, it's a, it's a loss. And I, I think it's at the worst possible time, because now here again, we have another museum that's going to be closed. The majority of the, the exceptional stuff that's in that house is not ours, it's theirs, it's the Hardings. It's going to be gone. No, the only caretakers, the only people that had any interest in watching over that house, especially now in this, this interim between where it may go to National Parks, was the Hardings. And so if they disappear, which it looks like they have, here's another thing that we now have to deal with. And I, I just, and it was so easy, I don't know, there, I mean, this is not far off from what they really expected to see, but, but they just keep getting the runaround and, and they're, they're fed up with it. And so I wish we would have had this at a work session, so we could have discussed it, you know, the Hardings, we, we could have worked this out and made it work. But it's too late. And, so I think this is really unfortunate, and I, I don't know that we can fix it now.
I feel, I feel compelled to respond. I, I want to make it abundantly clear to the commission, we acted on your direction, the, the agreement that Commissioner Smith is talking about, it is a draft. It's, it was a, it was a discussion starting point, and when we talked with the Hardings, we met at length and made it very clear, we, when I'm saying we, I'm talking about Denise Kai and I, made it very clear that that was open for discussion, and that we asked them to take that back and bring it back to us at the meeting that they canceled this week, and present their counter-proposals to those, those ideas, or not, not necessarily counter-proposals, but it was a pretty vanilla agreement. We said, make your requests, and then ultimately, it's the commission's decision whether to agree to that or not. It's, we weren't trying to, staff was not driving that bus. We took a very, very basic template agreement, and we presented it and said, this is for discussion, take this, take this with you, and bring back some written counter-proposals, because all we'd had was verbal. We, we needed, we needed something a little bit more concrete, and we wanted them to specifically say, okay, under section 2.0A, we'd like to add this language. That's what we asked for. So, you know, I, I just want to make that clear to the commission, that as staff, that's, that's exactly what we did, so.
Could I add on to that? In discussions with the National Park Service, I think the best-case scenario is that it could be within this calendar year, that agreements could be inked, if all goes well, that's the best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, I guess it wouldn't happen. But they're on a fairly fast track, and I think the National Park Service also believes that the McLaughlin Memorial Association would, because this is a minor boundary adjustment mechanism, is that that would be the 501(c)(3) that would oversee the fundraising and the care for, for both, both houses. And I don't speak for the National Park Service at all, but...
Right, especially since the Hardings, it really evolved in McLaughlin, they would think they would, Memorial Association, they think they'd have some idea, more so than the National Parks, of what that organization would do. So I, I think that's an unfair comment. The, the, the Hardings actually gave us in writing multiple times, and have, you know, what they asked for. That wasn't a big secret. We knew what they wanted, we knew what they wanted, so why didn't we work on it? This didn't address that. It didn't address what they've been asking for, for a long, long time. So I think it was very clear what it is that they asked us as a city to do for them to stay. We didn't respond. We responded with this. It didn't address their, their questions and their needs again, and they're done. They felt that they have been pretty clear.
Yeah.
And so that's why I said, you know, this could have been fixed with a work session amongst all of us to discuss it, but that didn't happen. We trusted that the staff would take care of it. Well, it didn't work out so well.
Let's, let's focus back on the big picture again then here. Is there any...
I'm foc, don't do that, seriously, because that, this, this is extremely focused.
It is.
And what I'm saying is, now we have a broader topic to discuss, okay? I don't want, if this is on the agenda for a facility, now we have an empty facility that we have to deal with. So that's going to change the... to deal with. So that's going to change the focus a little bit.
That's where I was going, that to focus on the bigger picture, is do we wish to change the direction that staff is taking in negotiating with the Hardings?
I think that may be too late.
I haven't notified any of that.
Yeah. Scott's our chief negotiator in this, and either we need to give him different direction, or he is to continue to work. Doug?
I think the direction is fairly -- I think probably the audience has a frustration out there that they view this, for some reason, as a barrier. I would suggest that Mr. Archer, contact them and tell them that this event was a draft, and would like to see any language that thinks is appropriate, and in fact, ultimately, the commission will pass on it one way or another. I would just encourage another heartfelt communication between you and the Hardings.
You said that's what you...
Well, wait a minute.
You mean additional...
Hold it. Yes, they canceled. This is the first time probably Mr. Archer knew that they canceled and weren't planning to come back. Is that true? And so, I mean, this is information that's come at this point. Mr. Archer's now got some other information that they canceled and him was not to come back. I think it's quite appropriate for him to go back and talk to them about that. And if in those discussions, I mean, what he's presented here to me indicates that the staff is very open for the discussions. And I guess we're giving this direction as a commission, but I don't think it's anything than the direction that you assumed you had to begin with. You had kind of a template to go by, and you operated with that template. They apparently have something else in mind. Encourage them to come forward, and what pieces. So I don't -- I do not -- I don't think it's necessarily over -- say it's over until it's over.
No.
I think they then verbally communicated to Mr. Scott after he's made that presentation, "We're not interested."
Yeah.
Mr. Archer. But he's not interested. In fact, "No, they're not interested. Then it's over." I think we need that additional -- I think we cross that bridge one more time.
Well, that's what my question was. Is there anyone that wants to give Scott, Mr. Scott, any different direction than he's on?
Well, no.
No, he's continued.
Yeah. That's what I hear. Daphne?
It is conjecture that we hear from Rocky that Hardings are done, and I'd like to hear it on paper, or hear it through Scott, through staff.
Me, too.
Which is, yes. So, I mean, they can speak for themselves. They'll let us know, and it was a draft, and we're bargaining, and that's how it works. So we might be speculating on an end that isn't really even an end.
Yeah. Pat, Larry?
There's another issue here that I, well, I try to tread on this softly, but I would suggest that you cannot continue to operate this way. Let me give you some thoughts, and this is something that you'll wrestle with as a new manager. First of all, if you have -- in my case, if I'm going to direct staff to do something, I may have an end result that I want them to do. I'll tell them, you know, "Go forth, put me together an agreement on this." At that point, if I don't give them specific guidance in terms of what the parameters of that are, then if they come back and they accomplish that end result, I have to give them the freedom to do that. If I have in my mind exactly how I want that done, I need to do one or two things. Just tell them, "Here's what I want you to go forth and do specifically," or I should do it. In this case, what I'm hearing is, direct staff to do something. We begin to do that discussion. The other party is upset with what they get, and as opposed to communicating that with staff, they're running to one of you, and you're taking that thing and bringing it here. So really, one or two things, and what I've heard, is what we should do is write this agreement along with what the Hardings specifically ask, and if that's what it is, we can do that and bring it back to you, or you should sit down and do that negotiation. To put us in that role, we cannot win unless there -- we can't read your minds. And this is a simple issue, but on a more complex thing, we heard some this last evening, is we can't do that kind of job for you. If you have those directions very specific, we need to know what that is, and if there is no room to do that, then we can write it very specific like that. There's no need to negotiate. And in this case, I think there's at least one of those requests from the Hardings that I don't know if that would meet with majority approval of the commission, and I think you're going to have to think through it. And that's really the title piece, is does that really work for this city, the title piece?
They wrote as an email, that's the only way I know that, and Marge has called me multiple times, that she wants to be like the Oregon City Heritage Coordinator. And I suggested that the appropriate place for that would be to go through the Oregon City Tourism Council, because if I were the Oregon City Heritage Coordinator, I would believe that my job description meant that I was the umbrella for all of the heritage in Oregon City, and that, you know, the city is not the place where that happens. So that's the one I think that the title referred to.
You know, you may not need to hash that one right now, but I think maybe before the day is over, again, as was last evening, I think there's a number of things about how we operate, you probably...
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, go ahead.
True. I mean, oh, heck with it. Rocky...
Commissioner Rocky?
Yeah, I'm calling Commissioner Rocky, right. Rocky mentioned two specific things. That was forming a nonprofit, and of course, the city was operating all along with the McLaughlin House, having the McLaughlin Memorial Association. And so, we've got history with that. The second piece was the mechanism for them getting reimbursed for expenses within $3,000. Those...
It was a title, the credibility.
But that is the least -- I mean, if we've created a nonprofit group, that's all it would take to keep them.
So I think, Mr. Patterson, I think we can put that provision in there, that you've got the direction. Look at those two things, and go back to them. And that it comes back to the city commission, then.
Well, actually, my goal would be more along what Larry has, you know, that I guess I believe that is our, well, yeah. My bottom line is that, and it always has been, is that I would like to, I think that it's better to have the city, or to have the Erma Tinger House open than closed. And the terms to get there, I think, are to be negotiated. So that, to me, is my goal.
It's going to be closed if the Hardings aren't there. It's going to be open if they are.
I agree. And, you know, if it can't be worked out, it...
We got those two points, and that's what I'm suggesting, that's the pursuit that occurs. No matter how you look at it.
But is that direction, are you saying that those must be fulfilled to get...
That's what we need to talk about.
Okay, just discussion points.
Well, they're discussion points, but the point is, I don't know the mechanism of a nonprofit being formed. Obviously, the city's not going to be the one to form the nonprofit. It is them, but they have to do it, basically, with the approval of the city, that they are a nonprofit that deals with them. I've got no problem with that. I mean, like I said, we've got the McLaughlin Memorial Association as an example that the city worked with before. The other question is, how one views this $3,000, the end $3,000 upfront, or in fact, an indication of how they're utilizing that money and getting reimbursed. I don't have problems with either of those. The title, I can understand. But if it's those two issues, I prefer to keep on going on the negotiations. Even, no matter what, if they leave, it's going to create some hardship in really the heritage community as a whole, because they've got, even if they don't badmouth the city, people are going to find out, and it may affect how some members of the McLaughlin Memorial Association perceive the city and so forth. So I don't think we close the door at this point in the game. If these two pieces don't work out, then they don't work out. But they're a nonprofit. I don't have a problem with it. And the fact that they wish to send in some kind of a, I don't know, I guess you call it an invoice and so forth for their activities that never exceeds $3,000 in a given year and so forth, I don't have a problem with it.
Let me touch base on that. And again, if you want us to do it that way, we can. $3,000 expenditure as a stipend, it's a lot better just, "Here's $3,000." To do that on an ongoing basis is you do incur a lot of additional administrative costs just to process $3,000. We can do it either way. It's more costly to do it, as they found, I think, plus it's a lot more paperwork for all parties involved in doing it, but however you want us to proceed in that case. But again, if that was very specific, we want to do it on an ongoing basis, we just need to know that, because if we're negotiating, and that's what I thought we were kind of doing, is from a city perspective, a lot better on that type of cost, just, "Here's a stipend," because administratively, it's just easier to handle.
I thought the direction was that we had discussed at the work session, a $3,000 stipend, so that's why it was proposed. And then I just want to ask for a clarification from the commission on the negotiation of a nonprofit organization.
That's what I was going to talk about.
I'm not sure what the city does there, so I don't know how that falls into an agreement.
We don't drive that.
We don't know, but the point...
Are we putting that in the agreement? Is that what we're asked?
I'm saying, what I'm saying there is, the city's not going to form a nonprofit, but the point is, we would recognize a nonprofit association serving the Erma Tinger, just like we did the McLaughlin Memorial Association. How we do that, I don't know. I think that's the same kind of recognition of the process. Like I said, we aren't going to form the nonprofit, okay? But so those are the two things to look at. And if you find out, in fact, there's a legal problem to doing that, but as I say, we had nonprofit status in the McLaughlin Memorial Association.
We did. That wasn't a city thing.
But it's a city -- no, that's a city. That was a city facility until we transferred it. I mean, we let them operate it, and then when we got transferred to the National Park Service, we had to put that on the ballot. But it was a city facility.
The land under it was. Yeah. Daphne?
We were able to work that out one way.
No, no, no. That's not a...
I mean, there may be some special things you need to do in the process, but I think it still can be looked at.
Okay, Daphne, and then Jim.
I guess two, a couple of points. One is, you like to see your historical, you like to see everybody working together within a community. So if the Hardings would like to form a Friends of Erma Tinger House, or of some nonprofit group to help administrate, it's too bad that they couldn't look to some of the other groups in town to see if they could piggyback on. However, if they want to form a Friends of group, it's not, I'm not against that whatsoever, and if they can figure out how to do it. But just after this last year and a half of how much energy and money it takes, that when we formed our Main Street Corporation, and the paperwork and the process, I mean, there's certainly, they should go out there and feel if they...
They've already done it before. That's the problem, that they're so frustrated with. They've gone through that process before, and when they got to the end of that process, the city said, "No, we can, we're not doing that." And now, granted, that was years ago, but they don't feel like they want to go through all that work again, without knowing that the city, and I don't even think they want to do it themselves again, period, because...
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and they've done it already. But now it has to be all redone again.
Yes, and sometimes in life, that's how things work. And the, oh, I'm sorry.
Unless I know that the city's supporting it.
Oh, the other wrinkle in this whole issue is that perhaps the National Park Service is going to take over. So how are they going to build support to start a whole new nonprofit when that's...
That's, the key point was that they feel, and I'll keep, you know, the Hardings are very involved with the McLaughlin Memorial Association, and they specifically feel that asking a nonprofit organization that already has responsibilities for one house, that that's too much to ask, and that the Erma Tinger House really needs its own support group itself. And so that has been the topic, and I think that's why they see it as a separate thing. You know, it's kind of like, you know, expecting a group that's putting all this effort into this, and now say, "Oh, well, now you're going to help this house, too, that we're going to throw on your back." So when people volunteer for the McLaughlin House and helping with the McLaughlin House, that's what they're volunteering for, not the Erma Tinger House. There's a whole, you know, there might be crossover with people that care about both places, but there's a whole different group of people that are advocates for the Erma Tinger House that would support creating a group, just to take care of just that house.
I think this is outside the purview of Oregon City, though. We don't deal with private nonprofit groups, and there are multiple of them in the community. So that, to me, is not something that we have control over. But Jim is next.
I wanted an update, Scott, on has the issue of the deed restrictions in the Erma Tinger House deed, as far as whether we can transfer the property to the NPS, has that all been resolved, or is that still under examination?
We did a, we did a preliminary review of that. We asked, Bo Kabeizman reviewed that for us, and his assessment is that it doesn't appear that we have any restriction in transferring both the land and the house. There are some...
Is that in writing?
Yes, he sent us a memo before we signed the letter, asking the National Park Service to begin the process.
There was email. He wrote that in an email.
It was prior to that meeting.
Was that to the whole commission?
Yeah.
Okay. I missed it. Just missed that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Because that was a question that needed to be cleared up before we...
There were a couple of minor issues with the contents of the house that have to do with the estate, the powers of state, and they have some right to consider keeping or letting items be transferred. And then, of course, the Hardings have some personal items that, you know, they would have access to. But for the most part, generally, again, it was a preliminary view, but generally, Bill's opinion was, and he did write that in email, that was not a problem.
Okay, we're about ready for a break. Move on. It's pretty cool. Last comments on, again, staff direction.
It's not direction, it's just a comment. When it comes to the items that are ultimately in the house, and it gets transferred to the National Park Service, National Park Service is going to make the evaluation of what should be there.
Thing.
Yeah.
Any other comments, then, on this? Okay, let's take a 15. Oh, Public Works, yeah. Can you do that in six, seven minutes? Yes, no, I know. Let's do that before break.
Pool and Public Works before break?
No, just Nancy's.
After break?
What?
Do you want to like it after?
It's up to you. Is it a short report or a longer?
No, I'm ready.
We want to talk forever.
We want to eat.
Would you like a break? We have a break now, and Nancy, are you able to? Let's do them. Okay, 15-minute break, so five minutes till 10:00. We will be back. Well, actually, could we finish up?
Sure.
If anyone's on a timeline, please let me know. I'm on a timeline. 3 o'clock is my, okay. Scott, why don't you bring us up to you on pool changes, issues?
This can be quick. The commission, actually, it'll be quick, because Mr. Patterson kind of briefed you on it last night. We talked a little bit about the pool. Basically, over the last two or three years, we've recognized the issues at the pool. We have a, it's about a 41, 42-year-old facility at this point. We did a, we commissioned a study about three years ago that told us what the major needs were and some of the costs. Through the support of the commission, we've been able to take on some of those major maintenance items. Granted, we haven't taken on, as, again, as Mr. Patterson said last night, the study actually recommended about a total package of about $3 million, and that would be to completely modernize the facility, bring it up mechanically and all the systems, but also to do a little bit of expansion. We haven't done anything expansion-wise, but what we have done is made some good investment. The biggest item recently was the roof project, for example, and again, with the support of the commission and going forward with that, we've been able to, kind of in piecemealing it, we put the facility in a place now where if we continue to make these investments on an annual basis, not every project needs to be as costly as the pool roof was last year, but if we make kind of some smaller incremental investments, we're looking at expanding or extending the life of that facility for potentially another 20 years or so. And I think at some point, we do have to look at that modernization aspect that the community asked for. In our Parks Master Plan Update, that was, you know, indicated as one of the resources the community would like to see is a more modern facility, but they also indicated that they definitely want the facility to be available. So right now, that's what we're doing. And more so than in its, you know, previous probably 10 or 15 or more years, we're doing that. And so we'll be coming forth with some budget requests in our budget process, and just talking about some maintenance items that are going to be continued for the next two, three, and four years. And as I said, we'll talk about that with you in the budget process. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we're at with the pool. But again, the support of the commission to do these improvements for the last couple of years has really, it really, truly has made a huge difference in us being able to keep the pool operating. And actually, it operates well. It's challenging, but we have... It's, it's challenging, but we have, we have very good water chemistry. Our water is maintained very well, you know, all of our programs and our activities that occur there. The life-saving aspect of it, that we teach literally tens of thousands of swim lessons every year, and we still have the school kids coming through from the, our agreement with the schools, and that's a great program, and just on and on and on. It's, it's a very well-utilized facility, so.
And I just, to say, because I remember where we were. We took, we took tours of the pool and all of its stuff. We looked, talked with, about joint facility with West Lynn. We talked about new facilities, and we were really headed, thought that this thing couldn't be resurrected, and then to have it, its life extended is really credit to all the work you've done. So it really has removed one of the dark holes of the list of challenges the city faced.
It's a credit to Denise and Rochelle. I want to give them credit.
Appreciate that.
I should mention one more thing, just for the commission's awareness. The issue with the diving blocks, or the starting blocks with the swim team, we've resolved that for the most part. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect solution, but it's a, it's a good solution for both parties. We, we were able to work some things out. We recall, we had to remove the diving starting blocks for the competitive swimming because of some state regulations that were issued, and that the state became aware of in their safety issues. We, we worked for some, for some common ground, and they've got five out of the six lanes back for competitive use, which is the, kind of the minimum standard for the national swim team standards for having competitive meets. So the pool is back to the, at least to the minimal standards of being able to host meets again. And then we're going to continue to work on that. We have a really good relationship with Oregon City Swim Team, and we're going to continue to foster that. We do want to have a competitive environment at the pool and let them have meets, but we also had some other issues with moving, you know, slides and diving boards that were going to impact our public uses as well. So we found, we found some good resolution there.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy.
All right, well, I just, fairly brief to you, but I wanted to, just thought, since this is a significant facility for the city, I thought we should bring it up in the work session and make sure the commission is on board with what we're going to be doing this year. The land use process we just went through, we have our conditions of approval, which I really couldn't consider our marching orders for how we're going to approach the master plan and-
Nothing in the packet.
Developing the plan, no. It's just, we've been working on a few other things the last two weeks.
No, no, that's fine. I was just busy searching and-
Yeah, yeah, nothing. And so we, the next task we have is to look at alternatives for the upper yard in terms of, is there, are there any modifications to the site plan that we prepared initially that would allow us to save more of the white oak trees up there, and also if there's any preservation of any of the rock outcrops in the upper yard. That's what we're going to be doing next, and that will go through the planning department for their review. The other thing that we think is important to do as we move forward is to have a, form a citizens group that will be kind of like the consulting group for the community to not, basically, so we can continue to have citizen input as we move forward.
Similar to what you did for the McLaughlin Boulevard Enhancement Project? That kind of advisory group?
I think it's important to engage, to have someone from the McLaughlin neighborhood on that committee, but I think that we also want to make sure the rest of the community is represented, so that we're, because everybody's a ratepayer in Oregon City. And then what we did already this year was David Wimmer started the building fund, which is a, a new fund that I think both, police, are you using the, Chief, are you using this building fund also for, okay? They have a different fund. Okay, so Mo and I get to share a fund. She can't have any of my money.
Okay, well, okay, the money for the police fund comes from the donations from developers. Where does the funding come from? Library and yours?
The library, I don't know about, but ours is the rates, utility rates.
Utility rates, okay.
Yes. It's what's expected to fund our facilities. And then the other thing that-
Excuse me, can I explore that, because I don't quite understand. So a percent of the utility rates are going to go in there, or, because you're using them obviously for other projects.
Right, not a percent. No, we have a budget. We have, it's in our five-year plans on all of our utilities, which we started about two years ago, we started including the facilities in the, in the planning, the budget planning. And then also in the, the financial plan that I put together, which now we want to bring back to the commission, and probably some sort of resolution, so that we have some certainty on, as we continue to save and spend and save and spend to build the facility. So there's a financial strategic plan, right?
Okay.
That lays out how much we'll save every year out of the utility funds and then spend as we build our buildings, et cetera.
Thank you.
It's important that we keep updated on that, because we've got, we've got rates that are scheduled to increase on the sewer rates, and then, of course, we've got the street maintenance fund and so forth, and I guess there was something else that we haven't put forward yet in terms of increases.
They've all been put forward. Stormwater was also brought forward.
But stormwater, did we actually increase?
We did, yes, yes.
So storm and wastewater and-
The only one is transportation STCs that's not been updated. Is that correct?
We did adopt the new methodology for transportation STCs this year, too, last year, too.
I think we need to-
We did, so we're finished with all-
Really, the one that we, has most control over it is the water rate.
But the phased increases and so forth, and our, so that we understand, in fact, what, what it, you know, what we view part of that coming in terms, in terms of facility development and so forth.
Yes, yes, yes.
So recap, sewer, stormwater, water, the street maintenance fund, those fees for those services are going, are going to help pay for this.
They, well, we, not the street maintenance. The street maintenance is only for roadways repairs. Right, now, we can, we did see a slight increase in the gas tax, and we have to be very cautious about how we spend that money, because it is earmarked for improvements within the right-of-way. So we might need, it's, it's difficult to use gas tax to pay for facilities.
The, that's a, I think that's a very interesting question, because at the mayor's meeting, the mayor of Tiger talked about how they have a local gas tax, but they also, because they have a street maintenance fee, have, said they, supported with their attorney, they are using their gas tax for capital improvement, capital improvements. So you're saying that we could do that, too, but maybe not a facility?
I would need to check with our attorney as well, but the way I understand it is the gas, the old gas tax. Now, maybe with the new gas tax, or some of the new street revenues that the legislature passed last year, there could be different rules attached, but the old gas tax was to be used to improve the right-of-way.
We might want to check on that, because we were all kind of interested in the fact that maybe if, you know, if we have pavement taken care of over here, which we don't, because it's, doesn't take care of all of our needs, but that maybe that could help us in the short term.
And I think if we could also make, make a finding that part of benefiting the right-of-way is to have trucks, and you need to have a place to park your trucks and this kind of thing. So I'll work with the city attorney on that.
You made the comment about Tiger. Were you saying Tiger had its own tax, gas tax?
They do, but they were talking about using the, the state gas tax pass through, because we specifically asked, but they do, that's, yeah, I don't want to throw that in, but-
Well, I presume if we were to adopt a gas tax, then we could impact direct, yeah.
We are prohibited, remember, by legislature.
That, that awful-
Oh, that's right, that's right. That's right.
A couple of cities actually passed a gas tax that aren't implementing it, that, in fact, who was it that just did that? Happy Valley, I think.
I think it's Happy Valley.
Adopted a gas tax, and they don't even have a gas station in their borders, but it's just in case.
Ah!
Because of the legislative action, they are prevented, we are prevented from enacting one for 10 years. Anyway, sorry, Nancy.
No problem. So with that being said, once we have our alternative site plan approved, we would then want to embark on a grading plan, and the first phase of the construction on that site has to do with covered parking up on top and some of this other bin storage on top. So then the actual building would be in phase two, and right now, we're wrestling with kind of how to bring all this to, through the planning process, because you really need to have some kind of certainty, because it's, you don't want to do phase one if you think phase two's going to flop. So that's, what I'd really like to do is bring a resolution to the commission, so that in the future years, we have some certainty about continuing to move forward with the facility.
The groundbreaking is-
Probably a ways off. We have a fair amount of work to do with planning. I'm hoping that we might be able to do some site grading, start less than a year, because we would like to move forward on it, but it just depends. There's a lot of unknowns with the schedule.
Okay.
And that is pretty much it. I just thought I'd want to give everyone an update, and then to continue to do so, probably every few months, update the commission on the progress of how we're doing and where we're going.
You know, in the old days, I can't remember how many years ago it was, and I know this is a ton of work for your department unless you have it easily. I found it so extremely helpful, I believe that somebody sent out a list of the public works projects that your department was involved in, and maybe it was just quarterly, but I found that extremely helpful, because you do so, you supervise so many projects, and often they're under, I mean, they happen because they're in the CIP, and we may not know that they're involved unless we run into one. And again, I hate to create a burden for your department, but it in-
Do you get that?
Have to send that out, you know, it should get-
The project list?
Oh, okay, that's what it is.
It doesn't really include a lot of the small works projects, and actually, today, you're going to get a, where Scott and I are supposed to update on the CIP, so I've put together a list that's going to be in next year's budget for you, so at least that's a start, but we'd be happy to provide-
That's great.
Have them accessible.
I, I, very much, I don't know if the rest of you remember that, but I really appreciate having that knowledge of what we're working on.
We can try to be a little more transparent about that.
I'm sure you're transparent, it's just getting the information to us.
Getting it out, well, that's transparent.
I guess, that's true.
Not having that.
Yeah, I guess, that's true.
I can't see it. Where is it?
Any questions then, more about master plan, public works, et cetera? Thank you, Nancy. Okay, then, I guess we're moving in.
Look, before you leave there, let me, let me give you a thought, because, again, you have to integrate all of these things that we're talking about, and as I mentioned last night, we've worked long and hard to kind of create the foundation by which we work in the future. You're beginning to see, you know, the, some of those revenues may be crested and may start coming down, so how do you invest in this year? Things of this year are pretty broad. Do we have credit? Are they, I don't know, I'll call them, I'll tell them, but. We continue to try to do everything as we've known it, and again, we talk about the GIC and we're talking about actually larger than part of the budget for the valley. Mark, do we? Budget, and kind of maintain police, and continue to develop the pool, those things that you have to do just to deliver the things that do get forgotten, because those police services out down the street every day, that park maintenance out there, so Nancy's doing that's probably worth not a percent of that, unless they, they, we don't talk about that much.
In my mind, there's a very clear delineation between our basic core group of, our mission, yeah, thank you, and, and the facilities that are problematic. I mean, if we have to, if we have to close something because we can't run it, I think we can make a very clear case to the public, because it isn't in that core group of services, though having the task force lay out recommendations can service both short term and long term. Jim?
So I don't lose the thought as the day goes on. To segue from what Larry was just saying, we had had, it's come up in various venues, you know, for the past several months. I know in that Community Heritage Forum group that Rocky and I had been attending over at the Pioneer Center had come up, but, you know, there is a financing mechanism, that county heritage tax that we've discussed, and I looked at that statute, you know, you can do it by initiative, but the initiative requirements for that are so onerous that it, it just never happened. And it is, it is in the lap of the County Board of Commissioners to do that, and I think I'd like to propose that the city commission consider adopting a formal resolution requesting the County Board of Commissioners to consider putting such a county heritage tax on the ballot, and maybe we can undertake some diplomacy to get some other cities in the, in the county to do something similar. But precisely because there are so many facilities, and the interest in these facilities goes outside our city limits, I really think that as far as raising revenue for all of that, that's something we should really kind of ramp up as a priority to, to see if we can get the PCC interested in adopting.
I think prior to any resolution, though, would need to be some study, and that, I think it also has to be something that the local heritage groups would see as something that they could, they could back, and that has, that has focus. So I guess, you know, I would need to know if that's a priority for, for study for us to do.
Let me also, and again, that is a funding mechanism, and something you may want to think about, but again, when you're talking about the ballot, what is your priority? Because if we're moving the police department to the ballot, you know, and maybe you do both, but that's, that's a political question you have to make. How much stuff are you going to be-
Heritage tax would be countywide.
But that's still-
No, I, no, I, that was a-
In Oregon City, they say that, too, so that's you.
Yeah, and the county's also considering a couple of measures, so.
Again, you just need to figure out what you want to do there.
Yeah. Daphne and then Doug.
Commissioner, see, I think it would be a little presumptuous of us to make a resolution without, I mean, it is countywide, so what does Sandy Estacada and everybody else think about all this? So I think it would be a little narrow thinking on our part to, to put forward that without a broader community discussion of other priorities.
Doug.
And it's premature, probably, for us to do it, but the thing is, something like a heritage district that I have to go above all the people, whether, I mean, a heritage tax would have to go the vote of the whole people of the county, whether we could have, in fact, form a heritage district where you have focused interest, Oregon City, West Lynn, for example, in terms of the, the area between the Twalton and, and the Clackamas and so forth, that you, you might, you may fail in a broad county support for such a, such a, such a tax, but you might be successful in an area where there's, in fact, a real strong heritage identification still. Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny to respond to Commissioner West. I think my view of us passing a resolution is precisely to let other communities in the county know that we're interested in this, and, you know, to, to start reaching, precisely to reaching out to these other communities to gauge their interest. I don't think us passing a resolution is presumptuous. I think it's just letting the community know of our interest.
Okay, let's move then to, ready for the committee structures?
Sure. Nancy, can you bring that?
Organization chart up.
Okay.
We have that in here.
It's in there as well.
Where our past goals, I think it was.
You've got, in your packet, you've got some, uh, information there too, on the Planning Commission, that, and then there's a number of, of past emails in regards to our documents and just questions in regards to your CIC and Neighborhood Association program that Ms. Mum tells me that they'll be working on improving next year, so.
Organization, page thirty-eight.
Yeah.
It's thirty-eight on ours, in our book. The organization chart is. Yeah. Okay, go ahead, we've got it. Page thirty-eight.
Yeah, just, and this also could use some updating, there's a couple of things that we, looking at, we need to do, but I, I just want to, as we look at the committee structure, one of the things that you may want to think about is, is what type of staff assistance do you provide for them? And I think we've kind of been through this in the past as we've had committees, and I think you've heard their frustration, a lot of that is that we just haven't had the ability to assign appropriate staff to it. And for most of your committees, uh, it really takes senior level staff, it's really unfair to send the junior level staff because they may not have the broad perspective of everything the city's working on and that doesn't serve that committee very well when you have that, as well as, again, like CIC, we really kind of have part-time assistants assisting them right now, and there's some organizational stuff that definitely could, could be more of a help. That's one aspect that you have to kind of think in if you want to add to this, in fact, maybe even want to consolidate some of it, we've had those discussions in the past. The other piece, when you begin to do that, you can look at your organizational structure there and you can kind of see which, uh, people serve what committees, is you also, I think, have to think a little bit in terms of your staff, because when you're talking about senior level staff, you're talking about the folks in this room, and if you see what they're already assigned to, you know, you do want to have these folks have a life.
Nancy and Tony.
You do want to have these folks have a life as well, and, you know, if you're, if you've got four to seven committee meetings a month on top of the hours they're putting in, uh, you know, I think you're beginning to see the thousand yard stare in a lot of folks' eyes. So just something to think about, uh, as you begin to start talking about additional committees. I think too, just looking at some of those, this whole debate about whether the Planning Commission should be seven or five, I think we've struggled with the attempt to get to seven, so do we really want to go there or do we want to stay at five?
Actually, right now we're at four. Just so you know.
Right now we're four and we're having difficulty finding a fifth member. And then, just to kind of tie that whole discussion up, uh, if, I think, I think it's a good start, I do think you still have a lot of issues with the CIC and your neighborhood associations. I think the level of dialogue, particularly if it's going to serve Goal One, has to really increase, uh, in those committees, both in terms of, of information and dealing with that. In fact, one of the things I've noticed at the CIC is land use is the last issue that seems to get really taken care of and it's gotten, gotten a little bit of attention. Uh, and part of that's because they're still in organizational mode, but, uh, that's got to increase. I think too, the folks who serve at the Neighborhood Association and become members of the CIC, they're going to have to be broader in their understanding of issues if they're truly going to be a communication tool. Uh, because there's some very set opinions that I see that folks bring in there and not really trying to gather larger groups or larger understanding of those issues. Now, yes, some folks are doing a really good job too, but as you go through time, I think what you, as you appoint folks, I think there's got to be an expectation of also the responsibility they carry and be, be they neighborhood leaders or be they on the CIC, if, if it's going to function well for you. I mean, if it's just a question of folks getting together and exchanging ideas, whether those positive, negative, or even misinformed, uh, so I think you can accomplish that, but I think, I think you've got to expect more of it and I think that's going to have to be communicated at some point. And I think Ms. Mum also agree for me on that, so.
Okay, so under committee structure, the issues that, um, I think we have identified that we want to talk about briefly under that were, um, I think we have, one of our goals was, uh, Arts, Reforming Arts Commission, Reforming the Natural Resources Committee. I'm not sure why Planning Commission is on here except that we've talked about doing a formal, uh, you know, when we do a charter change to perhaps talk about going from seven to five, which we probably could get started by doing a, a resolution and having discussion so that it sets the stage for an eventual charter change. But, um, so those are the, are there other issues too?
Let me mention one thing. When you look at new thing, and that's kind of one of them, but this whole heritage component, the question you have, because one thing you have to look at each time is, are we organized appropriately to do things you want us to do? And let's take the heritage thing, where does that go in this structure? And of course, uh, probably the place you'd say is, well, we'll put it in community services, but that's probably the most understaffed department we have right now. So, in fact, the piece that would handle that would be your recreation staff, which we don't have any. So, we have Scott and Denise and Kathy Wiseman who form, and Rochelle who form a committee to kind of do some of those things, so.
That is, that is actually very, very key, is who, is who, on, on all of these, is who staffs, uh, because it, uh, you know, has to have that liaison, um, information flow back, back and forth. Um, so where do you want to start the discussion on that? I think, uh, it says here, we should start with natural resources, so we want to talk about that because reforming this committee, I think there were a couple of issues, if I could just summarize what, what, what we've identified in our, the times that we've talked about it, which has been brief, is, uh, that, you know, I believe that in the bylaws for them, there have twenty-two or something different assignments, so we've talked about narrowing the focus if we did this. Um, one of my issues has always been who, who staffs it and then, um, the, yeah, you have goals and purpose of that and, and then staffing. And then, again, we've talked about, um, in, in prior years, that the trend for committee structure in many areas is to do, to use tasks, task forces or ad hoc committees that have a single purpose or, you know, that have a, a specific goal that are formed to do that, um, because it's a great use of citizen time, they know what they have to do, and then when they're done, it dissolves and, you know, the next task creates its own special needs task force. So that's kind of how we've operated in the, um, both in the natural resources area and in the, um, arts area is the use of task forces. So, Tony, did you want to lead off that discussion on the natural resources or, or did you?
Is this in our packet now, Tony?
I believe it is, yes.
Oh, here it is, Natural Resources Committee.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, what we're looking for, I think here is direction, is this something that we want to keep on the list or is this a, you know, what do we want to do with that?
And I guess to add to that, you know, we have, um, we have the inordinance that combine the Tree Committee and the Natural Resource Committee into one, they're not meeting. Um, you know, I guess one of the questions is, how do we, do we want to reestablish that or can we reestablish it under the Planning Commission with additional members to help them with the Tree Committee, Natural Resource component of it? And then, you know, what's driving this is if, if we want this designation as Tree City USA, we have to have a, um, a Tree Committee or Department in the city, it's one of the requirements for that, for that designation. And so if, if obtaining Tree City USA is a goal of ours to accomplish, then we need to address this issue of how we're going to have this Tree Committee and where it's going to be located. And if we are going to reestablish the Natural Resource Committee, um, you know, we are starting to run into staffing issues in community development.
What is the committee or the staff? It can, you mean that right here, staff?
I guess, you know, if, if it is going to be citizen involved and if it's going to be its own Tree Committee, you know, I think it's very important that you, that our recommendation would be, um, a diverse group of members on that committee so that you can have a wider range of, of input on this as opposed to just focused on preservation of trees, because there are other interests. There's development interests, there's environmental interests, there's property owner interests, and, and historically, I'm not sure that's been represented, and it'd be much, um, more of advantage to the city if something came out of there that had broad consensus rather than coming out looking like a, um, a, we're going to regulate trees on private property without broader input.
Well, my view again, eh, on this one, I think, is that, um, I mean, I'm, I really have seen the success of task forces, the, where you bring the experts together and do this. The Tree Committee is slightly different in that we might need it to be ongoing, um, because it needs to be an advisory committee, but the, the staffing, how do we, how do we do that? And, um, is, you have, the number one question here is, I think the relevant one, is obtaining Tree City USA this year, this designation a priority for us? Is that the most important thing? I mean, when you put selecting a city manager and working on the facilities and, it, it may, it may fall, and, uh, that doesn't mean that we're not interested in it and that pieces around the edge can't happen because we've got the draft, uh, rules and regs. So what, so I think, that's probably the question we need to answer, is that a priority for us this year? Daphne?
Was that your hand up? Was that your hand up without your hand or Doug?
I didn't know if your hand was up.
If you've called, go ahead.
No, Doug, he's first.
Yeah, no, you would be first, I didn't know your hand was up.
Yeah.
Got to point your finger.
We got, we got various areas that are to be covered. A Tree Committee, people think of trees. The natural resources, of course, are, are greater than trees. I mean, they have to do with ecosystems and everything else. There are no trees growing in, in water, for example, and yet that's a natural resource. Uh, I don't know what the specifics of what's required on a, on a Tree Committee is, if they can, if it's, if it, if it covers, you know, being a, no, but, I mean, you can, you can have great tree policies without necessarily becoming recognized in, in some kind of a national program.
You can check out page, what, what the requirements are if you want to, oh, actually, sorry, sorry.
It's a green packet.
Yeah, it's, it's on page, uh, yeah, you just have a page. Anyway, sorry.
I'm getting through the Ermitainger House, I'm coming to Neighborhood Association.
Tree Subcommittee.
It's behind Ermitainger, right, the next one, behind Ermitainger.
Natural Resources, okay. And where do we have the requirements?
Um, actually, I, I goofed, um, it's the natural resources rules, not their goal. I don't know if we have Tree, yeah, here's Tree Subcommittee, go back to page five of five.
Page what?
Page five, um, the Natural Resources Committee proposed bylaws.
Tree City USA is what I was talking about. And the, the question is whether, whether, whether what is required in terms of then can be met by a, uh, Natural Resource Committee. I, I don't have any issue with it being a task, task oriented, task oriented program. Uh, but, but what I was going to say is that if we, uh, what Tony's mentioning, we've got our Tree Committee, Natural Resource Committee are tied into one.
Yeah.
And Tree City USA is, is not something that I'm, I'm really worried about. I mean, we can, we can establish the appropriate tree policies and so forth that at, at one point or another, if we want to be Tree Cities USA, that's fine. I'm, I'm more concerned with architaming our nat, our, our natural resource areas in a, uh, in, in a way that we've got people that are knowledgeable about these and, and know how they need to be protected. Uh, in some cases, trees may be part of it, in some cases, something else may be part of it. And I have nothing, I have no problem with a task oriented effort. Uh, in fairness to the Natural Resource Committee, they were addressing many of those tasks in the process and it took them, it took us quite a while to get the codes in place that encompass the recommendations that they, they were putting forward. But the point is, they made a contribution, they just didn't feel their contribution was being recognized. They saw many things going wrong, uh, it, because we didn't have the code and it took us a while for us to establish the code. I think a task force oriented thing and the one, the one that Jim, Jim and I have been proposing is a task force oriented piece. Uh, I'm not sure that you need staff at the onset when you're, if you're trying to pull together some expertise in terms of, you know, what is the impact of actually dredging the coal, what does it do to the mouth, what does it do to the mouth if, uh, of the coal opening to the river? We've seen some major degradation going on there, it's been suggested to, if the code eventually you're going to get a mud flat in the coal, uh, we don't want that. It seems to me that's the kind of area that we could have a focused task force looking at in terms of, of the coal. Um, there are other things we have now, we now have a, you know, we have the conservation district possibilities, but there's another step. One is educational. I mean, we've got a lot of natural resource areas that are already built, and how do you communicate to the property owners, this, you know, this is something that you can make use of, uh, what do you do to make use of them? I mean, the fact that we've got it on the code, you know, on our code doesn't make, make much difference if the people that don't have, you know, that have streams running through their property don't, don't know about it and don't, don't know what the benefits are to having, you know, fulfilling certain obligations to make those conservation easements and what the benefits are them, to them in, in, in the meantime. We've got no educational process that I know of that's associated with that. So I think there are, there are things that we need to kind of mobilize, uh, people about and I think those needs may be best made, met maybe on a task force basis, but, uh, I presume maybe the Planning Commission is, you know, some task force operating under the Planning Commission may be a mechanism of dealing with it. Uh, I mean, when, we got, we got the task force that are dealing with our buildings that are basically, basically under the Parks Department, those task force are being organized under, under Scott Archer's program. But I'm not sure that at the onset that you need to have a staff there at the beginning of the process. Once you've assimilated some, some sets of ideas or some sets of potential policy directions, that might be a point at which staff could come in. One of the difficulties from my standpoint is having staff there at the beginning is their mindset is tied to the code that they've got and, and they may put forward things that, uh, that sound like constraints, but they're only constraints within what we have currently. And we open the door, I think, more broadly if we have a task force that really doesn't, doesn't have a major staff, uh, doesn't have a major staff, uh, assignment at the very beginning of the process. That comes later on when, be it the commissioner or whatever level, that, uh, there are elements in the, that are coming out from a report from the task force that the commission wants to, to pursue.
Ooh, I really think it's frightening not to have staff at, at a, to staff the committees over which we have purview. Um, for communication, I mean, the agenda can be set by the chairs of the task force, which I like co-chairs, um, and, and, and run that way, um, but to have that, but not to have staff to serve one of our, any of our committees, I think is, uh, difficult or, yeah, I, I just don't know how we maintain that communication structure.
You're the ones pursuing, you're the ones pursuing, uh, putting forward the constraint. I mean, you, the constraint you say is staff, and I, I don't argue that's, that's not the case.
I think it's a constraint.
But the point is, therefore, we're not going to do anything because we don't have the staff?
No, oh, no, I'm not proposing that. I think on the table is, um, you know, do we wish to add a, do we wish to add any, do we wish to recreate, renew what we have, what are the committees that are in, any of the committees that are inactive? Do we wish to have any tasks, put any task forces into play? For instance, a Tree One or like you're talking about some special purpose one? Um, and do we wish to do it this year? I mean, I think those are what's on the table.
Let me, let me pose that question differently for you guys to debate, because the question is not, do we don't do anything if we don't have staff? The question is, do we take on new responsibilities if you're not going to provide the resources for us to get that job done with? Because that's what you end up with, so that's what you have to debate. And that may be staff or it may be other things.
Excuse me, go ahead Jim.
I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, you, okay, Jim then.
Um, I'm, just as a position, I want to state my preference for, um, reconstituting the Natural Resources Committee as it is in our current code. And I have a question for Tony on that regard. Would our Natural Resources Committee as constituted in our current code satisfy what we need for the Tree Committee USA designation?
Um, I believe it probably could since we passed an ordinance combining the two into one.
Okay, so if that's the case.
But I'm not sure that it's necessarily how it's structured right now.
Sure.
You know, we've got an NRC and then I think they were trying to be a subcommittee, so now you've got another, another group. So now you've got another, another group meeting of which needs staff time, especially if you're going to try and create some type of a tree ordinance. You need to have the staff assistance there to help, and you need a broad-based group on that committee. And so, you know, it'd be preferable if we could start to reduce some of these subgroups that are being created and make that more of a task of the NRC. You know, dedicating two additional staff members for multiple night meetings and putting this material together is going to be, start to become extremely difficult.
Well, if, if it satisfies, I guess, I kind of follow where Doug is, that, I mean, I'm not sure that the Tree City USA designation in and of itself is, is, is that much of a priority to me as much as what I think having our Natural Resources Committee reconstituted as it was originally envisioned would, would, I think, achieve what I see as the goal of the city, be it tree preservation or in, as Doug says, you know, more broader ecological considerations. So I think as far as my priority, it is to take as a prior, as a point of departure, the reconstitution of our Natural Resources Committee as it is embodied in our, in our code right now.
Okay, now, Daphne?
So would it be, would a way of looking at this be to put a cost to it? And what, if you have to hire staff or whatever, reallocate staff, if you have to take management staff off of a day-to-day project to put them on this, could we put a price tag on this? And then as we go look at options later in the day, so we can have a, kind of a more accurate, so, I mean, we're evaluating trade-offs here, and I'm listening.
One of the things I think that, again, if we're, we're going to have to think about this coming budget, probably just to do kind of where we're at, but particularly if we're going to add committees, and this is the minimum, is we'll be moving Dan's position into urban renewal. And if we want to fund that broader economic development piece, we're going to figure out where that funding comes from. Right now, he's, that's coming out of general fund, but that was, already that position was budgeted.
Right, right.
And I think we're going to have to add back a position in community development, even though the activity levels in community development in terms of building and all is down, so you're not having fee, because this goes more into that general planning stuff. So eventually, it's a, it's a general fund, and, you know, you can count on probably one staff position, but, again, it doesn't do you any good, and I'll come back to my point, to take on new responsibilities if you're not going to allocate resources.
Really?
Because people just get frustrated.
Unfunded mandates.
The problem, and I understand committees being kind of brainstorming, but to not have a staff person there to kind of help them understand the current parameters, and I think all of us are good enough to say, you know, these can be changed, then you bring that in later, it's like we're the impediment, and they get a very negative opinion of staff. It looks like we're throwing sticks in the path versus just pointing out, this is the reality you're working with. Now, where you want to go, it's really a question if you want to change ordinances or whatever it takes to get those changes done.
You have to, I mean, we assign any more junior member of staff to cover that, the Natural Resource Committee. And that was probably a necessity, I'm not questioning that. But I've talked to Natural Resource Committee members, and at no point did a senior person come in and then talk about some of these issues. It was always, the junior person was always acting as a communication link with the committee and basically, I'd say, the head of the, of the planning department. I think at certain critical points, had this communication link been more direct, and I'm not suggesting you get the senior person there, but had a senior person come in at particularly critical points and thrust us out, I think it could have been a very different thing. That didn't happen. And, and I felt sorry for the junior person that was there. I attended several of those meetings, and why aren't you doing this? Well, I'm not, and then he'd go back, and it, it was a very arduous thing.
That was the point I was trying to make earlier. I think really to serve committees well. And that's where you have to really think, how many committees do you have? It's better served if you have senior staff doing it. But they can only carry so much of the load. Now, I agree, if, if we are spread so thin, there are junctures where you have to have senior staff coming in there. I mean, personally, I'd like to attend many, many more committee meetings just to try to, because it's, I mean, it's, the machine we have right now is so large, it's, it's just hard to know where it's all coming from. At halftime, you're getting stuff, you say, why don't we know about it? I don't even know about it. I mean, by the time it gets there, it's, it's already hit the press or something else. And, and the bigger we get, the more difficult that will become.
And if I may, just on the resolution of the Natural Resource Committee, you know, the scope of activities, there's 14 activities.
14, yeah.
That is a department. If you read these, and if you actually wanted to accomplish these, with the staff we have, we can maybe tackle one of these.
Yeah.
Not all 14 of these. That's, and then the other part of that is, I know that this has come up several times about what is their role in terms of reviewing applications? And it talks about, number nine, commenting on land use applications that have potential to significantly impact natural resources and related projects and policies coming before the city commission or planning commission.
You like everything.
Well, but there are several that we handle at the staff level that were previous, the Natural Resource Committee was wanting to comment on that, and there was a disconnect between what the land use regulations allow us to do as a jurisdiction versus where they wanted to enter into a negotiation with the applicant. And I think that created a little bit of friction too, of why aren't you getting more from them, or why aren't we, we don't agree with this report, we don't think this is proper, whereas we've got our staff and our professionals looking at it and going, you know, we're not quite agreeing. So I just think providing direction from either the city commission or the planning commission as to what natural resource should be focusing on would help. Because trying to get, you know, they might go down a road that we may not have any interest as a commission, or the political ability to actually do. And then there's going to be frustration, if we've just spent nine months on this and you're tabling it.
What I've heard from other cities is that many, I don't know about all, many have moved away from the broad natural resources and have gone to energy conservation committee or sustainability committee or a, you know, water resources committee or something like that. So I think my question is, because I firmly believe this needs to be, that we need, that in its current form of resolution, that it needs a great deal more work before. I could endorse it. And again, with a new city manager coming and new kind of staffing, I'm wondering if this is reforming the Natural Resources Committee, whether it's in its current form or in a new format, a priority for us this calendar year?
Let me give you another priority that you have to look at this in, because you're talking about the organization and you're talking about resources. And again, we're talking about these facilities, and that's dollars. We're talking about the economic development position, and that's resources. We're talking about at least another person in community development, that's resources. We don't have to add a police officer this year because we've done that when we converted to CSO, but the following year, you have another police officer come in. If you look at this organizational chart, I would be surprised if the new city manager doesn't talk to you, this needs to be changed. Right now, and it's part of the thing, and I understand Jim's frustration sometimes not getting stuff, but I have 11 different people reporting to me. Span of control, I, I do that because it's, it's flat organization. I've had a hard time asking for a different structure to serve that because we had these needs elsewhere. It wouldn't surprise me that you don't see a new city manager say, we need some type of assistant city managers in here moving this stuff under there. Because that's getting, I, I can cover it, but I can't really give everyone need to, the, the time they need. Right now, one of the things we're wrestling with, IT, is actually two people. He does IT and GIS, which actually should be separated. IT should be one thing, and GIS should be something else, but we've got one person doing that. So you've got a number of things in there. So the question comes down to, where are the priorities? Because part of it's building organization, and again, we're still in the five-year period of no new services, and we're trying to work in that. And we've, you know, stepped all around that one, but we've stayed within the budgetary limit. So you've got some growth issues here that are really beginning to bump up, but we've been very successful. But where you spend those dollars, again, you've got to go back to that budget and see what you have there. So that's a broad issue.
Okay, I hate to spend too much more time on this, so let's determine direction here.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We, we, I'm sorry, Jim and I have had something that was, has been before us, and we've put it on different study sessions, and we'll have to deal with it at the retreat. From my standpoint, we deal with the issue of the cove task force, and we deal with it here.
Sure.
I don't want to come out of this and say, well, we're going to put in a different study. So we've got to deal with it right now.
Yeah, no, I wanted to deal with the task.
But now, let me come to a, however, the more general statement. You said, well, some cities are moving to our sustainability, energy, and so forth. Sustainability is far broader than, than everything. I mean, you would talk about the tasks you'd put under there, and you'd include these in there. That's not going to help at all. Energy, I mean, green energy and so forth, yeah, there's some relations, but natural resource management is rather distinct. And so I, I can't, I can't, I can't abandon that and say, well, we're going to come up with a sustainability group, when in fact, they'll be less focused than the Natural Resource Committee, because they're going to include natural resources, they're going to include green development, they're going to include all those other things. I mean, that's going to be less focused than a Natural Resource Committee would be. I have no problem moving a, a Natural Resource Committee as a subcommittee under the planning commission. I don't have any problem with that at all. But I think we need the Natural Resource Committee, it was on our goals.
You wish it to be in this year's goals?
Yes.
That's the question?
Yes.
Is that a priority for us? I've just heard from one.
To reestablish the.
To reestablish it either in this current form or in a different form.
Yes, it is for me.
In a.
A priority, yes.
There a majority of that?
It is not for me because of the, all our facilities that are open right now, and we are hiring a new city manager. We're just in a lot of organizational challenges this year, and I most respectfully would like to, maybe next year, we can look at.
Next year, I won't be here.
Well, maybe next year, I won't be here either. It's not about me, it's about what's best for the city.
Well, I agree with you, and I think this is the best for the city.
Right. But we can't, if we can't do the job, what's the point of doing it? Saying we're doing it and putting it on paper, and then everybody being frustrated?
That's.
We don't have staff to do it, we don't have, where are we going to fit it in with the big laundry list of things to do for this year?
We got two.
I, I'm supportive, I just, you know, there's just, we can't do everything. And we didn't even talk, you know, Larry, you didn't bring it up yet. The Stern Wheeler Rose needs to get addressed yet, and Willamette Falls National Heritage on our funding things. I'm writing lists, more things that are, should be on there that we're still juggling.
We've, we've got a full plate, and.
We've got a full plate, and we've got a library, we've got to figure out how to move how much staff.
And, and many of those will require citizen task forces as well. Rocky?
I, I kind of feel the same way. It, it's, obviously, you know, on our list of goals, we all think it's important, but we've got a whole bunch of other things that have come into the picture, and to me, that's not in, in the top of my list of priorities. But I, I also would hate to see it get pushed out of the picture.
What about if we put it on, you know, it's a future issues list, so that, that can be discussed with our new, new city manager?
If you don't, if you don't have the tree commission's support, then that's the way it is.
Yeah.
Now, I'm going to bring back now the cove task force.
Sure.
That was an independent piece.
Yeah, no, no, that's true.
And the point is, this is an important issue. Even though we did not tie it to the current development, and I'm, I'm glad Jim and Cita made that point, what happens there? If, if the intent of that is to be a very valuable development, then it is important that the cove itself remain a valuable piece. And I think, I think we need to put this task force together. We need to find, we need to find out the, what, what the failure of, of moving the sediment that's built up in front of the mouth of the cove is in terms of the general future of the cove. It has been suggested that the erosion that we're seeing there between the mouth of the cove and the Clackamas River is partially affected by that accumulation of sedimentation. I don't, I don't have expertise in that, but the intent is to bring in the kind of expertise that can answer that question. Because if in fact that, if in fact that peninsula eventually erodes, erodes away, we're going to lose that amenity in its, in the form that has the recreational capabilities and so forth. I mean, you may have a great mud flat for shorebirds, but you might not have anything else. And so I want to see that task force going forward.
Okay. I think this is a good time to, to talk about that, because, I mean, I'm still unclear about, I guess, three things. First of all, is, so if it's, if it's a Friends of the Cove group, then it, you know, then that's, that's one thing, that it's an ongoing, you know, forever kind of group that exists like a 501(c)(3). You know, that, that to me is one, one issue, so I'm not really clear. Secondly, if it's a task force that's focused on determining the use of, of the sediment, that's another thing. And then who, who staffs it and what funding do we put behind it? And what, I'm, I'm still very unclear, again, long-term or short-term task force? And is it a task force? Is it an ongoing committee? Who staffs it? And what do we see as the, yeah, the money that's needed to make it successful? What does success look like for this task force?
You know, you're, you're posing the questions that the task force is supposed to answer. You're, I mean, these are the questions that we're putting forward, the task force is supposed to answer in terms of what the end product is. I mean, it's fair to ask the question of, how do we staff it? But the other questions you're asking is, are the questions that the task force is supposed to answer, and we don't put it forward at this point in the game. I mean, if we don't know, if we don't know what the removal or lack of removal of that sediment is on the cove itself, we, we, we don't, I mean, those are the questions.
Well, it's difficult, I think, to people, a task force if we don't, I mean, is it sediment-oriented?
It is sediment-oriented. I mean, it's written that way. The proposal is written that way.
Okay, that was really un.
Oh, I don't think it is. That's the focus.
Okay.
I mean, we failed to change a numbering system, I think. We had a A, a one, and an A, or a A and a one. But the point is, they, there wasn't, there wasn't two subsections of something, because in our editing, we did away with it. The focus was the, the sedimentation, how to deal with it. Am I correct?
To me.
Yeah.
Does that, the major line up of the river also?
Well, that, yeah, that depends.
There's sort of all these different ideas going around.
Yeah.
There's the Willamette River deposition.
Yeah.
There's the whole impact of having a cove next to a Clackamas River, and the, you know, the natural implications of that, and so I.
The sedimentation of where it got, I mean, when we put it forward, yes, there were elements of that. Sedimentation, where do you put it? And one of the concern, I mean, one of the things that's addressed in the Willamette River is addressed because we're talking about the locks keep, keeps on functioning. If it's going to function in any major way, in fact, what, what is the sedimentation buildup in the Willamette imply about the locks? So it got, it got broadened to that point, because if we move, if in fact it's moved in, I'll say it gets just down there, the Willamette somewhere, is that going to impact some of the other things that we have interest in Oregon City? But it was still a sedimentation issue. I think that's a fair statement, isn't it? I mean, the cove, the cove was not the only focus of the issue of the sedimentation. The issue was the sedimentation buildup in general. And where does it, where does it best get deposited? And whether, in fact, whether the sedimentation, anything should happen there whatsoever.
And so this would also be a, considering future dredging, right? Because we.
Yes.
The permit, by the way, made it one more step.
No, no, it is a long term, it's a, it's a longer-term future. How they, you know, how they deal with the sediment at this point, if it got someplace, temporarily they can put it.
It's been permitted, right. It's been permitted.
Yeah, it was permitted at this stage, but it's a long-term future. We know that it's going to happen to us again, because it's happened to us in the past. Or maybe, in fact, the task force comes to say, we can pull in some expertise to, how, how can things, I'll use the term, be engineered in some way or fashion that reduces the deposition of sediment in this area? I mean, that might be something based on the expertise we can draw in that gives us a longer-term framework that says, we're going to make some corrections here that are, we don't have to. we don't have to deal with every four or five years. Maybe they don't have to be dealt with for every 10 or 20."
That's what I mean.
We don't know, we don't know that. I mean, that's the whole point.
I'm trying to figure out how this, how the information that might result from this task force fits in with the city missions. Nancy, how could this task force be of use to you and your department in decision-making? And what information could it provide that you do not now have or don't have the ability to retrieve?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is perhaps we're bringing in volunteer experts so we don't have to hire consultants to do the work. Is that right?
At this point, I mean-
I mean, because the other, the concern I might have as well is those experts, are they working for their agencies or are they volunteering and representing themselves? Is it at night? Is it during the day? Is it paid? Is it not paid? Is it part of their work program to do this? Is it okay? I mean, that part is, I guess, I don't know about that. So, that would be it. I mean, if I get free work, free consulting services, that would be helpful. But I have a feeling it's going to end up in projects that cost money and then we have to get it, then we have to figure out, is it, who's going to pay for that? But that's just my initial reaction.
Jim?
To me, part of the purpose of the task force was precisely, Nancy, to have people who are very keyed in and tuned in with the whole grant world regarding this stuff. And considering if it comes to specific projects, the task force itself would, that would be part of its role in identifying sources of funding for that.
It would make recommendations to the city commission with possible funding sources and then we would determine-
Is this a city committee or is it more of a Clackamas River watershed committee?
It sounds regional to me.
But I don't, yeah, I mean, we have interest in the Cove.
But it's a broader issue you're bringing about this.
But I think, wait, hold on. I think you better look at the list of people that we propose to be on this committee.
Well, that's why I'm concerned because to staff a committee like that and to compel attendance, you know, I think the, it may need to be a broader consortium of leadership of it. That's what I'm wondering. If, you know, maybe it's co-chairs of various agencies that convene it and then therefore would also feel compelled to put funding into our staffing. Because if it's Willamette issues and Clackamas issues, there's a bunch of stakeholders in that. So, I mean, it just, it sounds like opening up a kind of unknown, I'm so used to working on a problem and determining who needs to be at the table to solve the problem and I'm not sure I quite get it yet here.
Then what you need to do is we need to set up a focus study session that deals with only this task force issue. The point is, we put the cities in, we put the county in, in terms of people that would serve on this task force. I don't, I think there, I think you're suggesting, "Well, then we pull in staff from those particular groups."
Co-chairs or some-
Co-chair. I don't have any problem with that particular concept, but I think we need, we've had this put off and we've had this put off. Frankly, some of the concerns that you've had, I don't understand because I felt they were in the focus statement of what was there. I think it was purely, and you said you didn't see it and I didn't see how you couldn't see it. Because I thought it was, other than some numbering issues of points when there was an A and a one and there was no two, you know, I thought it was very clear what the intent of that was. And if you look at the membership, we looked on that subcommittee.
I remember that part.
So, I would say that we agree on a study session that deals with only this particular subject and we deal with this soon.
Priority of the city commission to add that to our work plan.
May I ask one more question? So, if we are having that this task force is going to have nothing to do with the current development now, so the permit's in place, that's in process, is this, so how do we, well, okay, here's one little question. How do we know whatever they move the sediments from here, that might change whatever even you're going to do? So, how can you be figuring out what you're going to do down the road when this first step hasn't even been done? That's one. And then, two, I just don't know how Oregon City is running something with the Marine Corps and all these other boards, how it's not more of a multi-jurisdictional thing.
First of all, it's almost bound to be a multi-jurisdictional thing. Again, you're posing the questions that the task force is supposed to answer. The point is, what happens if we do this and what happens next? We've removed sediment before. We're removing sediment again.
Yeah, but we don't know where we're putting it, do we?
We're not, no, that's the point. We're not putting it-
We know where we're putting it this time. We do, it's permitted.
Yeah, we're not, that's not part of it. We were taught, we've made it very clear that we're not talking about what's happening in the current development there and we're not talking about what's happening in the current permit process. We're talking about the future.
Right.
And that's clear. That's clear in the document. And this is what's so frustrating to me. People keep on bringing up these issues. They are issues that the task force is supposed to address. You ask me for answers that we don't have, we don't have the answers to because that's the function of task force. I find this extremely frustrating.
Okay, it might help me then if you would outline what your expectation of a meeting-
My expectation is to get the study session to direct their attention specifically to the items that's in the proposal. We haven't done that. The questions I get always posed to me are things that I feel are in the proposal. We haven't had a, we haven't had a study session that looks at them point by point.
Okay, then let's just address that. Are we willing to, as a majority of the commission, want that to be on a study session for the future on our work agenda? Okay, we've got plans for that. So, before the new city manager or after?
Before.
Before the city manager?
About forming a task force. It probably won't be formed until the city manager comes.
All right, we haven't had the discussion.
About February the 23rd. That is, you'll have to have, I mean, you've got so many things on your work session agenda now, you're going to have to have special work sessions.
I, the only caveat I have is that we have city manager interviews. That's going to take so much of our time and we like, we may have site visits. So, let's look at that one or the 1st of March because we are going to be very booked in February if-
February 23rd is a work session?
No, the regular work session on that might would be the 9th, but you've got so many issues there.
Yeah, we've got all those code amendments.
You could push all those back now. So, what I'm suggesting to you is you need to have a second work session either in February or in March and you could do it, you could do it the 1st of March.
We'll probably have a separate work session anyway on the personnel.
There's also the two-hour stormwater work session. Remember, we're planning on that.
Let's meet the entire week.
(laughing) Wait, what you're planning?
Yeah.
Got that going.
Actually, I would appreciate if we allow staff to schedule that on the list of priorities that we already have because taking into account what our meeting schedule is, I mean, maybe what we should do with our next city council meeting is look at the calendar and see what the matrix of meetings are because it's, it may be a killer. We haven't scheduled interviews, but we need to. That's not there and, you know, again, we don't know for sure what that process is going to be.
And we're dealing intermittently with crises. We've got a library moving, we've got two facilities open, so where's our focus and how much can we reason, why do we want to overwhelm ourselves and not do anything well rather than doing a few things perfect or better or thought out?
Because you've been putting this off from one session to another to another for months, that's why.
So, maybe before we take another new things, we need to take care of things we've already talked about.
I have a point. Since I was the one that requested this stormwater session, out of deference to, I think Doug's and mine, concern regarding the timing of this task force, I for one would be willing to set back the presentation on the stormwater issue because I do think we need to tie up the Cove task force issue. And if that assists in making time for all of us, I don't know how my colleagues would feel, but I would, I would be interested and willing to set back the stormwater discussion to open up time for the task force discussion.
Looks like-
Free up a meeting in March.
We'll get you a schedule when you go.
I think that, I mean, our time management, I think, is going to be really crucial for all of us. We've got our plates pretty full.
Policies for success, you know, to set yourself up for success instead of being frustrated and failing it.
Okay, any more on that? So, where'd we get?
We've got one letter off.
Okay, well, that's what we're sort of talking about. Planning Commission was pretty easy because I think we talked about-
I just want to clarify because I believe it was one of the meetings in December, I thought that there was consensus to start the process of reducing it to five and that's a, just changing our code. So, we started the public notice for that. So, that was how we were moving forward right now.
Any problems with that?
Change to five in what?
From, we have to change the code from five to seven. So, we've already started that process, but it includes notifying the state and there's a 45.
We're a planning commission?
To reduce, to change our Oregon City Municipal Code from, yes.
From seven to five?
From seven to five, yeah.
Oh, okay, changing it, okay, from seven to five.
That's a cost thing. You have estimated $800,000 for processing of that.
Mailings and notifying and the ordinance and staff time, yes.
Okay. Now, I'd like to actually broaden that one. Is it our intent that, because that'll go to an election. Is that where you're headed with that or just a resolution?
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Just an ordinance.
Just an ordinance, yes.
It's not in the charter, right, Tony?
It's not in the charter.
I thought it was. Are you sure?
Positive, it's in-
No, it, yeah, it's just, no, it's just ordinance, yeah, it's not in charter.
Okay, great. Oh, that's way-
We changed it since we, you know.
That's way easier. Okay, good. Thank you. That answers my questions. Okay, did we want to talk about CIC Neighborhood Assistance Program?
I just mentioned those questions in there. I guess that's something you probably won't look at as you go through time.
Jim?
I would like to raise an issue regarding the CIC and I do this in part to congratulate Doug on his mayoral candidacy, but also as far as what the Oregon City News announced regarding Doug's mayoral candidacy, one of the issues that they quoted Doug on was Doug's interest in creating an ombudsman, which Doug has raised in the past. And I can say for myself that when Doug raised this at the beginning of last year, I was in fully support of it and I'm still fully in support of it. And if, I think Doug, you could probably find a majority now without waiting to become mayor to achieve that particular goal. And so, I just raise that now as far as if you want to, I would like to probe you as far as your interest in pursuing that now in this regard. You have said that your idea of an ombudsman would be to have that person report directly to the city commission and I agree totally with that. And I'm just wondering if the way we could establish such a position is make that ombudsman also the full-time liaison to the CIC. And if that's something you're, we're interested in pursuing that, I would like to put that as a priority now for the upcoming, you know, budgeting process and have that as an ongoing item of discussion right away.
You may need a charter revision.
I mean, we can, we can work-
Think that's your goal, you're shooting at a charter.
We can explore the legalities of what we need to do. And frankly, it can be a liaison with the Main Street Program as well. I mean, I, it's broader than the neighborhoods themselves, but I think the CIC and the neighborhood associations are the primary functioning piece, but where in fact there's, I expect, and I don't know how we do it, whomever we hire would be, should it go forward, whomever we hire would be somebody that would in fact work with staff. But, and I expect the individual would actually sit down at the staff meetings as well as these things are being talked about. I don't, I don't want this to be a conflict position that is antagonistic, but I do want it to be a mechanism of bringing up concerns to the city commission when there are in fact issues that we need to deal with. Because I've heard frustrations at different points from almost every neighborhood association about where we didn't have a staff person, wasn't operating correct in an effective way, that they were being very frustrated and, yes, I support it.
So, you're willing to start that ball rolling right now?
Yep.
Okay, so, is it a question of us giving direction to staff to start exploring those parameters, whether it would require a charter change, what kind of budget it would require? I'm all for that if the commission is, I see a head nod from Rocky.
The one question that I would have, I think this would be a very difficult, well, the primary issue here is what is, how does that work with driving a wedge between the city manager and the city council? I mean, in a new city manager role, how is a new city manager going to like having a buffer? Or when the, when the city manager disagrees with the direction that the ombudsman who operates independently and sort of like a city manager because that person reports to us, who wins in that conflict?
It's up to the city commission.
Well, then, we become conflict resolved, we become city managers.
Become the judge.
Become the judge. Oh, boy. I, I'd like to hear, see another model in another community where that works because the city manager is our liaison to the community and if that's not working, then we need a new city manager. I mean, I just, the, it's a problem in every community of how all of the information gets filtered, but I don't know that we want it filtered through two people. That's, I mean, because we all are out in the community and if we aren't able to bring issues forward, then we're not doing our job. I'm just, I'm really uncertain about how a new city manager would really look upon this because it's, it really ties, I think, one of their arms.
First of all, the recommendations to do away with the position were put forward originally by the city manager. I understand we had budgetary constraints. This set, puts forward before the commission that relations between the city commission, CIC, is one of the primary, one of the primary roles that we want to focus on. They broke, I mean, once we did that, really, things kind of disintegrated in terms of our relationship with the neighborhood associations and the CIC. Neighborhood associations started doing their own thing, really. There was little organization. I don't, I don't, I foresee that there are probably issues that do come up that are basically conflict issues that the city commission is going to have to deal with. However, the person that we hire will be a person that first works with the staff before anything like that would ever happen. I would think would be extremely rare where we would be dealing with those kinds of conflicts. The person, first of all, is facilitating the communication with the, with the staff, but it is not directed by the city manager that then sets up the parameters for how things are facilitated. I think it's going to only be on rare occasions where we're going to see the ombudsman coming before the city commission, speaking on behalf of the CIC or the neighborhood associations.
I voiced my opinion on that before, but let me just give you a thought. Again, this last year, we wanted to get, reinvigorate the CIC, but we were given no resources to do that with and I found a way to do that. I think your first step before you create another position to a whole different reporting structure is perhaps you create the staff positions that can work back through the city, because you've never really had an appropriate department for that. My only caveat for that is, this is so deja vu. I mean, we had a budget crisis. To get rid of that budget crisis, part of it, we closed the Carnegie, we eliminated the public affairs officer, all those other cuts. And though we really haven't improved that revenue stream that much, we want to put this back into the budget and we've already just looked at it and this list here, I mean, it's fine, but I think the other- the other piece that has to go with that, you're going to have to start talking about your tax rate and bumping that up or stripping something else out of the general fund to do these things with. And I don't hear that conversation associated with this, so.
Listen to me. First of all, my, my anticipation is we're going to have a city manager before you. I'd rather have that city manager, the future city manager, realize that this commission is going in that direction so they can make their own decisions as to whether they're going to operate that way. In terms of the budgeting of the position, that's, that's something that has to occur within the city commission and the city manager that exists at the time. If we find out in fact that we can't provide the services and budget that position, then that's part of that process and maybe it doesn't in fact get, get funded as a result of the discussion that occurs between the commission and the city manager.
One of the problems you have though, I mean, this, this is not a department head position. So in terms of meeting regularly or sitting at staff meetings, you know, maybe the manager won't that to happen. I guess I would have some reservations about that. I'd probably be want some, some other meetings. The prob, one of the problems that we had before was Mary Palmer.
I understand.
It was, well, it wasn't Mary, but it was what we associated with that resource. You had one person. Mary spent most evenings with neighborhood associations. Therefore, she didn't get to the office until 12 or 1:00. And by that time, most of the department heads were in the field. And that coordination between one person and staff is very difficult because that, because there's not any staff support to that office. I mean, if we're going to provide this type of thing, you need, it's like Tony, you're talking about almost a department and you need appropriate staffing. One person is, especially with 13 neighborhood associations, CIC, that's a big task if they don't have any staff support to it.
First, I, I need to comment on how the whole thing functioned. In order to do this, we're going to have to work with the neighborhood associations for them to do better scheduling of their meetings. Because there, there were, there were scheduled neighborhood association meetings on the same day, I think, among three of them. So Mary Palmer was coming to one and she was running to another and she was running to another. There could not have been effective communication under those circumstances.
There wasn't.
There wasn't, there wasn't. That's something, I mean, that's something we'll have to fix. We're going to have to tell neighborhood associations, you're going to have to work this out so that either, either they.
She tried on that though.
You know, either, well, I mean, we, we really almost have to force it. Either they have to make a decision of whether they want the person to come to a neighborhood association meeting, which probably isn't that effective because all non-Jet speakers coming in and so forth, or to a steering committee. But that could be this decision of the, of the neighborhood associations on how they do that. But that there is not the conflict of attending these neighborhood associations in a non-productive way. Steering committees will probably be the most logical place for the coordinator to go to, or the, the position, the person to go, the person to go to. That person then will need to schedule, I, I know you have staff meetings on a regular basis, but you still, I think, could reserve some of those staff meetings to, to be at a, at a point, or the city manager can schedule some of those staff meetings to be at a time where you could have that person there and discuss those issues that have, that have surfaced in the discussions of the CIC Neighborhood Association.
The other issue you have though too, and this is why I would, I would ask you to reconsider how you want this reporting structure. One of the problems that we had with the past position is when I arrived here, it was actually out in a different department. I think it's bounced around two or three times. It was not direct reporting to the city manager's office. So you can work through those type of issues. And I think you're going to create the same type of breakdowns here by having that go back through the council versus the manager. It'll work probably because of who the folks are, but I think, I think you're, you're creating a structure that's a problem. Bigger issue is, as opposed to just this position, if it takes a charter change, and I suspect it does because you're talking about an officer of the city and really that's kind of spelled out in there. You, if you're going to do a charter change as opposed to doing this one and then coming back and doing another one for something else, you might as well open that whole charter and figure out what you're going to fix. And that is a task unto itself.
A higher priority for me would be to have someone, I mean, I, I believe that our, in every city, without a full-time person that's devoted to neighborhood associations and citizen involvement, they have a hard time, they have a hard time working. I'm, I'm way more interested than that than in creating a, this, this buffer on, you know, a person that reports, reports to us. Because to me, if we hire a competent city manager, then that structure's, it's got to be coordinated. I mean, I, I went to so many meetings where our neighborhood liaison didn't have a clue what was going on in the city. And there's got to be that strong connection with the goals and, and all of that. And I just don't know that we have the oversight abilities within our structure of five to do that kind of, kind of.
My opinion hasn't been changed in this discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I hear, I hear that, but it's time to put all those opinions on the table.
If I might, if I might, I need to, I need to comment how. I want to, I want to comment on the management mechanism and I have no problem with it. You get input from all your staff and then a recommendation comes before the city commission. I have no problem with that. I mean, that's what the city manager's supposed to do. That recommendation may in fact be a recommendation that the CIC as a body has problems with. If the only mechanism of dealing with it is coming through the city manager. And of course, the CIC can come to meetings and they can express their concerns, but they would not have had the, perhaps the degree of dialogue that has occurred among the staff and this individual that it can be dealt with in a, a resolution way by bringing the, the two perspectives to the city commission. And I think, I think there's a real benefit to that particular process. Ombuds people are not new. They've existed for generations. This is not a new concept. It's a very old concept. And if it's done well, it works.
Yeah, okay, well, let me just summarize then. So at a future work session.
We're going to get you the parameters here to look at and see what type of action you need to take. And then if it takes charter change, I think you've got a broader issue to talk about. If it's something you can do it budget-wise, if you want to look at that, then you're going to have to figure out the resources for your budget.
Okay, great. Let's move on then. And where we are now is under general staffing, so that's a really good segue. So we're going to be talking about parks staffing, finance staffing, police staffing, community development staffing.
And I think I've mentioned, I've mentioned most of the things here. Parks, again, depending on what programs you're going to pick up is, do we need to add any people there? And particularly in view of this historical component, what comes out of that. We're not going to know that for another couple of months. But again, just with your parks maintenance, we gave you those statistics earlier. With police, you kind of know what the program we're on there. I think the debate that you probably want to think about is, right now, we're at 1.27 officers per thousand. And given in view of all these other things we're talking about, do you want to try to maintain that ratio or do you want to try to grow that here in the next, in the short term? That's, I think that's a question you're going, going to need to, to look at. And it, and as the city grows, I mean, each year, you're going to have to look at that analysis and determine when and how many officers do you add depending on the growth of the city. Community development, I've kind of mentioned, we need at least, I think, one more person over there until things pick up. That's probably about where we're going to be depending on what you want to add. And as Tony indicates, you know, you're, if you, kind of how we've got some of that stuff laid out, you may be talking about a whole new division in, in community development. And again, one person, particularly if you're talking about divisions, is probably not enough to do the job. We just talked about the ombudsman position. That's a position there. The, the other area that you haven't talked about and it's probably the weakest area and it's probably the biggest concern is finance. Is you have one professional position in finance and from there you go down into the line of folks. That's working for now, but it can be a scramble at times. And that's something that you probably need to think a little bit about. I've already mentioned to you the organizational chart and it wouldn't surprise me, maybe the manager may haul off on that, but I think that person may talk to you about some additional positions there, so. And then you have this issue with the appointment of city attorney. I think that will take a charter change. So again, if the ombudsman does, if this does, again, you've got the water rollback issues coming. You might, if you're going to open that charter, you might as well deal with that issue, do it one time and, as opposed to two different elections, doing things. So depending what this takes, that's, that's a broader issue you need to talk about. But that's kind of the staffing perspective that you have. Definitely has some smaller places in the city that we could definitely use some other folks. But there's, I think we've already got this budget in the negative for next year. I have to figure out how you balance this thing, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Any other issues in staffing then, Doug?
It's a thought. And I'm, I'm going to have to get some input from the chief here. Our cops grant has come into effect, how many, how many years was it for? Could you remind me?
It's for three years.
Okay, I'm going to make a recommendation and you all got to work it out, but my recommendation is any increases in, in, in police during that period of time, that we're able to hold off a reserve amount that we can take into that, what sounds like final year, the final year that we're operating under our, our resolution, that we don't go beyond the 99 cent per thousand point. So I believe that final year, we don't have the cops grant at 100%. If I got the years figured out correctly.
Correct.
That we.
We'll be starting our third year of the first year of cops grant, right? Three, four, five, yeah. It's in the next fiscal year we get the money?
Actually started using the money already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and my, if, if I'm correct, and you got to work it out, but if I'm correct, within the five-year resolution that we had, that we actually sort of earmarked an amount of money to cover those positions in the fifth year. I do believe in the position that we.
The fifth year from the grant or the fifth year of the fire annexation?
Fire annexation. I believe that.
Fourth year of the grant.
It corresponds to the fourth year of the grant, the fifth year of the obligation. I want to make sure that we're not in the ugly position of having to cut police officers once we've got the cops grant. And so I think, I think that's a real critical piece. I, I think you'll work it out and you can figure it out then, does that mean you don't, during that three-year period, like, yeah, during that three-year period, you don't, there's that person you don't hire or however you work that out. But I want to see that, I want to see that in there to guarantee that we're going to be able to hold on to the policemen that we've, we've hired, that whole five-year period.
I agree.
You agree on that?
Depending on what we have, these other things, we'll probably have to cut someone else, so. It's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, you're, you're going to look at that.
Yeah, if we're going to stay with that 97 cents, but it may work. We'll, we'll run you some numbers and look at it. Kind of, that's kind of in that one sheet, but that's before we started adding some of the other stuff. That's the, that's the unknown. I just don't know how, what these other things are going to cost yet, so it's, it's hard to calculate it.
Okay, appointment of city attorney. Do we, I don't think we dealt with all those issues yet. I mean, that's the, that's the track we're on.
Yeah.
And I don't need, I don't know if we need to discuss it today.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think we kind of discussed it thoroughly at that work session.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. So that will just go under one of our goals and knowing that it needs to be, we know what the work needs to be done for a charter man. Okay, we ready to move into other? We might as well.
I have a staffing proposal.
Oh, sure.
And I'm, I'm, there's some things in both last night and tonight's discussion that I find.
Proposal and hope my colleagues might take an interest in it. I'm glad Larry just mentioned that there is a desire to add back staff to the community development department. Want to get a sense from both you and Tony on, on what, what your thoughts are on that so far.
Tony?
I've been looking at that, so.
So in the, in the report I prepared for you, you know, one thing is when we moved into the new facility at 221 Malala in May of '08, historically we'd been at city hall. We had the benefit of administrative help up there. Right now, we did have Ms. Bankhead down with us for a little bit that helped with building and planning and obviously she's moved up to help the city manager. So we're in this facility with no administrative help at all. And so what I've got is a position where I have, in the building side, I have a permit tech and a permit coordinator splitting hours to work the front counter, answering phone calls, addressing people when they come in, pretty much doing administrative assistant work, which pulls them away from the ability to handle any building permits that come in. And then on the, on the planning side, I have an assistant planner and two planners and then my, then myself, who are doing everything from the front counter call to putting together mailings, mailing them, all the way up to presenting at city commission. And what you're, what we have is, when we get these land use applications and it's just, there is a lot of administrative work that goes into getting an application prepped and out the door, once the, the planning work of preparing that application is done. I mean, you know, a 300-person mailing, you know, when I've got myself doing it, doesn't make a lot of sense. But I can't give it to Laura because she's got an appeal to deal with and Christina's at HRB. So, you know, right now, because of the downturn that we've seen, you know, we can, we can probably get by meeting our requirements for current planning. We also have a situation where I have a planner scheduled to be on the counter from 8:00 PM to 5:00 PM, five days a week. Okay? And then we have Granicus. It's a great program. I, I, we, our department fully supports it. The amount of paper that we are not copying now is amazing. To be able to upload it, put it online, move everything there, you know, we've reduced our copying from preparing upwards of 25 full planning commission documents every time to five. It's staff, resources, I mean, it's, it's great. But the flip side of that is to really use this, this great technology. At, at planning commission meetings, someone needs to be here to run the computer and do the presentation. And then, so we've gone from historically, I've run planning commission meetings by myself with Renee's help, to now we have to have two, two staff members there. And we're not going to, I just don't have the ability to send another staff member now to historic review board. So Christina's going to have to just turn the computer on and let it go. So we're not maximizing the technology that we have. But as you've seen the budget last year for us, and we're going to be trending very similar to that this upcoming year. We've called developers. We have not had a pre-op in multiple months now and so we're not going to have an application until we get some of those pre-ops in. You know, so we're, we're trying to hold the line and get by with what we have unless, you know, the commission decides that some of these issues are worth investing in another planner. But, you know, what I'm proposing is to try and bring in the lowest, you know, an administrative assistant to split between building and planning, to try and let my planners do something else. And, you know, if we've got two people or three people at a planning commission meeting that night, on Monday night, and someone can't get in Tuesday morning, at least there's someone there who can be a face for our department and make sure and say, look, they will be in, I will make sure they get this, they'll contact you soon as they have that availability. That's, we're just hitting that with three, three and a half with me included. You know, it's, I'm nervous about it, but it's, it's hard to, with what I'm seeing coming in in the next year, trying to control those costs is difficult.
Probably bump Laura up too.
Yeah.
Move her up.
She's certainly not, she's doing a good job for us, yes.
Okay, well, what am I going to propose? I think it would require first some just discussion of general interest and then as we go through the budgeting process in April and May, you know, wrestle with your, you know, concerns regarding your department and, and whether this could be fit into that and, and help you with, with what you need. And I think it could. And here's, here's the background, and it comes out of the Vancouver trip I went on. It was an amazing trip. There were people from all over, staff and elected officials from all over metropolitan Portland. One of the women I met on that trip, her name's Paige Gogazian. I don't know if you know her. She's in the staff, it's planning, she's part of the planning staff of the city of Hillsborough. And she's actually a trained urban designer. And, and when, you know, we had this reunion about three weeks ago downtown, you know, a lot of the folks who went on that trip were coming back and, and relaying since September how they've taken what they learned on the Vancouver trip and, and, you know, are actually applying these concepts of mixed-use, you know, development and ordinance changes and everything that was discussed on the trip. was discussed on the trip. And she brought with her actual urban design drawings for what she is, you know, using her drawing and computer graphic skills to actually help the city vision what Hillsborough wants to look like. And what she presented was really, it was really good stuff. And I was thinking, as I was sitting in this meeting, you know, this is neat, but, you know, I got to say that Hillsborough ain't got what we got. I mean, Hillsborough's, you know, flatland farm community out there with, I mean, they've got a good, you know, industrial tax base, and that's maybe something they got that we ain't got.
Must have had an urban designer.
They also have a solar, they just started a solar firm and a wind farm, and, you know.
But anyway, if we go to last year's goals and objectives, there was, you know, we had some things that we couldn't, we were interested in, but we couldn't fund. And we've mentioned, for example, riverfront master planning, north end master planning, et cetera. And I, you know, it's been, I've always talked about this, I just think, given Oregon City's special place, I mean, our natural base with the rivers, the natural base with our three basalt shelves and the hydrology, our waterfall, it's always been my belief that we have not yet set in motion a process to allow us to create a built environment that, to which I think we should be aspiring, given this special, natural place that we're in. And if, and part of what I've seen happen over the past year, and Dan mentioned this in one of our work sessions, early on in my commission tenure, when we were talking about stuff, I mean, it might have been in one of our goal-setting sessions, that, you know, the architecture and design would follow the economic development. And that's part of my interest in getting an economic development manager going, is to help, you know, start generating this economic development that could drive this, you know, nice built environment and fund it. And I'm really pleased that we've got that process in place. So to me, kind of personally, what I feel is the next step in all of this is to get the capacity to help us vision that really nice built environment. And my specific proposal is, is to explore having the new hire in the community development department be someone with urban design training, like Paige. And I would love to invite her here to, you know, talk about how they do that in Hillsborough and what her role is, because I'm sure that's not all she does. I mean, like, even someone with urban design training, I'm sure does, you know, planning applications and proposals and other stuff as well, as part of the typical functioning of a planning department. But to be able to have that, I mean, urban design is a skill set. I mean, it's something that I think can inform everything that planning does, to make it beautiful, to make it, you know, an amenity for the city. And I think that adds, would add value to the city and make us a more attractive place for people to come. I mean, Larry was mentioning yesterday, this, you know, the discussion of a corporation wanted to come to Oregon City, and it needs, you know, good amenities. And I think good design is an amenity, and I think it adds value. And we've got so many things on, everything we've been discussing in the past couple of days, be it, you know, the uncertainties with Blue Heron, all our facility planning that we're doing, you know, the uncertainties as they exist on the north end. As we move forward, I think it would just be such a good investment and provide such good returns to have someone with those skill sets to inform our decision-making as we move forward on all of these fronts. And I, you know, I think, even in a down economy, I mean, even if you have a slower supply of, you know, building permits and land use application, that's a time where you can, you know, take a breather and do these kind of conceptual planning projects and, you know, help. The CIC wanted, you know, raised the issue of doing a visioning process. You know, to me, part of a visioning process would be design charts. I mean, vision your city, what it's going to look like, have someone with the skill sets in-house to actually assist you, you know, in putting down on paper that kind of visioning. So that's what I would like to propose, is that, you know, in building that capacity in the community development department, that making that hire, that the hire should be an urban designer.
We can certainly look at it, and I appreciate that speciality. It is important. And, you know, I'm going on nine years here, and the one thing we do have to be careful of is, like you said, is that they do, you know, most likely if we look at this, they're going to have to have some other skill set to support that, because if we get going again, I don't have enough people, in terms of, when we get going again, I will not have enough people. So that's, or, you know, we address that at a later date, and maybe we start to build up that community development department to support the community, and more of a long-range department in a short, in a current planning, you know. Those are certainly options. It's just, it's a place Oregon City's never been.
Yeah. May I just ask if this is a priority for the commission to explore in the future? Okay?
I thought I'd talk to Sarah Jo, see if she can just-
I know, we want Sarah Jo.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out, when you get going again, when we get going again, we'll have some increased revenues, maybe we can actually support that individual.
And support the ones we currently have, yeah. You know, that is one important thing to remember, though. In community, planning is different than building in that we can only charge fees based on what we spend for that project. It's not like building where extra funds can be put aside.
And I was going to say that, that we need to remember-
Long-range planning needs to come from general fund.
That the height of the building, we were still subsidizing community development. So we need to remember.
One of the things that you may want to factor in this, because I, you know, I understand all of these desires, but, you know, last night I kind of reviewed with you some of the challenges that is facing the future for government, and particularly Oregon is maybe leading the wave on that, because financially, you're not going to see cities as strong as they once were unless the system is fixed. So as you begin to talk to legislators, I think one of the issues that keeps getting pushed back that they really need to look at is really fixing the governmental finance system in the state, because it is broken, and you're not going to get to the part where we all, what I'm hearing, everybody wants to go unless that really begins to get addressed. And they're not talking about that because they're not getting forced enough from the local level that there are some real challenges in the future, what we're faced with.
Okay, got that one. We need, we have some, quite a few other topics to deal with.
Madam Mayor, before we move off it, I just wanted to sound out the commission on whether they might be interested during a work session to invite Paige over.
We have that, be part of that exploration when he brings that back, and that can be a process that, because it's now on our-
Use mic, use mic, here.
Part of the problem in the past in planning has been, it's not so much that there's a lack of urban design knowledge in the staff, it's that a lot of the staff spend time doing administrative things. So I think the first thing to do is get that part fixed. I mean, we have people, Tony has people on staff that are pretty qualified to do some of that urban design. So I think it's just a matter of fact that they've been so bogged down with the admin part of it.
I'd like to check the water here. We have an hour set aside for lunch. I'm wondering if I can suggest that we do a working lunch. Is it okay to cut that to 15 minutes of break, so you can eat, or whatever you want to do? And then, you know, I don't care if you eat around the table, that's fine. We want the web streamers to see that. And so that, and I think now is probably a good break, five, so why don't we take a break now, come back together at 12:15, and then we'll do the working lunch or just start the conversation?
Mayor, the lunch is actually available.
Okay. Feel free to grab your second Coke and your third cookie, whatever, during the discussion. But if you would go to the discussion item page, which is page two, we've got a long list of things that are issues in the city, but we don't need to discuss all of them if they're not of high concern. So Larry and I have page two, it says discussion items at the top. We're kind of going down that list and quickly over things that we don't want to spend much time on, but if we need to, we do. So the, as we look at the future, 5C, business license, not that we won't touch briefly on the others, but that one I see as something we probably want to address. Correct? Okay, tell me if I'm wrong. Then, next, under community development, Park Place and Beaver Creek annexation, South End Concept Plan and Urban Rural Reserves, we have some issues.
What?
And then next, under Public Works, the capital improvements, plan review. And those would be the discussions we'll have at the top of the list, unless you have others. Got to flag others? So kind of take those, then we'll go back through all those, but we-
If there's another issue, not on the list.
Right, yeah. We don't want to omit anything. And then, you know, we're in, we need to finish that, I think, review because it, these are valuable things. And then we'll head into the goal, you know, putting them into-
8B.
Code compliance.
I'd like to spend a little time on it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's start then. So let's move into the business license priorities and spreadsheet that we've looked at a bunch of times. Do we have that in here?
Yes, it is. You've got same memos you've had before in there. Question is, where do you want to go with those? I think we've outlined it several times. You know, you've kind of, given you kind of what the breakdown of where those revenues come from, as well as some of the things we've talked about as priorities and things you funded. I think that ties also back in to those grant-funded issues of how we want to handle those issues as well. And those are some answers we need to know as we move into this budget, even though after today, we've got a lot of things to kind of play with in terms of what we can and do within the existing resources and what resources we may have to add to get it all done.
Okay, so we're, if you look at that spreadsheet, staff needs to have direction on that spending. And why do we want to use the business license tax to fund? Right now, as you see, it currently funds Main Street, and we're scheduled to spend another $50,000 next year, that's commitment. I think that's the year.
Roughly what you have is you have, the portion that goes into the business license on an annual basis is roughly $35,000. That's what we've been running in the past. Hopefully, we'll hit that again this year. And you have, I think, a $214,000, is it, beginning fund balance?
$215,000.
$215,000. So, and again, with the $50,000, we'll spend down that, but that, then if that goes away, it's fine. But anything that you're spending above and beyond the $35,000 is not sustainable over a long period of time, but you do have a little bit of buffer there to play with. So when you start thinking about priorities, you want to think about that $35,000 figure, unless it's a one-time.
Okay, yeah. July 1, as proposed, we expect to have $170,000.
Yeah. Let's go, we're overspending what we got.
Right. Okay, Jim?
When we started our initial discussions about the economic development manager position, we had talked about using the business license fund to fund that position. Are we in a position now where we don't have to look to the business license fund for that position, or do we still need to look to that for funding the economic development manager on a long-term basis?
I think you still need to look at it, particularly if you want to broaden the scope of those duties beyond the urban renewal district. Because that, again, urban renewal funds kind of fund that activity, but with economic development, we're looking broader, and some of the work we've been doing is kind of looking at some stuff around Beaver Creek. So we need to bring in some other funds to do that, and I think as long as we do that, we can probably build a pretty good case, and that's where business license would be one way of doing it. You could have a general fund. We're going to tap the general fund pretty hard, looks like, so.
If that's the case, I would like to posit that funding the economic development coordinator position is a priority for the business license fund.
Okay.
Because we need, we need to-
Having it come out of here rather than solely out of urban renewal.
Yep.
And what would be the purpose for that?
It gives you, it gives you the ability for your economic development to work on a broader area than just urban renewal.
Okay, well, that likely will use up the giant chunk. So what it doesn't use up, well, I guess the issues still on the table are funding of the trolley, which is partially done through the $30,000 tourism action plan grant we get from the county currently, but that has to be reapplied every year. The flower baskets program and concerts in the park.
And all of your grant-funded.
That, yes. So, and then the other request actually was from the National Heritage Area group who is looking for matching funds to work, to create a staff person to work on that. And Westlands pledged $10,000, and they may withdraw that if Oregon City doesn't step up, since they believe Oregon City stands to benefit much more greatly than they do from the formation of that. So that's another request that's in. Are there any other ongoing issues that, or projects that you'd like to put on the table for funding through this? Daphne?
I just wanted to follow up, and thank you for bringing up the National Heritage Area, because I was going to bring that up. I could certainly make a case for economic development with the creation of that. Excuse me for talking again with my mouth full. $10,000, and is, how many year commitment was that? Wasn't that, it was a little bit more than one year, wasn't it?
We just gave one. Actually, we have $5,000 left over from the original commitment that we had given for some of the work, like from the landscape architecture class at the University of Oregon. Pardon me for talking with my mouth full. So likely we'd only need another $5,000 from this.
I would propose that we take it, that was a one-time shot from this fund.
Which one are we talking about? Still business?
It's a business license, yeah. No, it's putting things on the table that you want to have for, funded from this. Is there any objection to going that, having that come from this fund? It'll be in the next fiscal year sometime?
I think we have a lot of businesses in Oregon City that are paying into a business license fund. I don't know how you identify them. I know it's an education issue, because I think for the first two or three years that I was in Oregon City, in fact, I had my own business and didn't even know about it.
One of the city commissioners around the table even had that, seemed like.
Well, and so, I mean, so this, and I don't know how we deal with it, but I think there is tremendous potential for revenue, more revenue in that fund. We just don't know where to look.
Remember, we had a study on that, too, when our intern was here.
Yeah, we continue to look at that and figure out ways we might be able to get better. That's one reason why I had bumped that up to $45,000, because we were looking at maybe doing some stuff through code enforcement that would help that collection, but that was going to be tied to some staffing that was tied to the marking implementation. So we ended up there, so. But yeah, more effort could generate more dollars. Last time we looked at it, now it's been probably five years, I think our estimate then was we were losing about $95,000 a year, but what it would have taken to, in fact, we tried to get Portland do that for us, because they doing it for a number of other cities, but they were so busy at the time, they said they couldn't take anybody else on, so we couldn't find somebody else to pick up that.
I'm going to pose a question, because my recollection is that the business license requirements of people, of businesses that, businesses in Oregon City or do business in Oregon City. That last one seems a bit broad. I mean, I get a person coming from Gladstone that's going to replace, come over, drive here and replace my windshield for my car. But he's doing business in Oregon City. I think there's, I think some of them, some of those things don't logically fit, and I don't know whether you narrow that or not, but from a practical standpoint, lots of people come into Oregon City to conduct business, but it may not be logical to charge all of them a business license. The one I'm citing is-
It's a difficult call. But, you know, for instance, some of the people that, as city, that we contract with, we indicate they need to get a business license. We haven't been 100% on that, but we are, you know, when that kind of dawned on us, you know, you got to have this. So, but yeah, you do have a number of folks, and it's always going to be tough in a smaller area. And it's always going to be tough in a smaller area like this. It's in, close to a metropolitan area. We get so many businesses coming from everywhere, doing all kinds of work to know who they are. You know, again, if it's right in our face, we have to say, you have to pay a business license. But we, we haven't been overly energetic in terms of trying to, you know, put a game on the.
Gun hole, but I think that's supply to the people that actually have operating businesses in Oregon City.
Yeah, if it's really out there and very obvious that they're operating, we'll, and of course, one of us noticed that. We'll ask them, do you have business license or not they need to get it? Because it's really a fairly inexpensive cost for, for most of them. But again, we don't have the staff resource to try to chase down all of that.
Okay, so I guess that's the question then, the juxtaposing, is, is that a priority for the commission to go after the skull flaws that they'll pay business license taxes? Because that will take resources.
I was going to say, if it's not a, if it's an unfunded mandate, like asking somebody to do something we don't have the resources to do it, code enforcement doesn't, so.
One of the other things.
Are you asking for more money for resources?
If it's a commission priority, then obviously, we find money to do it.
There's some mechanisms I think we can use that may not be that expensive. One of them is to have the Chamber in some way communicate with all its members the need that they should have business licenses. I mean, I think it's, at least it's in part an educational issue. And I don't know that we, you know, I think there are resources we can tap into that really have minimal cost to us.
Yeah, and I've had that conversation with the Chamber. I think we probably want to push that a little bit more, but I think they'll do that. There's some stuff we're doing in-house, looking at some computer program just to make sure that we're on top of even the reaplications and those sorts of things that we can get a little better. So, that will creep up a little bit, but.
Okay, is there any desire then on the, behalf of the commission, to add any of the currently, of the grant-funded programs to refund the business licenses? Rocky?
I just wanted to make a comment about, I think that the business license fund is appropriate to be used for economic development. So, I, I see a connection there between the position that we're funding in this, in this fund. I guess, and I really support the large concept of the National Heritage Area as well. But I'm just one individual. And I'm, I'm just curious as to what the general consensus might be of people paying business license fees to this city specifically, and then having that business license fee be used in a broader, a broader focus than our city. Because this, this National Heritage Area is beyond our city boundaries. And so, if we're paying, if, if these individual businesses are paying a business license for this city, I would question whether or not it's appropriate for us to use this fund to promote something that's broader than that. So, that would be my question that I'd have kind of concern with. I, I mean, I think, yes, the, this National Heritage Area idea is important. And yes, it does, it is going to spur economic development. But it's broader than economic development just for the city. And so, I don't know if a fund like this so specific is really a, a good link.
Thank you. You have, you have the permission to do that. Definitely, the fund was created, and particularly this portion for economic development or business license here was for economic development. And I think as long as you, you define tourism as being a piece of that, I think you do have flexibility. Somebody may question, but I think you can build a strong argument that you can use it like that.
I certainly understand what you're saying, Rocky. And I, no bone to pick. I don't fund it here, fund it there. I don't, it doesn't matter to me. But my, my only point is on economic development, tourism for Oregon City, that all the other cities are correspond, they are also paying too. Now, whether, so we're not just alone paying for development in other things. They're paying their share too.
The problem was that Wes Lynn committed to $10,000 after being told we would, and we hadn't even, even talked about it yet. So, I think that's an unfair.
No, they weren't told that we would.
Well, it was pretty expected that Oregon City would contribute. Wes Lynn's not going to throw over $10,000 without having some idea that Oregon City's going to help too.
Well, for me, the issue is, is do we want to do it or not, whether?
I, I don't feel comfortable with it coming from this, this place, this one.
No problem.
Anything else?
I, I, I would have, I would wonder where, what might be another source for our contribution to the.
The question I'm being asked right now.
Right.
I mean, I, I, that's not really, I didn't commit $10,000 to that group. So, I mean, we can talk about it, but right now, we're saying, does it come out of this fund? I say, I don't think it does. If we want to find out later now, when we want to, I have no idea where it would come from. But I just don't think this is the appropriate place for it to come.
I don't think, I don't, we have clear direction on that one. Okay, and that's still murky. We'll discuss then, you know, if it can come from another source, if that's the issues. Do we, do we have an issue with funding it or with where the funds, which fund the funds come from? Rocky said that.
I don't really have a problem with funding it. I, I just.
You want the funding to be appropriate?
Yeah, and I can't really answer the question of where, where do I think it should come from.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, but.
Well, we'll leave it to staff to make us a recommendation on if you're not, if you'd like to fund it, we just find out where and make appropriate match. Okay, we'll do that. Yes, Daphne, I see him. Money tree, that's right.
So, if, an economic development position will take up the bulk of this fund. So, is that then, so am I making also the assumption right now then that the trolley, flower baskets, and concerts in the park will not be coming?
I just asked, I just asked, that's what you want to do.
Here's kind of where you're at for the next, I think. We are already overspending what we're bringing in because what we're going to. I would suspect that they may want to take that. More stable funding source. We will begin to add probably, I'd say, at least $35,000 for the economic development, which will eat into that reserve. That will be ongoing, that should be sustainable once the $50,000 goes away. It will bring down your reserve. So, then the question is, is there anything else you want to squeeze in there? Because it's going to start getting a little tighter, even though you can do that. Again, you got about $200,000 in there for the, your beginning fund balance. So, you know, you've, we're overspending it right now, but we got a little leeway. We can go that, go that on. $15,000 a year is what we're overspending it right now by with commitments. But if you had 35, so you're looking at roughly 50.
Remembering that we have not identified a funding source for, you know, end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center implementation, or Carnegie Center implementation, or money for Urmiting Your House if needed, and.
Planning staff.
The staffing we've talked about this morning is all part of that, so.
So, in my mind, it kind of needs to remain.
I'm going to, I'll, I'll take that budget and throw these things into it best I can. You may want to move it around. Again, I'll have to make some assumptions in terms of A V growth and this, that, and the other. And then, we can talk about it and see what you want to do. But, you know, if we're going to put this stuff in the budget, we're going to, for next year, we're going to have to make some decisions here pretty quick. So, I'll try to get this turned around to you back probably in February, if you can look at that and see if that's where you want to go. And, or, I mean, the other thing is, you can start talking about how we generate the additional resources to cover everything we've talked about this morning.
Okay, so we'll look at new funding scenarios.
Just, I wanted to clarify with the staff position for the Heritage Area. I, I, I wasn't implying that I was okay with just finding the $10,000 somewhere else. I, I was assuming that that would come back to us for a discussion, or we're going to have.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's not just going to be, we're going to find the $10,000 somewhere, and we're not going nowhere.
You got to, you got to commit to that.
Because that comes back to me with, you know, all these sites that we're talking about within our city, the Interpretive Center, the Urmiting Your House.
Have these.
You know, maybe that $10,000 is better used in, with those, but.
Those are, first off, to make. So, right now, I hear no interest in funding any of the grant proposals in the business license tax. Okay, let's move on to the.
Let me tell you one of the grant proposals, too. And I haven't had a chance to have this conversation, but I did run across this young man at a Christmas party here. And this is, have done this in previous cities. And Mr. Archer and I'll have a meeting. But this person's in the, the music business in terms of arranging groups and what have you. We'll have a conversation. That may be something you want to try to privatize for your concert series, both downtown and here. And you may want to subsidize it to some level if you can figure out what that amount is, at least for a time being. But if that's something that you could turn over to someone, they could arrange the, the sponsorships and do all the organization in terms of bringing those in, and that end up being a way they made money off that. If we can find somebody who'd be willing to do that, that may be a way to continue that and wean off of a, a grant-funded type operation. But, and it also may take a burden off staff if we can find somebody else to do it. Now, whether this person is interested, I don't know, but sure, maybe somebody out there, maybe.
Sure, that was a good, a good thing. Okay, let's move on, Ben, to, the next one would be under Community Services Code Compliance. Scott, it's you.
Actually, just put my, my boss was going to let me go home a little bit earlier today because I've got another commitment. So, I just put my computer away, and I was about to walk out the door. I don't think we're going to get to that one yet.
I can, I can do a quick overview on this, I think. This has been a discussion we've brought up several times. I know there's, there's issues out there. Our approach to code compliance right now has been on a complaint basis unless it just, we've run right across it. And that, you know, we do a pretty good job on doing those, as you've seen, I think, in Scott's information he gave you with the workload as it continues to increase. And particularly, the paperwork associated with these days is our response time is getting longer and longer. Definitely, just to stay on the basis we're at today, it is begging for some additional assistance in there. The question really becomes is, do we want to begin to look at the various type of complaints we get in? And in some of those areas, take a more proactive approach. I think that also ties in to the questions of not necessarily urban design, but the curb appeal of the city, and definitely the relationship that you have with a lot of the neighborhoods. One of the biggest frustrations I think you get is the, the length of time that it takes us to resolve some of these issues. And there's extensive due process. I think, too, if we're going to take a more proactive approach, I think you need to have another conversation with a judge as well in terms of what your expectations are in terms of perhaps a little bit more of aggressive approach in terms of resolving some of these questions in a more timely manner. So, it's a big issue. And definitely, I will tell you that any proactive approach to code enforcement is contentious because there are both sides of the coin. Most time, you're going to hear from the person who is getting the citation. But we hear from the folks who are asking, why is it taking so long? So.
Doug, did you have some things on the table?
I have some code compliance issues, but it's not the reason I'm on this, on this point. It really perhaps comes to the next city manager coming in. But, and I realize that it had to do with manpower that was available to you and so forth. But we've had code, code compliance move from, I don't know where it was originally, to Public Works, to now a person that's charged Parks and Recreation. To me, it seems like an inconsistent assignment within the departments. And maybe the reasons that it isn't under police, that's something I'd like the next city manager to resolve. But I'm coming specifically to Scott Archer's position. We're, we've got these facilities coming up that are required discussions. It's probably going to require us going after some grant funds or something of that to get some of these things moving. These are going to be under Scott's, I would assume, responsibility. Concerts in the park, I don't think enough attention has been given to securing funds from businesses. Generally, somebody shows up to, to one of the Wednesday, "Good morning, Oregon City." Says, "We'd like to, we'd like you to donate." But there's no mechanism, I don't see that many, the Chamber actually being, becoming active and trying to see those kinds of funds coming forward for businesses to come forward and have the businesses be able then to come to the concerts in part as a sponsor and tell us a little bit about their business in the process. So, there's a, there's a benefit to that. And I don't know, we have to have the conversation now why it's where it is. But I don't know that putting code enforcement and downtown parking under Parks and Recreation Director makes much sense.
Let me, let me give you a couple of responses to both of those. In regards to the sponsorships first, that's kind of easy. Actually, our staff has been pretty aggressive on that issue. And that's one reason why we've been able to maintain it because those costs continue to go up and, and the numbers fluctuate particularly with the down economy. What's probably more problematic, and this comes down to a resource question, is you really don't have a recreation staff. So, the people who do this are people who have bigger jobs that are handling, so they have to kind of do that on the side. And I think they've done a pretty outstanding job, given the fact that that's not their focus. I mean, really, you're taking your management team, and that's who does all these things. So, again, if we had that resource, I think we might do a better job. It's not our shtick for the most part. I mean, that's one reason why if we could find somebody who would take this under as a profit center for them, it would probably be a, a better operation. But be that what it may, you know, we catch as catch can there. In regards to code enforcement, there's no magic here. I mean, it could be under police as well. I think the thing that you have to watch out for that doesn't get forgotten in a police department, as long as it stays code enforcement and you're dealing with code enforcement personnel versus police officers doing it, it can, it can work, and that management structure can, can work. You know, if you begin to look at that, you know, if it, if it becomes a function of a, and I've worked it under police department before. In fact, one of the best ones I ever had was under a, I think it was a sergeant in the police department. But we had a overstaffed police department at the time, which was good to be able to assign someone to it. You know, that's something new manager may want to look at and do it. We've put it into not Parks and Recreation, we've put it into community services, which it also fits there as well because code compliance is not just an enforcement tool. It is a question of community services and that livability issue. So, no magic, really, it's a question of, of span of control and what folks were dealing with. And, you know, we're getting to the point, particularly since Chief Conrad's been in, as he gets more comfortable in that position, gets things organized as he needs them, you know, it'd be another task. You know, if you want to, new manager could, could look at putting in that police. It's definitely housed down there, so it'd probably work just as well, so.
I guess I could feel compelled to say right here at this point, as we talk about funding and financing and all these different issues, is that Oregon City has some uniquenesses. I mean, not, not the, I mean, not every city has a cemetery to run. Not every city has a swimming pool to run. Not every city has two museums to run. And we have one other unusual thing, I forgot what it is. Had it my. Yeah, yeah. And the trolleys, et cetera, often, yeah, right. So, we do have some unusual things that have become part of our basic services that we're, you know, stewards of. And that, I think that unbalances us slightly because we, we have to strip off funds to make sure that those are stable services because we, both we have them and the citizens demand them, so, anyway.
Let me, let me mention one, just, this is a little bit of a heads up that you might want to think about. I think Main Street is going to come to you in something we need to talk about in, probably in the near term, and talk about increasing the hours of the elevator. And it's definitely something that needs to be associated with our downtown parking because if you're going to spill folks over onto the bluff, is that needs to be done. I suspect what I've heard in some of those initial discussions, you're probably going to have some neighborhood resistance to that. Some of that, I think, may go away. I think some of it's because there's some concern that that area is a little unsafe in the evening. And of course, one of the areas that's unsafe probably is because you don't have much traffic going through there. So, if you can create traffic, I think some of that concern may go away. But that'll be an interesting debate. And that's where this issue goes beyond the neighborhood. And so, you're going to have to balance city needs and neighborhood needs probably in that discussion. I don't know how widespread that is, but I've heard that already, so you probably.
It seems to me that the, that the appropriate place for the elevator hours is where it was generated and that's under the parking study implementation, which we haven't launched. Okay, Dancy?
I'm sorry, Larry, did you say that there's some controversy about extending the elevator hours?
That's, with that, as that discussion rose, I've heard.
I've already gotten a phone call on it.
What was the concern?
Sort of people, people, people increasing traffic around some of the folks who live in houses just off the elevator, for example, and how that increasing.
Public park.
Yeah, later night traffic.
It is a public park, you know. But, so, just, but there's also, I think I agree with Larry that sometimes the more, more people, it's safer, too.
I'm, I'm just telling you, I've gotten phone calls on it.
So, because we've also had concerns about people not feeling safe, they feel like they would feel safer even leaving downtown if they could use the elevator. So, sort of, and the one other thing, one of my staff persons suggested this. And, um, the one other thing, one of my staff persons suggested this and because we have had so much vandalism, mostly graffiti, in that area, in the park and in the elevator and all that, and on the grand staircase, um, that one of our, was suggesting that came to me was hiring a security service that would just, because, you know, you guys can, don't, you know, they're not a security service, they're police. So, that was just another idea that I thought I'd bring up, um, maybe a security service that patrols another, you know, they do kind of come from time to time.
Let me, let me give you a couple of thoughts on, on a couple of different ways to do that. First of all, with extending the elevator hours and maintaining that budget, and this is really where you want to go with that. One is you could extend the contract, that's gonna add cost to it. Or you may want to look at adding a camera in there and then sometime in the day hours, not having the operator and having the operator come on later in the afternoon and work through the evening hours where you might have run across more vandalism and maintain the budget as it is today, not something you'd have to negotiate in the contract. And definitely that raises some other issues, but that may be a way to do it and maintain the budget as it is without increasing, uh, the budget. That's just a thought. In regards to the patrol, and this is something that some police departments do, as a, you can go to a security service or what you could do is go to something like a cadet program in which you put them into the downtown corner and all those things. Again, they're not sworn officers, you give them a radio, if they see something going on, they call the police officer, police officer responds to that. Uh, and that's associated to the, to the police department. Again, if we're, I don't know, we have the resources and I haven't talked to Chief Conrad about that, see what his thoughts are, he may want to throw something at me right now, but that's, that's okay.
One of the interim steps could possibly be that, um, that we, I mean, I know the downtown's very interested, as he told us yesterday, um, in special events. And that's, that's always been a conflict is when there's a special event, the elevators close. So, maybe the, the first phase could be just making sure that special events have adequate back and forth. And then, you know, we get used to that and then maybe we can look at the next phases.
Yeah.
Yeah, or just weekends.
With, with the parking implementation, you're probably gonna need to at least bump it up to maybe seven o'clock.
Well, so I guess, um, do we want to study the elevators separately from parking implementation or do we want that all mixed together? I mean, it's kind of separate in a way. I don't know.
It carries on two things. I mean, for downtown, they see it as a way for folks, especially that residential component that's close to downtown, to utilize downtown more in the evenings and especially whether it will or not, who knows, but until you have that, that connection, it's a lot harder for folks just to walk in downtown. A lot of folks may use the staircase going down, but after a full mill and some miles, it's kind of hard to walk back up that elevator unless we put a bucket up at the top.
We have an elevator. And we have an elevator.
We do, yeah.
It's such a fabulous pedestrian amenity. To not maximize its use seems...
Exactly. And it seems to me that we have two support groups for it. So, we have Main Street that's supportive of both the elevator and extended hours, and then we also have the, um, parking users that, uh, the downtown that also advocacy. Yeah. Doug?
I mean, Larry said that, I wasn't sure what you were saying, actually, unless I can infer something.
Tony says I skip words. Actually, I just take out the swear words and so when I'm talking...
But you put it there out of word to substitute for. Anyway.
I'm not that fast.
You're about the fastest speaking Texan I've ever met. The extension, you're talking about having people there running it during later hours and not in the daytime hours. You're talking about having an automatic service, I presume?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a good idea to consider. I, I think late in the evening, there might be issues because of maybe the clientele that you're more likely to get in the evening than...
Oh, yeah. That's a security issue.
That's a security issue, but there's so much daytime use of the elevator, probably isn't that much of an issue, and I think it's worth exploring.
A way to do it, again, I'm just trying to think of the budget implication, whatever thing we're talking about, that'd be a way to do it maybe within the budget without extending it any, but, you know, that's really a call, whether we want to do that or not. I know if I was one of those elevator operators late in the evening, that would be a little... But that may be a way to fix the case.
You know, that happens at coffee shops and anywhere. It's just, um, but the other thing that I wanted to mention, though, is that we shouldn't overlook the benefit that the elevator, um, drivers, I guess they're drivers.
Operators.
Operators.
The elevators.
They answer lots of questions for people coming into town, and a lot of people using that elevator don't necessarily live here because they're going to the courthouse. And they really are, in terms of...
They pass out brochures.
Giving information and they're, they get, they've gotten good reviews.
A visitor's...
People like, yeah. So, we don't want to forget that.
That's right. Rocky?
And I would assume that the hope would be with, um, a better, um, parking plan, that parking generates more money that would go into helping extra hours in the elevator. I mean, the, the, it is a street, um, and so the definite connections, I think, between... So, I mean, if, if parking expanded and into meters up here on the hill and to whatever, you know, some of that, I would think would contribute to hours to the elevator.
It could be. It's never been used in the past for the elevator, but it's a possibility.
It makes a huge, I, I think that's a huge connection.
Okay, Mr. Tom, oh, Jim?
Just had two comments. First, when we talked at Urban Real Retreat last night about downtown, we mentioned an economic improvement district?
Yeah, D.
But I don't think we mentioned an LID. And I'm just, wanted to throw out some, in the discussions I've had with some folks about the elevator, that concept of an LID as a possible funding mechanism for extending the hours has come up. So, I just want to put that out on the table.
I think we asked for the parameter to be funding mechanisms and...
Usually, LID is for a capital improvement. I'm not familiar with an operating LID.
It's, it's come up.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, I, I think that, again, and I, and I think Ms. Crusher is right, an LID is normally associated, it's an assessment for a capital improvement. Usually, something like an EID or a BID, and that, and I've had those conversations with Laurie, then it's a question of creating, what is that district and what do you want to fund? And some of the things we've talked about is additional cleaning, uh, maybe some security issues, marketing issues, some of the downtown...
Flower baskets.
Flower baskets, things of that nature, but the management of downtown, but you could add operation hours in that for the, for the elevator as well, because that does tie to downtown.
With an LID?
Uh, no, with a BID.
With a BID.
Not LID.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. But no, isn't that, we're getting into acronym soup here. Is a BID different from an EID?
Not really. One is economic improvement district, another is business improvement district. And there's a couple of different ways it's normally done. Usually, what you do is you create a boundary and then you assess those folks within that boundaries. It's a, it's a tax.
We'd agree to talk about that as, as funding in a package, so, as you called from last night.
My second, my second comment goes into that funding mix then. If there's a BID or an EID that could do operations and we're considering extending the elevators, uh, operations hours, extending them. And segue from Alice's point about the, the operators and the service they render us as a city and being, you know, tour guides in some senses. You know, the operations used to be a city function. It's been privatized. I talked to Sandy and those folks, because I live right up there and use the elevator a lot, and they lost all their benefits when that happened. And if we do value them last, as much, that much, I would, I would want it on, you know, the, the big picture calculation of funding through a BID or otherwise, um, you know, perhaps restoring them as city employees and restoring their benefits.
Other issue for the mix?
Commissioner Smith pointed out that he's keeping, he's keeping a tally and he's figuring out how many, how many gummy worms that our city manager's gonna have to eat.
No, yeah, I normally don't do it in the second year because we all know. The first year is you can...
We don't all know all of them, I don't think.
And I'm disappointed.
Yeah, I know you're, yeah, it's because Larry eats them all, he does it purposely. I just didn't want to be responsible for feeding the city manager. Okay, let's move into community development because there's a chunk of things here. We've got the two annexation, or the, the concept planned areas, the third one that's we have yet to do, and then we have a new, um, little piece to talk about in the urban real reserves. Tony, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Concerning Park Place and Beaver Creek Annexation, I've also trying to tie in the concept plans. The Park Place Concept Plan has been approved and adopted. The Beaver Creek Concept Plan has been remanded back to the city. But just wanted to show some of the industrial and commercial and retail lands that were planned in Beaver Creek and in Park Place. And then I also brought up some, some maps of some of our employment areas that exist in the city that are either, for example, up on Division Street, you have mixed-use employment where the hospital is, several properties that are underdeveloped in that area, properties along Warner Milne, across from the Red Soils Campus, which is owned for mixed-use corridor one, several vacant properties in that area. And then, um, had also put in there the properties along Beaver Creek Road adjacent to Clackamas Community College and south of Clackamas Community College in between Beaver Creek and Highway 213. That is, uh, the majority of our, what's left of our campus industrial zoning designations. So, just trying to, when we talk about these, these areas where we did these concept plans and annexations, you know, these are a lot of the areas where we were identifying, especially in Beaver Creek, some of our employment and opportunities for the next 20 years. That being said, you know, you're well aware, you've seen the annexations come through. We had one annexation approved out in Beaver Creek Road, pretty much about 120 acres, including the Hall Airport. The golf course annexation to the south of it was voted down, and then we had two annexation requests up in Park Place that was also voted down. You will be seeing, um, most likely, an application for a, a new proposal for annexation up in the Park Place area in between Livsey Road and Holcomb in the Park Place Concept Planning area. Historically, what we've done, we've, Park Place and Beaver Creek are the first two concept plans that we've done in the city. Our land use designations, our comprehensive plan designations have been in place for quite a while in Oregon City, and what we've historically done is when we annex a property, we automatically give it a zoning designation. And so, for example, we have low-density residential comp plan and we have three zoning designations with that R-10, R-8, and R-6, and it would come in at the least dense at R-10, and if the applicant wanted to come in at a later date and request a zone change, they could. What we've run into is when we did the concept plans, not to get too technical, we have what's called the transportation planning rule. And when you're gonna do a zoning change or comp plan amendment, you need to show that, that use will not cause intersections to operate below the level of service standard, whether that be the cities or the states for the state highway systems that we have at day one, as well as 20 years out. And it's the 20-year out that starts to cause significant problems. Trying to accommodate and account for all the background growth that's gonna happen over the 20 years, as well as all the development in the city, and then to try and come up with a fix for the state highway system is where we're really running into the issue is extremely difficult.
Just to interject, I believe that there's already been movement inside League of Oregon Cities to overturn the transportation planning rule because cities are finding it so onerous to be able to plan with that far ahead.
And, and I, and I know, you, when it comes to the commission, especially on appeals or controversial issues, transportation is one of the biggest issues. And one thing you constantly hear is make the developer pay for what they're doing. And that's, that is, that's a legitimate point to have, but you've also got to remember, you're at the edge of the metro region. Upwards of 40-plus percent of the trips on 213 in the morning and evening trips do not start or stop in Oregon City. But yet you are, you know, we are, including these improvements in our system development charges, we're asking developers to pay probably an unproportional share to, to fix those, to build capacity that will not ever be used or benefited of businesses and residents directly of Oregon City. So, there's multiple issues here, and when we were talking about the other day of becoming a regional player, becoming, improving our, our stature in the region, one of those is probably needing to reach out to, to Metro and the state and the Clackamas County to figure out, how are we gonna handle 213, 205? We have two, you know, we have the 205 on 99E, we have 99E going through our downtown. Huge state facilities, which we need multiple cooperation because these are important regional transportation corridors, but to expect the city to stop developing their regional center or invest millions and millions of dollars for fixes that aren't necessarily generated by the residents of Oregon City becomes an equity issue, and we've never gotten past that yet. And why I bring that up is we've spent the better part of four years on these two concept plan areas and over probably half a million dollars between city funds and grants, and we are gonna have difficulty getting these properties annexed in. And so, what we are proposing is that when we're gonna start bringing some of these proposals forward for annexations in these concept plan areas is that we will not be applying the zoning. We will be annexing the property and it will be maintaining that county designation, whatever their zoning designation is, and then send that to the voters. If it does get approved, then the property owner can come back in and do all of the technical work that's gonna be necessary, and that is going to be a huge investment for them not only show compliance with stormwater sanitary, but the transportation component of showing the 20-year capacity is being met is a very large investment. And they can come in after they, they know they're in the city, instead of putting that money up prior to a vote that you don't know you're gonna succeed or not at. So, that will be a change that we are proposing to do, and it may take some, uh, we believe we can do it with findings being presented, but we would probably like to come back and clean up the code a little bit and spell out that process a little bit more clear than what it currently exists. But just wanted to make you aware that we're bringing something forward to you that's a little different than we've historically done and the reason why, so it's not a surprise when you do see that.
Questions? Okay, next. South End?
There you go. There is a little aside, too, that you may want to factor in, we don't need to discuss it today, but you need to be aware of it. With transportation STCs, we're at the point now with those STCs that the cost of locating some of these other businesses in here, that is beginning to be an issue. And so, then the question is, is there some, some mitigation that could be done? And the question is if our standards require that cost, type of cost for an STC, uh, if you decide not to charge that full amount, the question is how do you make that up? And that gets in looking at other revenues into a street fund. And that's actually smaller developments outside of the big ones we've talked about. That's another, where, other places in Oregon City, we've had a couple of potential developments indicate they'd like to come to Oregon City, but they can't because of the transportation STCs are too high.
The unfinished South End Concept Plan. The unstarted.
We have not started, no. And we did not apply for the construction excise tax monies. I think that application was due November, December-ish.
We have money set aside.
We do, we do. So, we could apply for it next, in 11 months from now, 10 months from now, we could start that process in July.
You just didn't activate.
Right, right, yes. So, we do have that money available. If it's a priority, you know, this summer, we would start...
And how much money is available?
Around $200,000.
And the cost of a concept plan is?
What kind of concept plan do we want to do out there? Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm guessing anywhere between $300,000, $450,000, depending on if we're just gonna say we're making it residential, that's, that's gonna be pretty simple, you know, there's gonna be a lot of detail work. But if we're looking at, you know, is this really, is this a part of the city that needs additional land uses out there to try and not only accommodate the new population that we're gonna be putting in this area in terms of services of smaller retail, commercial, but also, um, there is, um, there are impacts to our local transportation system because there are no services there. You need to drive through, um, from South End over to 213 or over to Beaver Creek to, to purchase anything or leave the city down to South End, 99 years ago, south. You know, when you're talking sustainability, when you're talking trips on your street, when you're talking impacts on other neighborhoods, there's an equity issue there that, you know, needs to be, needs to be discussed. And are we doing this by popular vote of those who live in the neighborhood? Are we doing it by popular vote of the city? Are we taking this as a, a policy that, from this, from the city commission that, you know, good urban planning includes multiple uses to support that neighborhood? And those are questions we're, we're grappling with. In 2004, we tried to put some commercial out there and that was removed and kind of, let's discuss it a little bit more later. So, and, you know, one of the first issues is, is this something we want to try and do in the next fiscal year, which we would start preparing for, and then the bigger issue is gonna be, um, how do we determine what our goals are for that area?
That's, that's the, directly speaks to the issue I was mentioning before in terms of improving the dialogue at your CIC as well as neighborhoods. Very Adam at the South End is not interested in commercial development. That has an impact on rest of the city.
Now are you sure about that? Because the majority of the people that talked to me, you know, that were so ridiculous, I mean, really, I was very, very heated during those first discussions about South End. Most of those people have come around and understand the sustainability piece about creating a neighborhood with local services.
That's not the discussion at CIC.
Oh, well, because I've heard way different terms.
When I attended the South End Neighborhood Association meeting, it was a full room. Apparently Christine was supposed to be there, and for one reason, I'm not saying anything bad or good, they were irritated that she didn't show up, and they were not at all happy with it. I mean, that, that issue came up.
Local services?
No.
Okay. Well, let's get back to the concept plan then, because I have a couple things about that.
May I make a comment, though? I mean, since we're on this topic.
We're just going to stay on it.
Part of it, part of it, part of it is that, what does it end up looking like? And if we talk about some of the design standards that Commissioner Nacida is talking about in terms of what, you know, he was seeing in Vancouver area and so forth, and we can come up with real good design standards that accompanies anything that comes out in the plan, you know, and give the kinds of demonstrations where in fact it has worked, it may be a bit of a different issue. And so, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to pull that off the plate, frankly.
I think there's a couple of issues for me. One is, do we lose, you know, if we lose the money, when does the money expire? And Metro fully expects us to do that, and I'm worried that that may spill over into some other Metro money, which I would hate to have.
They're good.
What's your question or answer?
Is it possible to take the money from South End and use it for something else?
They say.
They said they'd check into it.
Because I think that's one.
There was a concern about that, because there's a lawsuit being brought against them for how those funds are being expended. Right?
No, it's the new excise tax. Yeah, not the old one. I mean, the old money is in the old excise tax, which is directed directly to concept planning. The new one is the one being challenged by the home builders. But, so, we need to, obviously, we have to do it sometime. We have money, not that you have time, but you don't have the, you don't have the building business like you did before when you were doing two, which was a killer. Obviously, we'll hire a consultant to do it. It is a hugely intense, for those of you who haven't gone through it, I mean, it involved at least 200 people per concept plan over multiple.
We had 160 people show up at one.
At one meeting, and so they're very, very intensive, and, you know, when I see overlaying that on this, it gives, makes me, my heart start to palpitate rather rapidly. But those are, I mean, all of those issues are sort of in conflict a little bit, you know, do we have the money? Can we reprogram it is one. We need to do it sometime, if not now, when, and then I posit that it'll always be contentious. Any concept planning will be contentious when you, when we're doing community building. So sometime, we have to figure that out, so.
This has been brought, oh, call it, I presume this has been brought as.
On the home builders.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about Beaver Creek Concept Plan. In terms of employment land and so forth, you had people in the Caulfield neighborhood area who were saying, we don't want industrial cost Beaver Creek from us. And so, and even though, even though Mrs. Holden was interested in a residential workplace area, the pressure I feel was, you needed some kind of transitional zoning. And I think a lot of that concern got dealt with in that, in that area, in that period, but instead, you still have the hostility in terms of what other people thought should have occurred there and so forth. So I think if, in the South End Concept Plan, the major focus from the initial onset is residential, and then how do we build in the commercial piece into that? Because I presume it's going to be stuff that serves the neighborhood, whatever it is.
I guess how I would like to do, I mean, we need to make a decision on this, because I think planning staff needs to know, and I think the city needs to know as well, but for me, the first piece is to know what, about the funding. I mean, finding, you know, when we initially did this, I had to go and testify at the Metro Council, because at the time that we had to do these three, three plans, because none of them were done, we were going to have to cut money from our library and our police department, all kinds of basic services, to be able to fund the concept planning. And that's actually finding a half a million dollars now, in addition, is difficult. So for me, the piece I need before I even can really get my head around talking about it is whether the funding's available or reprogrammed, or what, what downside, what risks does Oregon City have by not doing it in the metro scheme of things? Because the, and the next thing after that is that any new properties coming into the urban growth boundary, not just in the city boundary, the concept planning has to be done ahead of that. So we've, we're, I don't know how you do that. That sounds like a very expensive process to me, and it's highly collaborative with the county, I guess.
Metro scheme of things changes. I mean, when I served on IMPAC, it was all industrial land, all industrial land, and now, you know, I mean, so the scheme changes.
No, I understand.
I think we've got to figure out what we want to do, and then see if it's going to work with Metro as opposed to us being that worried about anything else.
I think the funding, though, is.
No, no, that's the point. We can, we can kind of talk about what we feel might work out there in terms of some kind of community's support, but go back to Metro and see, this is where we're looking at in terms of the survey, this is what we're looking at, can we do it? I mean, there was a big argument in the Beaver Creek Concept Plan whether we were meeting Metro's industrial needs.
Right.
Ultimately, Metro said, yes, you are. And I think, I mean, I think we can work through that.
See, I'm not talking about that.
Logan said we didn't.
Yeah.
Well, no, I know that, but that was more considered Metro's.
No, yes, no, I, that I'm comfortable with, it's whether we do the planning or not now.
Which year?
If it's unplanned or in this calendar year.
I think we have to do the planning, and if.
In this calendar year?
Well, that's what, that depends on whether that money's available. I think the question, I think you've got to get the answer to the question before you make that decision.
That's what I was saying, yeah. That's totally what I was saying.
But if in fact they say, no, you've got to do it in a certain period of time, then we think, I think we'd better do it.
No, that's, that's where I am, too. That's, to me, is the basic. Okay, well, we'll revisit that. Okay, let's talk about, then, the urban rural reserves process.
Before we leave that, so you want us to push forward on moving that onto the plate?
No, we need to find out about the funding.
Do you want to know how long?
We need to know how long.
Is there a sunset on those, on the availability of those funds?
Didn't use the funds for anything else.
Yeah.
We just need to find that, and then.
Okay.
Okay, and then urban rural reserves. Thank you for doing the maps here, this is really helpful to know.
Yes.
And I think probably the area in question is the 3A, kind of above Holcomb.
Yeah, I went to, actually, I did go to the, to the Wilsonville one, simply because I wanted to testify, the Metro Council is having its meetings there. I found apparently, this will be passed out, we've got kind of a condition, I guess you call it a conditional urban reserve in the area, in the yellow area, and if you read through that condition, I presume we have a handout where that yellow area is defined in terms of the conditions on?
Well, actually, what I'm heading out right now is, since you've requested this, on Wednesday, I received an email from a property owner, Mr. Sears up there, requesting that we, that the commission consider adding his properties, because he's got half of them in, half of them out. So I was, I just prepared this and figured this might be the appropriate time to talk about, since it relates to urban reserves and designations.
Yeah, he, well, what the request is, that, he's requesting that, no matter what we do with the whole property, that their property, because it's a willing property owner, and it's already half inside the urban growth boundary, or in the other reserve, right? Urban, no, it's inside the urban growth boundary.
Right, so what you see is, the part in gray with the red slashes through it is Sears property that's in the city's urban growth boundary. The properties that are in white, everything in white is outside, this is all north of the city. Everything with the red slashes is what the Sears family or LLC owns north of the city. And it's pretty much.
Recap the discussion that we, because the, so, so they're interested in having that included, and I don't think there would be any problem on the part of the county to do, but just to recap the discussion, this area we talked, the area in gray, the county was interested in it because of the development, the interest that they have in this area, way far from our city boundaries. And then, if you recall, Commissioner Bernard and Lee Han and I drove around in this area and thought that it looked way hard, just, all three of us determined it looked very, very difficult to serve, being up on the high plateau, getting both transportation up there and other, water and sewer fine, because they drain down, but. So we, the city recommended that be undesignated. That count, it still is listed on the undesignated maps, and the political reality is that with all the pressures inside the Metro Council and in Washington County, is that they're looking at possibly doing trade-off stuff. Well, if not Stafford, then maybe this area by Oregon City. But we've, we've strongly said that's going to be so difficult to serve in the next 40 years, and they're using a 40-year now, which is a shorter timeframe than 50 years. It's changed it.
Why 40?
Yeah, well, no one can hardly get their arms around planning for 40 years, either much less 50. Anyway, and so, that's part of the debate, and then I think before us is, is their interest on part of Oregon City in honoring this particular land use request to adjust, make a boundary adjustment for our urban reserve?
I mean, I mean, I guess we have to have the argument presented to us more formally. Let me make a comment. My gut feeling is, yeah, that's close, and maybe there's not that much of an issue, but my recollection is that piece that's from the outside about Forsyth, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so, so we have to have a transportation link there that works. It's really got to be, I think it's going to have to be more than a, a local street, because you've got a lot of traffic that comes down Forsyth from the rural areas, people that are working in the city and so forth. Once you, once you build a connection there, you're going to see a lot of that traffic shifting onto Holcomb. So if we're going to bring it in, we're going to realize that we're probably going to have to build some facilities there that are going to have to more than meet the requirements of, of the Sears property, because I think you'll see heavy use of people coming off Forsyth onto Holcomb. And that's just a comment, and it's something that I think we have to bear in mind.
What timeframe?
And what, yeah, exactly right.
And the other, yeah, I don't know, I guess what we need to know here is if this would be a part of the commission to direct planning staff to work with the property owner, and.
And then I guess the other direction I'd like is, you know, it's kind of this little finger of property going north, and it, you know, one, one tax lot crosses Forsyth, you know, I mean, does it make sense to go along Forsyth to the east to line up with the existing city boundary right here? And square it off?
Can you, can you, can you, with your finger, trace the overall map to talk, to speak?
I lost it on Forsyth here.
The Forsyth finger you're talking about.
You have a map here.
I see what you're talking about on the white, but I don't see how far north it goes. Okay. Here's Forsyth. Okay, so you're talking about existing city boundary, you're not, you're not talking about the blue region at all?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no.
I was saying.
I think it's way, I think it's way late in the process to introduce more than just a property owner, because that's the value, I think, of the public hearings, is to find out where adjustments might need to be. I'm really nervous about adding without having more public hearings.
And my worry would be that we're not going to get that north-south connection without bringing in other property owners. It's, the large piece runs right into the school, this is the school. Here's his piece, if you don't bring in the one next to it.
Yeah. What they say is that they own the majority of the property all up and down, but I don't know that, I just, that's what it says here, and he told me that.
Pulling off the tax maps, this is, these were the ownerships that I could find.
That's all?
Based on the letter he submitted.
You're talking about that white piece, right under the hashed red? No, no, if you were to extend it, that's what you're talking about.
That should be included, too.
At a minimum, you'll never get a road if you don't include it.
Yeah, it looks like it ended up being island, almost.
Then the question is, do you continue off Forsyth and then square it off at the existing city limits? Just so you have a block, or do you just want this one little appendage coming out?
Would that be a compromise if Metro wanted us to add more property on this side, and because that mostly is pretty flat, and it's serviced right there by a school and market and, I mean, we're not talking to going all the way out to Carver there, this is just a tad. In fact, when you're at Holcomb School, you kind of wonder why there aren't houses below it, but.
Holcomb, not Forsyth.
I think it's, I think it warrants just looking at it. The point is, right now, this is kind of marked as a conditional urban area. We might have a greater standing of getting that undesigned for the next X decades, and whatever that is, if in fact we agree to a larger expansion of the blue area. I mean, a larger expansion of the area.
I guess I would ask, yeah.
Not as big as a blue area.
We could ask Tony to talk with the county planning staff to see, you know, outside the process, and then, you know, for me, we have to open this to a public hearing, and we have time for that, I think, too, before the adoption, though they're moving pretty quickly on that. Ooh, we don't, we don't, because we're supposed to get considered IMPAC on Wednesday.
I don't think it's on.
No, but I hate to include, make property changes at this date without allowing those property owners to be able to respond.
Maybe some of the county.
Well, maybe, but, but, I mean.
Okay, so Metro dealing with it on Wednesday, whether the county's doing or the city's doing it.
The, my, Metro could designate it nothing, urban or rural, still.
Exactly.
I mean, we're.
It's in the undesigned area right now.
It's, but it's conditional, and maybe we can meet it within the conditions. I mean, they've got these, what is it called, UAR8? I mean, there's a funny number that's associated with it, and there's a bunch of definitions there that this really has to be looked at. And, and maybe in this, in quote, this has to really be looked at, we can actually bring this in at a later point.
Well, let's find out that, because I'm going to need guidance by Wednesday, and then the rest of the commission.
Do we have the handout that was being given out by Metro that described that yellow area here? Okay, we might, we might ask for it to come to our next commission meeting.
My thought is, is that this has gone through a huge public process, and it's already up in the air. I mean, the decision hasn't been made, so I guess this would be the way for the city to weigh in.
Yeah, no, I think it's entirely possible to do, let's just find out. Oh, yeah.
So.
So I think where we are, Tony's going to talk to Metro and county staff to see what the options are, and then we'll talk about this at our next city commission meeting. In the meantime, I need to have guidance on how to communicate where we are for IMPAC.
Meet with IMPAC before we have another city commission.
We will. So I guess if I can communicate where we are, I mean, maybe that needs to be an email communication, and then I'll just communicate what, where we are in the process of decision-making. I mean, if you get a clear, absolutely, I don't think you're going to get anything clear because the whole process is fluid.
So, it is next week, Wednesday, that you make your decision?
Yes, coming up Wednesday, four days from now, whatever that is. Coming up Wednesday, four days from now, whatever that is.
My, I think the definition of that yellow area is vague enough.
Is what?
Is vague enough.
Vague enough. Two words. Two words. I thought of vague enough.
Vague enough.
I like that.
The yellow areas are vague enough.
Anelism.
Yeah. It is vague enough that we probably be able to work within it.
No, I, I...
That's why I was wondering if we had to worry.
I need to, I need to read what the, what the optional area is, because the concern is that it would be one of those areas that you can't go into until all your other areas are used, used up. Yellow?
This is undesignated.
This hasn't been decided yet. The mayor was saying it's one of those trade-off areas.
But I know if they, but if they make it undesignated, if they don't designate it anything...
Right. Then it's essentially a...
No, yeah, right now, like I said, it could be any of three things.
It's a reserved urban reserve. Yeah. Okay, so I think that's all we need to...
Before we leave it, I'll make a comment, because I did testify, and I want to see what my testimony was. My testimony was to go back, and I'll tell you why, to go back, the area that the commission went ahead and said, "We want that as a, as a urban reserve." And that was that part of New Oak Creek Canyon that was on the one side of Highway 213. And my argument was, because it couldn't be urbanized, the city would not be able to annex that, and if the city can't annex it, it's still going to be under county jurisdiction, and then why not have it undesignated anyway? That was my argument. We're not going to get property owners that we're not going to serve with urban services to annex into the city.
Yeah, I, I...
That was the argument I put forward.
Yeah, and probably because we'll lose that argument, I'm arguing that, that if that's the case, then we definitely need to do an IGA with the county for protection, which the county wants that, too, protection of the area, and look at mechanisms for making property owners hold on there. And I'm being told by Metro and other environmental groups that that's entirely possible. So we'll see.
One thing that's coming up in stormwater is that that area, the county is not wanting to pay any attention to stormwater management in that area, because it's not in their Clackamas Service District, number one. If it's outside the U G B, it's not within our service area either. And I think if we're going to have an agreement with the county, there should be some, if it's going to stay county, I think it's really important to address stormwater in that area, because it's not covered under our permit right now, and it's not under their permit. And the kinds of things that they're asking us to do, somebody needs to adopt that area for stormwater management.
It'll see a lot of water, too.
So, I would only say that would be, Commissioner Neil, the only thing I disagree with you on that is that it can, it's not going to be in a service district, so.
That's an important point to know. Thank you. Anything else on that? Okay, let's move forward. Oh, William?
I'm sorry to have you step down, because now that I'm living in Fox City, that area...
He stepped out. Not bad. Yes, he stepped out.
They sit down well. Because I'm not living in Fox City, that area.
It was on.
There it is. It's on.
Now it's really on.
Yes.
I'm concerned about a criminal element in the, what's, I'm finding out now are called the canyon people.
That's a different topic. Let's just put that on the table.
Well, if they're talking about the, if they're talking about urban rule and concern for storm, there's, might be a service, that's another service that ought to be considered.
Yeah, definitely. That's on the list as well. We've talked about that a number of times, and then also trails and other access points to them to the park. Okay, Public Works, we have the C I P. Nancy, you prepared for presentation on that?
I think there's enough to go around here. I put together a list of the current capital improvement projects that Public Works has, has been working on. And these are the ones, I thought, probably the best thing to do would be to kind of prepare you for what you're going to be seeing in the budget.
Rocky?
Well, I think that's all one. That's all, that's all one there.
Two pages?
No, I said, you got it. I'm sorry.
I thought it was one, right? I almost liked it.
Yeah, one. It's one.
One page, okay.
Okay, you got it. I thought, okay. But I need, need to get one.
So, I think...
You need it first. We'll get it in a minute.
Probably the ones that are most apparent are always the transportation projects, and those are actually, we have the most of those as well. But partially because some of those are partnerships with the county and the state and Metro. But the, I broke them out into the four or five different areas, transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. And there probably aren't any surprises here. The one that you may not know much about is the 10th Street Singer Hill Railroad Crossing Safety Project. That, when we started about two or three years ago, and we've had a lot of trouble getting the easement from the property owner down there at Dutch Brothers. It's unfortunate, because...
We haven't yet?
No, we have not yet. And we're actually going to be looking at an alternative design, other that, otherwise we will be needing to go to condemnation, because we're not getting a willing property owner to dedicate that property. And it's kind of unfortunate, because one of the reasons why there's a safety problem there is because of the driveway going into that property. So it's surprising to me that the property owner isn't a little more cooperative to help save, help solve that safety issue.
Nancy, is the property owner the same as the business owner?
No. He rents, he rents to Dutch Brothers. There's a lease. So, anyway, moving on. Then, other than that, I think all of these are, well, we haven't talked about the Center Street sinkhole, but I'm sure you've seen it. So, just so you know, we're working on that.
What is it there?
On Center Street, by PG, or by Quest, is it Quest, or?
Well, the other end, yes. Okay, I forgot. I haven't been down there.
So, and then, I think the rest of them you're very familiar with. Underwater, the usual, we always have annual waterline replacements, and we're actually just wrapping up. We got a little behind on those, because we're so busy working on the, our projects. But we'll start another round of those shortly. And then we are also replacing the waterline in 8th Street downtown. When the improvements were made on the sidewalk down there, it ended up with the, waterline is now under the sidewalk, plus it's, plus it's a really old, deteriorated waterline, so that needs to be replaced. We're wrapping up the water master plan. We'll be bringing that to the planning commission and the city commission this spring sometime. And then the other little project we have going, which is difficult, is our Livesey pump station. It's this teeny-weeny little pump station. It serves four customers outside the city limits, but it was evidently brought in when we did the Clermont Water District connection.
Four customers?
Yes. And it's, it has habitual breakdowns, so we really need to do something to it, but it's, it's difficult, because we also have the potential for a lot of redevelopment out there, in which case you'd build a full-fledged, you know, city standard-type water improvement. So we're sorting through alternatives on that, trying to come up with least-cost, reasonable improvements that we can justify to, to basically solve the problems we're having with that pump station. And then onto, oh, the other, the other thing in water, you see there aren't a whole lot of other projects there, and we probably don't expect to see a whole lot of other projects, except for the waterline replacements, for a while, because we just spent, I think we spent close to $8 million, the Mountain View Reservoir Complex. And the pump station that we just built there was actually programmed for 2010, 2010 to 2012. And because we were doing all the work at the reservoir, we decided to move that project up. So now we are recouping from that expenditure, and so we kind of switched out those, the timing on that capital improvement. And so that, those improvements really brought us, just brought us tremendous life into our water system and the major improvements. Under wastewater, we have, we're just finishing up two pump station improvements, and that's another area where we have invested a lot of money in our pump stations in the last few years. We have one pump station left to replace or to upgrade, and that's the Barclay Hills one. And that we will be not budgeting for this year, but we'll be budgeting for the next year. And then we have some small works projects. These are the projects that, like many of the older pipe systems in Oregon City, we have been turning our focus to, to make sure we're not getting too far behind on our deferred maintenance on the old wastewater lines. Then under stormwater, the, we discovered, when we were doing the Cook Street pump station, which sits right next to a detention pond in the South End Basin, we determined that we wanted to study the drainage in that area, because part of our South End Basin plan includes improvements to mitigate flooding in that area around Cook Street and around Amanda Court, that area. I think you're probably pretty familiar with that area, Commissioner Smith. And so now we've done a little closer study, and we've got some improvements that are being recommended, so you'll start to see those coming up in this year's budget. The other thing is, actually, right now, we're running really, really tight on staff. We've talked a lot about staff today, not the public works staff, but we have...
You were one of the ones that didn't do a whining.
Yes, that's right. That's because we hired a project engineer this year, and we don't usually like to come back year after year for more staff. But we have to be careful because of the load, partially because of the jug handle and some of the really large projects that we can even manage this work. The, under stormwaters, while you see the Clackamas River and Cove dredging, that, that permit will be released very soon. It actually got passed all the review at the Corps of Engineers and NIMPs, actually it's NOAA now, and it's just getting its final little signature, so that's good news. The others, we have several small works projects for stormwater.
Nancy, so Cove dredging will likely happen during the in-water period this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, one thing we're going to have to figure out is if the county is still going to provide their funding, because Jonathan Mantet was the one that guaranteed to split the project with the city, so...
Both.
We're going to have to...
Put me on that one.
Okay.
You can put me on that one.
Great. And then in small works, these projects, almost all of them are a result of, except for the sewer separation at 9th and Main, all of the other ones are a result of our last year's January big, huge storm on New Year's Day. And these are where we find problems, either during operations and maintenance of the system, or through events. And so we're going to be taking care of those problem areas for localized flooding. And then under facilities, we have the Public Works Center that we'll be focusing our attention on for facilities, building-type improvements. So that pretty much wraps it up. That's what you'll be seeing in the budget, and that's, that's keeping us all very busy.
Did Scott have a piece for parks?
He did. He left it here.
Well, you're passing those out, Nancy. I just, again, want to acknowledge the work of your department. When you look at this and all that you do, underground, above ground, you know, you've got some headline projects, of course, and, but without this, I mean, you guys are just heavy workhorses. So thank you again for your supervision and all that you do.
You're welcome.
If I might just one question. We still see these occasional sewer separation projects coming. Do we know how many of them are, or do we still have some that sneak up on us?
I think there are ones that continue to sneak up on us, little, very small areas that we still were not aware of. And then there are a few areas that we are aware of that we have to take care of eventually. And then Scott prepared a paper for you that lists some of the projects that are underway or anticipated for his department as well. And he's, I don't think he expected me to cover this for him, but at least we passed it out, and you'll see that they're pretty busy as well.
Yeah, yeah, good. You know, I really appreciate the fact of having these lists, because this notebook, for me, is always a resource throughout the year, to be able to know what we're working on. So I keep it on my desktop and refer to it frequently, so I like having it.
Yeah, and actually, I really wanted to provide numbers next to each one of these projects, both for what we expected to complete the year of expenditures with, as well as next year's expenditures. And unfortunately, we're in the middle of creating the budgets, so when we do budget, I'll try to bring this back to you with the final budget numbers as well.
Okay. Any more questions for that? All right, that actually concludes the priority lists. I hate to not have at least an hour to kind of go over this, though I think some of that's naturally going to fall into place, so I'm not as concerned about that, because our discussion's been pretty focused.
Robust, yes.
Robust and focused. So, what I would like to do then, I think, if we can do this quickly, and I know some of you may not be able to, but if you could give us really brief, briefs on the ones that we didn't circle. Yeah, I mean, and if it's, if it's okay to do it in written form later, I think indicate that. So community policing would be first. Is that a quick report?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, we've got that.
In 2009, we've instituted a few new programs, like a meet your police, meet your police meetings, which we actually had one this week. It was on Thursday night. It was very well attended. It was actually on the Hostler homicide case that happened in 1994 that we saw through DNA evidence a few years ago. So we've tried to, we've tried to make these somewhat interesting to the public and not just kind of regurgitate the old crime prevention talks that we only get a few people from the community out of, but we're also trying to get some more interesting issues in front of them. And we also use it as a, as a, as a forum to, quite frankly, hear some critical feedback from the community, and what we're, what we're doing good, what we're doing wrong, how we can improve, and, and things like that. The other thing that we've done this year is we've established a liaison to the faith-based community. And I think in the past, we've had some issues trying to maybe not get our message out to them and interact with them like the way we should. So we have a retired deputy chief from Stockton, California, Tom Gomer, who's been really instrumental in doing that. He has a, a history of the faith-based community, and he meets with them on, on a regular basis to see what type of inroads we can make over there. And we replaced our school resource officer this year. I think that was a, that was a good move. Bob Downing had done a really good job in that, and he decided to move out. We brought in Officer Dave Edmonds, and I think he's, he's been very successful over there. We continually hear really good feedback from, from school, people about the job he's doing out there and everything. So that's been, that's been really important. I think the thing we need to do a little bit better is kind of reach out to the business community. You know, I kind of look at it as a stool, and each, each leg has to be of equal length in order for that community policing program to survive or, or to flourish. And I, and I think we can improve a little bit better there. We do have our people go to Good Morning, Oregon City. We're involved in some of the civic groups and things like that. We hope to extend that a little bit more and reach even more of that community to, to get our message out and see what we can do to help them. We also have a newsletter, which we put out quarterly, and I'm, I got about, well, four or five days to get it done before this quarter's over, so I better hurry. And we also have, you know, trying to get into the 21st century, we created a Facebook account. We have well over 100 members on Facebook and interact with them on a daily, well, not maybe a daily basis, but at least a weekly basis. And we use that as a good vehicle to let them know of meetings we're having and things in the community and everything. We still have the chief's advisory meeting, that's once a month.
What's your Facebook page name?
Oregon City Police, I believe. And two of the things I'm really excited about that we're going to be doing this year is a citizens' police academy. is a Citizens Police Academy, which basically is a, it's either eight to 12, 14 weeks, depending on the curriculum we develop, which allows members of the community to come in once a week and attend basically some police training classes to get an idea of what police officers do, why they act the way they act, you know, some of the laws, driving, how they make traffic stops, why they act this way when they go here or there. And it's a really good way for us to develop some community awareness, what the police department does, and also, you know, broaden our support base, quite frankly. It's, we had an opportunity to participate in a inter-agency Citizens Police Academy, and I think we're going to opt out of that and try to do our own. I think we probably have enough interest in the community. If we join the other inter-agency one or the inner-city one, then we've already, we have four or five people from Oregon City to do it. If we run our own, we can probably get up to 20 or 30 people through it. So I think it just makes sense to try to do our own this time. And we're hoping to have that done in the fall. And the other thing we'd like to do this year is, and we've had preliminary talks, I think it's going to work out, is to partner with Willamette Falls Television and do some things, anything from one- or two-minute public service announcements to actually having them come to meet your police and film that and air that on their, on the public access channel, and to do some crime prevention talks and some informational talks, whether it's on drugs or K-9 or some of the other things we do, and try to reach the community that way. So that's our plans for the coming year.
Okay, good. I think what we'll do is take a short break here, and then we need to focus on issues. So I guess staff needs to tell us what their issues that we, you think that belong on the, you know, on the list, but we need to get into goal setting. And so I guess I'm particularly interested in things that aren't listed. And Willamette Falls Television, for instance, is a pretty, looks like a succinct summary. Is there anything more on that one?
No, I think Larry's still in.
Yeah, and the sustainability program is just off and running. Look at all the stuff we've done. That's pretty cool. Nothing new on that? No?
Other than Terry spent a day in the garbage.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah. And that wasn't at a city council meeting.
Dumpster diving.
And that wasn't at, her time at the trash wasn't at the city council meeting, so that was good, too. Yeah, the human resources, Jim, or Jim Go. Okay, well, he can't speak for himself, so we didn't talk about downtown parking, but implementing the parking study that needs to be topic. We touched on it. I think we touched on whether code updates were on top of wastewater. I don't, really isn't anything there yet unless we're changing our parameters, and I don't think we are. I mean, if we are, interrupt me. The TSP is underway, the water weight rollback, we've got time on. And then all the stuff in the city recorder, I think, is pretty well listed out, unless you have something.
Just your commissioner's.
We wanted to increase that. You want to bring us that at a meeting sometime?
Yes, sure can.
Do you want to talk about commissioner expenses? Is that actually, actually-
1997, and I think it should be updated.
Okay. Actually, the, did you see that the rate went down for, monitoring went down?
A bit.
Are we keeping it the same?
Well, we do whatever the IRS says.
Oh, you've gone down? I haven't gotten a notice on that, so.
You could write out what's.
It didn't come to me, and so it is not my expense sheet. So you need to get that updated to us.
We'll adjust the check.
Hey, wait a minute. We're not grandfathered in? I want my check at 50.5. Okay, so let's take a break then for five minutes, and then come back, and then we'll zero in on what we got left and get out. Okay, we're now back in session. And in the interest of time, and I don't think we really need to get into gigantic detail of wordsmithing, first of all, these are the six from last year. I, so the first question is, do we want to change any? I guess I would suggest that last year, we decided that goal number one was to build a sustainable future. I don't think that's a bad number-one goal. And we do actually have some other things to put under there this year, but since Larry's taken extensive notes on our, on our meeting, unless you have a new objective or want to change something in there, let's let him people that with the objectives, because we'll have a chance to look at it when it's in a format for looking. And then we were talking about that we've been fairly clear today about what goals are for this year and what goals might be sometime in the future. We don't want to lose those, so we suggested that the line is drawn so that all of the things for the future don't get lost, so that the things for this year are listed and then, you know, the things for future consideration. I guess, so that's first. What do you think about the topics? I guess I would suggest, from the Alice view, is that goal number one is a good goal. I think goal number two is to select an excellent city manager. I mean, that is really one of the most important things we do. If that's an objective, that's fine. But number three, for me, is to address critical facility needs, because I just think that that's absolutely key. Then the other, you know, the other ones, I think, are pretty important issues that we, that we continue to have. So with that, I'll throw that out. So let's see if we need to do major or tweaking. I think Doug's hand is highest, and I think I started first.
Daphne's was more energetic, and Doug's was highest.
Okay, Doug, you're first.
Doug, Doug is not high, but anyway. Anyway, I've been having expertly contacts with William Rifford, and one thing, one thing that actually, it must be there or something, but we, this last year, we gave no volunteer recognition. And we actually have that dropped off several occasions. And I think it's, I think it's an important piece that we need to get back in.
Under goal five, let's put that down.
Okay, under goal five.
Yep.
The other thing, it's, you can call it goal five or goal four. Coming back to the ombudsman, the fact that we have no city volunteer coordinator, and actually, a lot of the volunteer activities that we get emanate from special projects in neighborhoods and so forth, and it may, it may be an additional responsibility that we put upon the liaison, community liaison individual, the ombudsman I've been talking about, might, might fit in there. I mean, obviously, we don't want to create another position, but I think there would be some benefit. I mean, we have some, we have some coordination that occurs on cleanup day, but that's a very focused thing, and so that's something I want to throw out.
I'm wondering if the goal, or the objective would be, support our neighborhood, our CIC and neighborhood associations is the goal, and then under it, it's explore ombudsman, explore full-time staff, you know, so that we can make sure we understand the topic. Is that captured?
I just wanted, I, yeah, I'm trying to think of where we tie it to, and the ombudsman may be a good person to tie it to.
Well, yeah, so if we stick all those under-
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, I think we got the ombudsman under four.
I think the goal is the, is the key. I mean, the mechanism, yeah, it's important, too, but there may be some way, different ways to-
Whether you put the volunteer thing under the enhance, you know, enhance livability, or if you do it under five.
I think it's under five.
Okay.
That's recognition for, others, okay, Daphne, you.
Well, I'm not going to say anything.
No, 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 no. Volunteer coordinator and recognition are two different things.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we've got volunteer coordinator under the livability piece, because that's the, I mean, I think it could be under either.
And just as a matter of course, staff is working on another volunteer recognition event.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And then the volunteer, yeah, okay, that's what I would suggest, under ombudsman.
Okay, sure, yep. I don't care where it goes, long as it doesn't get forgotten. Daphne?
I just want to point out that the city does utilize many volunteers. Kathy Wiseman coordinates them at Pioneer Center. The library coordinates them. We have advisory boards with, I don't know, 20 advisory boards, and I understand how William, I thought that, too, put it under a central umbrella, but I just want to say that.
Okay, did you have a tweak for this? Did you, you're on for, okay, any others, or are we all happy and we can go home? I mean, this is not the last time.
This is not the last time we'll see these, I recall, because we need to adopt them formally.
And I got to put some cost to these things we've talked about.
Yeah, that's important to see, too. Jim?
I just want to remind myself where we left the discussion of the power generation idea last night, and whether we, because there was a memo in the binder about it, and we're going to discuss that more today.
No, that was a piece, I think, we remember, under the Urban Renewal Commission, that we were going to discuss series of alternatives for the North End area, and power generation was one of them. Do I read that correctly?
We are meeting with that group.
They want the presentation.
And they'll, we'll bring them forward for presentation, and you're going to have to make some decision whether that's something that you'd like to see, and so we're at, and then do we want to commit to the pieces that they would be asking us for.
Okay.
I think we agreed we want the presentation.
Well, I want to, I want to broaden the discussion. I want to propose broadening the discussion, because I know that the folks that, you know, we've been chatting with have one type of technology in their, you know, business model.
Mentioned that.
And I really want to, I sent everybody an email out last night, the exchange that Carlotta Colette and I had last February, I think it was. And, you know, this, using waste-to-energy facilities, there's as many technologies, you know, as you can think of, and I would like to have a discussion on, a broader discussion on just one group and one type of technology. And I'd really like to, I'd really like to, you know, get a promoter of a plasma arc system, for example, and, you know, the ability-
The topic is energy production in general. I do have that down here. I'm just sorry, I just was remembering before I found my notes. Yeah, so it's on the list.
Okay, so I just want to, you know, make sure that we do have that very broad discussion on that topic.
Got it. Others, Rocky?
Is there a reason for electric?
Oh, it is now.
I just, when I was, I was throwing, I thought, you know, it'd be good if I put a visual together, and we did this two or three times, we just got dropped somewhere, but it's one. And you will see that shortly.
You might want to have that on there.
I'll add that.
Yeah, and actually, under increased communications, the opinion survey, public opinion survey, we'll go under that. But, I mean, each of these pieces will get tagged in. Anything else that we've forgotten or staff? Staff inputs relevant as well. It's a big, it's a big workload, as you, as we've acknowledged multiple times last year.
Did we decide the tree ordinance and the habitat task force was for this year?
We decided that the tree ordinance is going below the line for the future, because we decided that there were other priorities. The habitat, where did we decide on that? I think we decided we were just-
I thought we decided that would probably be going down, and we were going to focus on the cove.
That's the one, okay. That's right, Cove Phase One.
Broad-based, long-term committee, I thought.
Right. We didn't talk about the parking study implementation, whether that's a short-term or long-term goal, whether we want to do that this year or not. It'll require another-
I really don't know where the parking study is at.
Want to talk about that briefly?
You recall, we went through the parking study, there were some concerns. We went back, we've met with each of those groups, we've kind of got that teed up, and it's just because of transition, everything, it's just waiting to come to you for discussion on implementation. Of course, implementation is going to involve some rate increases there for parking. It's going to, those changes needed, particularly moving into the hillsides, so there's going to be some debate that you will have on those things. I think it is something that the Main Street group is really looking for you to do. I think they really feel they can't proceed much more with Main Street until that parking begins to get resolved. You, you do have the bigger issue, too, if you move some of that stuff out of the core, is how do you get folks back and forth? Because are you just going to allow them to walk, or are you going to try to do something with that? So, you know, it has a lot of ramifications to it, but it's just, it's sitting there waiting for a time it can move on your agenda, and it's really a question of how soon you want to see it. I would suggest April or May.
I think, too, we're waiting, Larry, weren't we waiting, Larry, weren't we waiting on the circulation study as well?
Not necessarily for parking, but it could tie into-
Because it could affect if we ended up going back to a two-way versus a one-way.
Yeah, you're going to lose a few spots.
And under number two, we want anything like that. There's our policy.
Sure. We discussed that enough to know that we have interest in that.
I'm just trying to make sure we-
Yeah.
And where's Willamette Falls heritage area for livability of our community? Is it economic development? Is it, are we going to continue moving forward with that?
Build a sustainable future. Yeah, just to let you know, after the Senator, Congressman Schrader's invitational briefing, the result of that is that we'll form, like we did for the walks, a memorandum of cooperation or something like that. And so each of the stakeholder groups will look at that and say, we want to be a signatory to the moving forward implementation of that process, and then it'll formally get underway headed toward another feasibility study that Congress has to bless. Yes.
Somehow or another, this next year, I'd like to have a discussion of how, how we actually implement conservation easements. Are we going to firm it out? Are we, you know, setting them up and what's required in order to set them up?
Is that under goal one?
I would, yes.
Environmental issue?
It is an environmental issue. Yeah, I would, I would guess it would be under goal one.
Number one is essentially, it's both long-term viability and environmental stuff.
Taking a proactive role in-
Taking a proactive in education and also making sure that we understand what needs to be done for a conservation easement to come, come into play.
And I'm not sure this is immediate, but I guess I don't want to lose the fact of an IGA with, I guess, if necessary, so maybe it's below the line, because we don't know if it's necessary, but an IGA with the county on the preservation or the protection, preservation of Newell Creek Canyon. Enjoy-
I could certainly make a point that all of building a sustainable future, none of it's going to happen without the- Won't do that now, but it's, I'll just make-
I agree with you, but I really like it called out separately.
Yeah, I know it. So I just made-
I think that it's easier for citizens to understand, to think that group that way. Okay, any other people? Yep, William?
Speaking of that IGA, no, it was on. Speaking of that IGA, Chief Conrad and I were having a discussion out in the hall. He came up with a pretty good idea, I thought. Would you like to address that, Chief?
Chief, you have a good idea!
Sounds surprised.
It was meant that way, and it was a joke, for those of you who are watching us.
No, me and Nancy Bush, on occasion, I work with Metro in trying to keep the area behind Nelson's Nautilus clear of transients and some of the issues they bring down there as far as the crimes they commit and the dangers to the environment, the potential for fires and so forth and so on. And one thing that I was talking about with William is possibly talking to Metro about developing that into an area which could be used by mountain bikers, could be used by hikers. Families could walk up and down there and just have some access to it. And usually, as William pointed out, when those types of people who inhabit that area now are kind of exposed to normal families up and down that area and use that and everything, they tend to migrate somewhere else. And we've, we've had some very, very preliminary talks with Metro about it, but it hasn't really, to be honest, gone any further than just talking. Yeah, and most of the people I know that who work on, who build those trails are volunteers, and they do it voluntarily. So just something to bring up, maybe keep in the back of our mind, but I think it might be a decent use for that area down there.
There is an open space person that's assigned specifically to Newell Creek Canyon now. I'll try to get his name.
From Metro? Did not know that. Yeah, do, let us know.
He came, he came and introduced himself to the Great Orion City Watershed Council our last meeting.
What's his, what does he do? What's his-
I don't think he's dealing with any of the issues that are down there, frankly.
You know, I'd be very interested in having that person speak to us.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be wonderful to hear, because that's a resource.
He sounds new, but that's good.
Okay. I think we have a pretty good agenda.
I was just thinking about that work session we just did on the water conservation and rates, tiered rates. That- rates, tiered rates, that, I don't know if you want to put that on this list.
It's a good idea.
We're kind of, we're kind of already buried in Public Works, but-
Build a sustainable future, yeah.
So I'm not sure we can deliver a whole lot on that.
But in concert, you have a little delivery here already, but, you know, that may work out that in concert with Wes Lynn and through South Fork Water Board, that there may be something that can take some of the pressure off you to take, to be the total lead on it, so we'll see. I want to thank you all so much for giving up, you know, a day and a half of your weekend. Oh, shush. But from the details that staff prepared, you know, the environment, this is as, you know, a nicer resort as Oregon City has, and this is lovely. Someone wrote to me about the expensive retreats that Oregon City has, and I said, yeah, have you seen the old City Hall where we've always held our retreats? I guess last year was the only time we've ever been out of City Hall, and that was at Ainsworth House. But anyway, thank you for the food, and I think it's been very, very productive, so appreciate that. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Nancy, for the food. You're welcome.